We will. Thank you. Order, Carrie, can you call the role, please?
Here.
Present.
If you're asking for me, I can't hear you.
Is it like, hold it like close to you.
Right, Councilmember Haskell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warnikoff. Here, Mayor Alves.
Here. Okay. Oh, Cara, do you mind reporting out of closed session? I'm just sure if I have all the, not sure what's relevant or not.
Sure. Car Silvertown Attorney. Since the last meeting, we actually had two closed sessions. At the first closed session, the council appointed a subcommittee of Commissioner Haskell and Vice Mayor Warnikoff to develop an RFP for the recruitment of a permanent town manager. And at the second town, at the second closed session, the town council reviewed the parameters of that RFP and authorized the RFP to be released. And no further action was taken. That's reportable at this time.
Thank you. Great. That is a report out of closed session. Next up is oral communications. If you have a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to make it. I see three hands. Okay, I see the first hand I see is Valerie Baldwin. Valerie, go ahead, please.
Hey, I'd like to ask our town council to begin consideration on joining in a lawsuit against the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. A group in Marin County, Community Catalysts for Local Control, is trying to get 10 cities to join in a lawsuit to change the Rena assessments. At this point, moist northern California cities are reluctant because, like Portola Valley, we've not had our housing elements approved and are worried about retribution by HCD. But as soon as we get all of our elements approved, I think many will join. In March 17th of last year, Michael Tilden, the acting California State Auditor, issued a blistering critique of the HCD and Regional House Needs Assessment Arena. The author found problems in the HCD methodology and inflated Rena requirements, potentially by hundreds of thousands of housing units. The only remedy that cities have is through the courts to sue HCD. HCD was required by law to meet and consult with the Council of Governments regarding the assumptions and methodologies they used. They did not. The law required HCD to review the data and assumptions that the councils of the government submitted for the factors considered in the housing needs assessment to allow HCD to make adjustments to the needs assessment after consideration. They failed to do that. HCD did not provide adequate support for a critical determination it made about the healthy housing vacancy rate that it used. HCD failed to consider appropriate compact comparable regions. HCD's failure to reassess the Rena determinants and make corrections will impact the current and future housing cycles that we will have. If 10 cities join in this effort, it will cost will be about $20,000 to $30,000 per city. Portola Valley has spent nearly half a million dollars on consultants, attorneys, and staff to comply with Rena. If HCD can get away with this now, consider what will happen in six years when we start to comply with the new cycle. If we win this suit, maybe we'll be able to save Dorothy Ford Park. Please go to catalyst. That's with an S C A catalyst, California.org, where this and lots of other information, including a presentation by the lead attorney Pam Lee can be found. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Next up is Rita. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. The thing I'm commenting on, I sent the letter earlier to the council on this. I have mentioned this particular item many times in different meetings, but once again, this item is on the agenda and it is concerning the software that has been continuously offered on official agendas of the town of Portola Valley. The software is created by a previous Portola Valley Town Council member. And I've asked several times during the official meetings of the town about the validity of this software and what data it's collecting from residents other than to use it doing this software during hybrid Zoom sessions that the town seems to be rubber stamping the software. California passed a law, which I've always referred to, but now I have where you can actually find it. California actually passed a law that software that collects information should have some type of limitations on California residents' privacy. Those privacy limitations were recently upgraded in February 2023 to increase the privacy of software users of residents in California. And it's CCPA. And, you know, I've asked several times if you can tell the residents where that data of the software is being stored and what happens to that information that is being stored? Because we're not asked if someone does click on it about the cookies and privacy and whatnot, which we're supposed to have in the state of California. So this software is being offered to be used in a way for people that want to see who's attending this particular meeting. And but it also notes that when people sign off and when they sign on. So please put the number of attendees in the blue sky timer and look into this software. Because with this new laws in the state of California, if the town is open and liable for not doing the proper privacy notifications on the software and something happens, you know, do we want the town to be liable for this? I hope this is actually looked into. I sent the letter. I'm not sure what else I can do to move this forward. But please, I asked the town to look into this and move this forward. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jeremy, I see your hand up. Did you want to comment?
Sure, thank you. Mayor Alves, members of the council. As the council knows, this software was developed to address concerns by attendees of meetings to see who was in attendance. It's not a functionality that we have related to webinar. It's created by the ex-mayor. Spoke with the ex-mayor recently and he confirmed what I have always understood about the software. It collects zero data. There's no data housed. So I just wanted to share that information with the council and the public. Thank you.
Um. Okay. Next up is Karen Askey. Karen, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. First of all, I'm very impressed that Judith has joined us from London. So I don't know what time it is there, but I'm surprised you're not wearing your pajamas. One of my roles on Parks and Rec is to review the town website pages for Parks and Rec and make suggestions for updates. A number of the current pages refer to outdated COVID protocols and we would like those removed. I was informed that those pages cannot be removed until the town council adopts a new ordinance removing the existing emergency COVID ordinance. As the state of California has now lifted its COVID-19 state of emergency, would the council please consider doing the same for Portola Valley, hopefully soon? Thanks.
Thank you. John Silver has his hand up here. John, go ahead.
Thank you. I really look forward to the time where I don't feel the need to respond to something that was sent under oral communications, which in most of my public career spanning close to 30 years, or actually a little over counting my committee time, would be a five to 10 minute item. Now, tonight, maybe under 10 minutes, which has been delightful for those who'd want to participate in a meeting without being up to all hours of the night. And I, but I've got it. I loved hearing what Karen Askey said about pajamas. Some of us have dreams. I sometimes dream that I've shown up at the grocery store at Robertson. I reached for my hand pocket for my wallet. It's not there. Not only that, my pants aren't on. And I think I'm just nonchalant. No one will notice. And I've also had dreams that I was reelected to town council and I'm in bed naked at a town council meeting, not pajamas, naked. But we, anyway, we don't want to have dreams like this. And thank God, I'll never be back on the town council. But back to something else, the idea of joining this lawsuit that has a snowball's chance and hell of succeeding, I think would be a waste of my tax dollars and many others. There were many people that thought that Mark Bergman, who may be here in a long while, would be thrown out of office. He got a 75% vote reelection. I'm sorry. George Trichol, who's a friend of mine, if you don't know who he is, you should find out. He's no longer with us. Delightful man, wonderful environmentalist. He once said about a particular method that was suggested for preserving open space, quote unquote, "That's flying the right kite on the wrong side of the hill." Jousting at windmills is as foolish as that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We have a hand up from Gene Chapoo. Gene, go ahead.
You, okay, unmute. This is directed to Representative Berman. My understanding is representative that you voted in favor of.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
You have to wait till Mr. Berman's section of the, you, you. You'll have just to comment at that time.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a hand raised by Leslie Christ. Leslie, go ahead. Priest, sorry, I keep forgetting. Leslie, go ahead.
That's okay. Everybody forgets. It's Christ. First of all, I want to say thank you to Judith. I appreciate it's got to be what, 3, 30 there or something? I mean, thank, thank you for your service. I mean, that's unbelievable. Um. Second, I would like to encourage the town council to consider Valerie Baldwin's request. I found it to be quite reasonable. She's following a bifurcated approach of making sure that we adhere to the letter of the law and follow the correct procedure, but continue to explore our options as it relates to our Rena housing numbers. I think looking at all avenues and exploring avenues rather than just assuming that whatever my government says to me is correct is the right course. Anyways, thank you very much. And that, that thank you very much for your service goes to everybody sitting up there, too. It's just 3:00 AM is. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. If there are, I see no other hands, so we will move on to our presentations. The first is a presentation from Assemblymember Berman. Mark, are you there? There he is.
Hey, Mayor.
Hey, Mark.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to just say a few words?
Oh, yes, please. Yes, town manager Dennis will introduce Assemblymember Berman.
Sure. So many of you know Mark. Mark has served not only in the California State Assembly for a number of years, but he served on the city council in Palo Alto. Was very active in political affairs in that city as well. He is, was invited here tonight as he is invited every year to provide a few minutes description of the issues that are important to him that he is working on and field any questions or comments from the council on issues that are important to you. And as always, Mark, we're delighted to have you here in our small city virtually to share your thoughts. So it's all yours, Mr. Assemblyman.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor Alves, Vice Mayor Warnikoff, and honorable council members of Portola Valley, all the way from London. My, my old colleague at Latham and Watkins, Judith Haskell. Good to see you. It's been a long time. Thank you for the invitation to speak to all of you today. As Jeremy mentioned, I'm Mark Berman. I represent Portola Valley in the California State Assembly. My district spans from Pacifica up north down to Saratoga in the south with all of the San Mateo County coast side and a lot of the communities in Northern Santa Clara County and Southern San Mateo County. And as a new legislative session kicks off, I'm excited to chat about some accomplishments from last session and to share some of my legislative priorities for this current legislative session and then leave time for Q and A afterwards before I have to jump onto a Zoom with the folks of congregation Betham. My bill that perhaps garnered the most attention last session was AB 1346, which bans the sale of small gas-powered engines such as leaf blowers and lawn mowers starting January 1st, 2024. A lot of folks don't realize this and I didn't until I introduced the bill, but small gas-powered engines have overtaken cars as the leading emitter of smog-forming pollution in the state. And so my bill, which is now law, ends the sale of this highly polluting equipment and transitions California to cleaner and quieter alternatives. And critically, I also secured $30 million in the budget to help small landscaping businesses transition to zero emission alternatives. And we are seeking more money this year. While zero emission equipment is far safer for workers and it's quieter for communities and it's better for the environment, there will be an additional upfront cost. It's kind of like electric vehicles. And so I wanted to make sure that we address the financial burden, especially for folks that are least able to, 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 to carry that burden. I learned, I recently learned that approximately $8 million of that $30 million has been used to purchase 17,000 pieces of clean equipment throughout California. So I'm really happy that's having a positive impact. I'd ask this if we were in person, I'll ask virtually. How many folks like the convenience of voting by mail? Because I know I do. And in 2020, right after the COVID pandemic hit, I wrote an urgency bill to require that elections officials mail a ballot to every active registered voter in California, which is actually something that San Mateo County was already a leader on. In addition, this, this urgency law required that every county adopt a ballot tracking system, the Track My Ballot system, which was initially created by a law that I wrote in 2018, so that voters could be assured that their ballot was properly processed and counted. This emergency effort was wildly successful and California had the highest voter turnout in 70 years since Harry Truman was president. So I followed that up the following year with a new bill to make these vote by mail changes permanent. And at a time when other states across the country are making it harder for people to vote, I'm proud that California is proving that we can have safe, secure, fair, and accessible elections. This next law is one that I think a lot of folks can relate to. Have you ever signed up for a service or a membership online? And after hardly using the product, you go back online to cancel it or you get on your app to cancel it only to find that even though it was so easy to sign up online, it's practically impossible to cancel it online or even over the phone. And I had that happen to me. I know a lot of other folks that have had that happen to them. And so in response, I wrote a new law that ensures that consumers who sign up for a subscription online can cancel it online and that they can do so without delay or having to jump through a dozen hoops. We've recently started a new legislative year and I'm really excited about some bills that I'm working on. At the top of the list is AB 1054, which will guarantee all high school students in California have access to computer science education. California has fallen behind 27 other states when it comes to computer science education. States like Arkansas, Nebraska, South Carolina, and Tennessee are leading the way and it's unacceptable. The lack of access to computer science is a major equity issue in California. The, the reality is schools serving low-income communities or rural communities, high proportions of Black, Indigenous, or Latino students are less likely to offer computer science. And while female students comprise 49% of the high school population, just 30% of female students are taking computer science courses. California is home to Silicon Valley and Biotech Beach. And these are on the forefront of technology and innovation. But we have students who grow up in the shadows of global tech companies, but go to schools who don't even give them the skills they need to one day work at those companies down the street. So we have to do more to prepare our students to obtain these jobs rather than relying on importing talent from other states or other countries. I also introduced a bill that's, that's gotten a lot of attention recently to crack down on surprise hotel fees, what President Biden called junk fees in his State of the Union address. These are the fees that hotels add on at the very last minute before you reserve the room. A couple of weeks ago, I saw a hotel, actually a hotel that my wife and I and all of our families stayed at for our wedding that adds on a destination fee at the very end of the booking process. It's a hotel. Being a destination isn't a special add-on. It's literally the essence of a hotel. So I don't know how that warrants a special hidden fee. They should put that, if they want to charge for it, they should put that or resort fees or cleaning fees in the upfront price of the stay so that consumers, when they're trying to compare prices, have all the accurate information. So AB 537 will ensure that the advertised cost of your hotel stay is the real price that you pay, creating more transparency for consumers on how much the lodging will cost. And lastly, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Q and A. A key priority of mine this session is gun violence prevention and safety. Earlier this year, I was standing on the steps of the Capitol here in Sacramento, honoring the victims of the Monterey Park shooting that had occurred two days prior. And to be honest, in the back of my mind, I was, I was kind of getting mad at myself. I was kicking myself because I could feel that I was getting desensitized to the, to the weekly mass shootings that were happening in California and across the country. Not even 10 minutes after I returned to my office, I got word that there was yet another mass shooting, this time in Half Moon Bay in my own district. Now, California has some of the strongest gun safety laws in the country and these smart policies are saving lives. Approximately 2,000 lives a year in comparison to the average state. And that's a huge deal, but we have to do more. This year, I introduced a bill, AB 1598, to focus on getting accurate information on the risks of gun ownership to prospective gun buyers. People think that they'll buy a gun to keep themselves safe. But the reality is that if you have a gun in your home, the odds increase dramatically that you or someone you love will be the victim of gun violence. I've also introduced another bill. Let's see what it is, AB 1420, that I'll be working with the Attorney General on to make sure that gun shops are doing, are providing accurate information and following the law when it comes to making sure that people have their gun safety certificates before they buy guns in California. But what happened in Half Moon Bay also revealed the devastating living conditions of our farmworkers. And I was talking with the governor a few days after the shooting and I said to him, I said, I don't feel guilty about the gun violence. I've supported every effort in the legislature to reduce gun violence in our communities and I'll continue to do so. I am a member of our Gun Violence Working Group, Gun Violence Reduction Working Group. But I do feel guilty about the despicable living conditions of farmworkers in San Mateo County and across the state. That's an issue that I wasn't as aware of as I should have been. And we need to do better for the men and women who are breaking their backs to farm the produce that we eat every day. Now, we're still working through some of the details, but I'm teaming up with San Mateo County to work on legislation that will make it easier for the county to build significant amounts of high-quality farmworker housing on the coast side. Last, last thing, this is truly the last thing. Last, my district staff has heard from a lot of constituents from Los Altos Hills and Woodside and Portola Valley about workforce concerns relating to maintaining and improving our utilities and other infrastructure, especially as California transitions to a more electric economy. This year, I'm also teaming up with the California Municipal Utilities Association to introduce AB 735, which will expand its training programs for electric utilities, water agents, water agencies, and others to develop the critical workforce that we'll need in the future. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Jeremy Dennis. Jeremy and I have known each other for at least a decade. He, he was my predecessor, Rich Gordon's District Director. He worked for the city of Palo Alto when I was on the Palo Alto City Council. And, and I just, you know, he's so well-respected in our communities. And, and I know he's been a big asset to Portola Valley as, as the, the town manager. Jeremy, we haven't connected. I don't know what you're doing next, but I wish you nothing but luck as you move into the next stage of, of your career. So with that, I'll stop and happy to take questions from folks.
Thank you, Assemblymember Berman. I will start with questions from my colleagues and then we'll take public questions or comments. We'll start, let's start with, let's go to London. Judith, why don't you? Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you. And bear with me, it is late here, but for the record, there's no member of the public here. Which was a question. Mark, it's good to see you and certainly appreciate all the, the effort you've put in over your, your long career here. I definitely thank you for the ballot. I definitely thank you for the, the attention to proper education and science because that's my background. I think those are, are going to be making differences. And on the gun, gun violence and farmworkers issues. I think we're all still amazed at that could happen in our, you know, relative community, close to our community. I do know that people are going to ask you, so I'm gonna try and seek your perspective on what we're going through as a town this month, which is revising, finalizing, submitting the housing element. And, you know, first I want to say this town takes it very seriously. We've put in over 130, 140 hours. We've changed some directions. We've taken public input and rethought things. It's been a real process. And we definitely want to expand housing options in the community. We've gotten good ideas that need further support. What I'm struggling with is that the mandates that have been promulgated are really not frankly, working for our community. If you mean that they are something that the community is finding a good fit with. The state mandates are frankly, people are worried that they're going to override our, our rural community or the community we, we build. And so I just don't know, like, do people at the state level in your perception, when you're talking to people, is that a factor? What can we do? We're doing everything we can and then some. Yeah. We've refocused efforts from other areas onto this area. And we're, we've got to look at financial impacts, too. And it's been overwhelming. Yeah. So I don't know if you want to take that and, and provide any perspectives, but I know you're going to get some specific questions. But I wanted to start a little bit bigger picture and see. I'm sure you've been hearing and I'd love to hear what you're thinking.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Judith. Thank you. And I, I will tell you, we, we, you know, practically every colleague I talk to, I know we are as frustrated as, as anyone. But we're frustrated at the fact that, that California and the Bay Area and Silicon Valley, we have all failed so miserably at building the housing that we need over decades, over decades to address and meet the, the booming economy that we've had and all of the jobs that have been created in our communities. And we're frustrated that if, that is falling on, on, you know, legislators and city council members and supervisors at this time to have to deal with this housing crisis that's just built for decades. And, and I was looking, I look back for a lot of communities in my district and I think Portola Valley is, is similar where there's been practically no population growth over 30 years. And, and so, but we've created so many jobs. And, and but people have to live somewhere in those jobs. And, and just the incredible impact that's having on homelessness, on housing affordability that we see every day in our communities, the inability to hire teachers, the inability to, you know, have the childcare workforce that we need because we have failed at building housing for decades in California. So we're all frustrated at, at that fact, at the fact that we've done such a bad job. We've done such a good job of creating jobs. We've done such a bad job of creating the infrastructure necessary to meet the, the, the living needs of those jobs. And, and so that's led to, you know, some, some, you know, different strategies over the past couple of years to try to get it built. But yeah, we're, we're frustrated too. And I hear the frustration from, from residents and I wish we'd done a better job long before I ever got to Sacramento of building that housing that we need in our communities.
Thank you. I'll let others follow up.
Okay. Mary, you have any questions or comments?
Just an easy, an easy one. What are mechanisms are you using for the farmworker housing?
We're.
What's going to work is what I want to know. I mean, it's not.
Yeah, I mean. I'm heartened by the fact that everybody is really, really motivated from state, federal. You know, I went out there with Congresswoman Eschew, Supervisor Mueller, Senator Becker, myself, County, County Manager Callagie and, and the city of Half Moon Bay, which owns, they've identified a parcel of land that could be a good fit for a significant amount of housing. I don't want to kind of get ahead of things because we're still sorting through some of the details, but it's going to be to try to make sure that we can get that housing built quickly and safely and that it's, it's appropriate housing that respects the, the farmworkers and, and their families that are also living in this housing. So I apologize for not being able to get too into details yet because we're still kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's. But I'm optimistic that we'll be able to get something done quickly.
No, that's a good answer. Thanks.
Anything else, Mary? Anything else, Mary?
That's it.
Greg.
Hi Mark, thanks for joining us tonight. You know, one of the jokes I heard recently was we're fortunate, we only have to corral the five of us and you have to corral the entire assembly. So thank you for your service. I wanted to follow up. I thought Judith did an excellent job of sort of setting the stage. I'm really interested in how we build effective housing, um, and I'm worried that the it's the set of laws that have been passed feel like pretty blunt instruments that at least in our case, don't even feel very effective. I mean, when lands a couple million dollars an acre, um, one wonders how much affordable housing is ever going to get built here, no matter how we zone it. Um, so I guess what I'm wondering is, do you guys in the assembly look for other options, JPAs, other ways that a town like Portola Valley can share this burden, but do it in a more effective way. So we get more housing. Cause I think many of us believe that is the right goal is to make sure we get more housing. But somehow this set of rules we have now don't, at least here in our little local community, don't feel like they're effectively getting to that, to that end.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I know it's challenging, especially in communities where the cost of land is so much. And I think, you know, it was when I first got elected here and talking with some colleagues that I kind of changed my thinking, um, from talking about affordable housing to talking about housing affordability. Uh, and, and so what housing affordability means is, you know, building townhomes, uh, building, building, you know, it's still market rate housing. It's, it's a little more dense than, than maybe what currently exists, but it's a more approachable, building condos. It's something that's more approachable for, for folks that haven't accumulated the wealth necessary, uh, maybe to build a single family home or to buy a, a single family home in a town like Portola Valley. So I, I think it's really looking at all of the different options, whether it's, you know, some of it will be legally affordable housing, but some of it is also just focusing on like the middle missing, the missing middle housing, uh, townhomes and condos and, and housing that's a little denser than what currently exists. Uh, but that can be a, you know, much more approachable for, for young families, uh, to be able to actually enter the housing market and join the community of Portola Valley. I, I, I don't know if Portola Valley is having the same troubles that Palo Alto is having, but our student population in Palo Alto, where, where I used to live and, and, and serve on the council is dropping dramatically. Uh, and that's because younger families that have school age children just can't afford to move in. Um, so, so I, what I would just, you know, encourage is to, to look at different, different strategies, uh, on housing affordability as opposed to strictly affordable housing.
Yeah, and I guess the, what I was hoping that you'll look into, um, in the coming year or two, um, is I think we're already zoning for multifamily. I mean, that's part of the process and, and I agree with you. I think that's absolutely a necessary part. Um, but when you look at our housing allocation, roughly half of it is low and very low income. Even with multifamily housing, it's a stretch to believe that somebody's going to come in and build that stuff.
Mm hmm.
So that's the thing that we're struggling with is, you know, we've talked about a lot of things, but it's, it's getting to the point where unless somebody buys them the land and hands it to them, it's pretty hard to see how a, you know, a below market housing developer makes it a business. So I think hoping that you guys can look at that, because I think it's a much more complicated calculus than just, oh, if we only had condos and townhomes that magically, you know, we'd solve that problem.
No, no, I, I appreciate that. And I definitely appreciate how complicated and expensive it is. And, and I know I was talking with the Assembly Housing Chair, uh, Buffy Wicks from the East Bay about this and, and her huge focus this year and moving forward is figuring out how the state can provide more funding uh, to our local governments, to our, our, uh, affordable housing developers to build some of that housing, um, you know, recognizing, recognizing the, the, the allocations that are being handed down and recognizing the cost um, that, that comes with building that affordable housing. So I, I hear you. I appreciate that.
Right. Yeah. I think that would be, that'd be fabulous. Cause I think if you can start talking to below market housing developers and get their perspective on it, then I think we can find a, a way forward. But I think right now the set of rules is not really getting us, at least, you know, in communities like ours isn't, I mean, we'll put in our housing plan and we'll make something work, but it's really feels like a very awkward fit. So, so thank you for that. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask you about was infrastructure, um, with all the new housing that we're basically requiring in different communities. What kind of follow-up is there on ensuring that the infrastructure follows along? I mean, I completely appreciate your bill of trying to train more, um, sort of utility and, and sort of infrastructure workers. That sounds great. Um, I'm also wondering what leverage we have on, you know, PG&E and the other sort of big um, monopolies to make sure that the infrastructure gets expanded sort of along the Reno numbers, if you will. I mean, to really make sure that, you know, as the new housing gets built, that the infrastructure matches it.
Yeah, no, infra- uh, infrastructure has been a big passion of mine ever since the first thing I ever did in public service, uh, was I was a citizen on Palo Alto's, uh, Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So, so I fully appreciate the importance of that. Um, something that the state's been trying to do is, is generate more funding. Um, so that, and, and then pushing that funding down to, to our towns and cities and counties, uh, so that y'all can, you know, either repair the infrastructure that already exists or build new infrastructure, uh, that you might need for, for population growth. Um, as, as it comes to PG&E, I feel like I'm talking with them on a weekly basis. Uh, they were in my office earlier today. Around a different bill that I've introduced this year that, that forces them to interconnect, uh, rooftop solar faster to the grid. Um, but no, it's, it's, uh, you know, gonna be, uh, 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 an important and team effort to make sure. And infrastructure, infrastructure can mean so many different things. Um, so I'm speaking in generalities a little bit right now, but you know, obviously that's an area where, yeah, I want to make sure that the state continues to provide funding. Um, and, and also create ways that, that our local governments can increase their funding as well, if it's what the, the residents of the community decide to do.
Yeah. And, and I wasn't trying to pick on PG&E, I mean, you know, water is our water. We've got AT&T, we've got Comcast. I mean, lots of different kinds of infrastructure and all of it needs to be improved as we go forward. So, yeah. And I'd say anything you can do to help move that along. And since that seems to be your passion, that would be wonderful.
Awesome.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks.
That's great. Vice Mayor Wardakoff.
Thank you, uh, Mark, so much for being here. Um, my question is, is related to the housing element, but, uh, from a little bit different angle, I sat on the, our town's um, ad hoc housing element committee and, you know, we had a really thorough, uh, eighteen month process. As somebody said, we've had over a hundred and thirty hours of public meetings over the last couple of year, over the last, you know, year and a half, two years now. Um, and my observation along with many others is just the complexity, not only the numbers, but it's the complexity of the mandates. And I guess for a small town like us, the way, you know, we're at a point right now where we have over a half million dollars of consulting fees and expenses. Um, and it's been an incredible toll on our small staff as well, so much so that, you know, it's been a real stressor, um, and in fact, it impacts morale. There's all kinds of trickle down effects from that. So between the complexity and the expense, I'm just wondering, do you guys also look at those impacts? So not just, you know, the overall renal numbers, but the execution of this for a small town and kind of the, the ripple down effects that has both on our budget. I think it's almost like seven percent of our total budget this year. It's being done consultants, um, for the housing element, safety element, CEQA, all the related things.
Yeah.
Curious if, if that's on the radar as well.
It, it is. It's a great question, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that. And it, it is on our radar. I know that, that the state has allocated, uh, significant funding to help, uh, you know, our, our cities and towns to, to be able to, to complete their arena process and their housing element process. I don't know, and I defer to the town manager as to whether or not, uh, Portola Valley has been able to access any of that funding. Um, and if not, we can have a conversation offline to try to uh, find ways to, to, you know, be able to, um, maybe, maybe backfill some of that funding. Um, but definitely recognize that it's a financial burden. It's a, it's a staff capacity burden. Um, and I know that we've tried to, uh, at least, you know, alleviate some of that burden. Um, but I'm sure we're not going to be able to alleviate it as much as I wish we could.
Yeah.
Um, just to follow up on my colleagues' questions, I, you know, when we do have a, a housing element in place, we will actually then need to actually permit and build the housing. Um, and so I think something maybe to think about in, in your, you know, the future sessions might be just, just sort of similar conversations around getting, you know, we probably, we don't have nearly enough building inspectors.
Mm hmm.
It's another, that's, that's where the, 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 the trained population is dwindling. Um, you know, a lot of, it just, there's just like more infrastructure along those lines in terms of actually getting things built, uh, once everyone's got their plan in place. So it's just, just one extra thought from me.
Hey, man.
I'm going to leave it at that. Uh, but thank you for being here. And then I, um, so we'll take public questions or comments.
And Mary.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, I apologize. I, I clearly didn't have enough time on my calendar for this. I, I had a, I thought I was only going to be on for fifteen minutes. And I, I feel bad. I've, I've told Beth on that I would speak to a big group that's, they have a big virtual event right now. I could pop back on after. I don't know if that breaks uh, the Brown Act or any sort of local government laws or, or anything like that. Um, but I want to, uh, I want to make sure I don't keep them waiting too long.
I think we could, I think we could probably rearrange for you to come back and take a few more questions if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Do you know, roughly how, like, when would that be? Do you know, like?
I think I'm gonna, um, my district director, Mila Zalka, I think is watching this. Mila, if you can text me right now and tell me, uh, I, I think I was supposed to sign on with them at seven forty and I think it's only fifteen minutes. Um, so, so hopefully I could be back by eight if that works.
Okay. We have another, we'll go onto our next item, which, uh, might be like, I don't know how long this will take, but I'll try you after our next item.
Sure. That, that sounds great. I'll sign off here, go do that, come back over here. We'll make it work.
Okay. All right. Uh, thank you. Thank you. Um, okay. Apologies to the public. We will try to get Mark back to answer questions. Sorry about that. Um, okay. Uh, we will move on then, I believe, uh, town manager Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the, the, the farmer's market report is being continued. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct. We'll be continuing, I believe, to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us then to study item five, the study session with our town lobbyists, Audrey Ratachak. Welcome, Audrey. Thank you for being here. Um, Jeremy, did you want to introduce Audrey or?
Real briefly, uh, Audrey, I, I think people are getting to know Audrey, um, from um, crew strategies in Sacramento. They've been working with the town now about fifteen months. Um, as a reminder to the council and the public, um, Audrey comes and visits with the council three times a year, this time of year, when, um, she reports out on uh, bills of note and, uh, the state of the budget that the governor's proposed, um, and takes any questions from the council. Then comes back in July when, uh, bills have left their house of origin and are moving, um, into the other house. Um, sometimes you get spot bills around that time. So it's a good time to check in to see the progress of bills. And then in the November timeframe, when Audrey comes to hold a, a pretty pure study session with the council on the issues that are of concern or note to the collective council. So with that, Audrey, the floor is all yours.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to be here. Everyone, okay, I froze for a minute, but I think I'm back. Um, thank you so much, Jeremy and, um, everyone. It's a good evening. It's great to be here tonight. Um, I'm here, as Jeremy said, to provide an update on the legislature's activity over January and February. And then highlight some of the important, important bills that have been introduced already. So just to start, there've been nearly twenty eight hundred bills introduced before the February seventeenth deadline. This is over five hundred bills more than the average from the last few years. Um, with a third of the legislature being new, I thought there might be a little less bills this year as folks were getting their feet wet, but that has not been the case. Um, there is a bill limit. It's fifty bills per legislator for a two-year session. So they could do twenty five this year, twenty five next year, or a little more or less. Um, but so far, uh, it's broken all records for the last, uh, there's that hundred.
Zoster.
Introduced so far. Um, in terms of timing, mentioned just finished at the end of February. So we're here today to talk about um, some of those important bills. Um, just to note, many of the bills introduced already are spot bills, meaning they don't have any substantive, substantive language yet. Um, the amendment deadline for spot bills is coming up though, in the next few weeks. So we'll see, um, kind of a next round of legislation going into those bills. Um, some of them have kind of like the intent, I want to do something on homelessness, but we don't know, you know, exactly what that is yet. So those, um, are, are still coming out, but many of them are in print. Um, I'll highlight the specific bills of greatest interest in a moment, but just some of the general themes for this year that we've seen, um, based on the twenty eight hundred bills introduced so far, definitely tends to be housing, um, homelessness and then accountability for, you know, local homelessness funding, funding, um, addressing the fentanyl crisis and then a lot of behavioral health related bills, um, and like reform in the mental health space. Um, and then the governor also called a special session on oil that you probably saw in the newspapers, given the profits from oil companies when the gas prices were high. Um, but not much has been done in the special session yet. A number of authors have put forward proposals to suspend the gas tax in the special session. So I've been tagging those bill report and flagging them just because that could obviously impact local transportation revenues. Um, but it doesn't seem like those are very viable at this point, but I have them on our report just to, um, monitor because of that impact. Um, and then before going into specific bills, I wanted to mention the governor's January budget proposal. Um, Governor Newsom hit the budget as two hundred and ninety seven billion dollars. Um, and this year they're projecting a twenty two point five billion dollar budget deficit, which quite, um, stark contrast to last year's hundred billion dollar surplus. Um, and then the LAO has even been saying recently that after the tax deadline, they're expected to be four billion dollars less than that twenty two billion. Um, so May revise is supposed to have potentially even some more cuts. Um, and then in his budget, the, there, it was kind of the, the least exciting budget that there's been because there was really no new spending. Um, the whole budget just proposed to address the deficit with a mix of spending delays, calling back certain planned spending and then pausing some of the new funding that was proposed last year in the infrastructure package. Um, so there are really few new programs and funding committees, um, which was, as I said, stark contrast last year's budget where we had a twenty billion dollar climate package, lots of water and infrastructure funding, transportation funding. And again, some of that's already proposed to be scaled back. Um, some of the key components of the budget, um, the governor deferred five hundred and fifty million for broadband from the PUC for last mile infrastructure grants, which important, um, two point seven billion dollars, um, was invested though in critical investments for forest health and fire prevention. Um, and then he did maintain one point four billion for the HAP pro, um, program for homelessness. And then the encampment resolution funding for homelessness. Those were both maintained. Um, funding for housing and transportation programs remained at about eighty five to ninety percent of the allocations that were made last year. Reductions were made to the housing programs like the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program, um, Adaptive Reuse, the Manufactured Housing Opportunity and Revitalization Program. No cuts were made in those. So um, I know there are some folks that are concerned about the transit cuts that were, um, um, proposed by the governor and the legislature is looking at that in their budget subcommittees. Um, and again, this is just the governor's proposed budget. So the legislature now has the next few months to hold their budget subcommittee hearings and then they'll make additions or modifications to the governor's proposal. Those hearings, they've already started and they'll continue through May. Um, as I mentioned, the governor will then release the May revise with an updated budget based on the revenues. But again, that is supposedly supposed to get worse. So we will see some, potentially some more cuts. Um, one specific budget issue I wanted to mention was that in the governor's January budget, this is the first year that they haven't included the San Mateo County VLF shortfall reimbursement, which was thirty two million dollars and, um, that money goes to the county and the cities um, and the town. So we're mounting an effort to ensure that our legislature gets that added. Assemblymember Berman has been amazingly helpful. Assemblymember Papin and um, Becker and Weiner and our whole delegation have all been so helpful and have all signed a letter um, to the budget subcommittees and to the governor requesting that that funding be included. Um, so that remains to be seen what that process will play out. We met with Department of Finance in the governor's office today and um, doesn't sound like it's something that they potentially want to include in the May revise. So we have to work with the legislature to get it added there. Um, so we will continue that work, but I just wanted to flag that because that will be important for um, revenues coming to the town. Um, and then I think that's all on budget. Um, in terms of legislation, we've provided a full bill report to Jeremy, broken down by category of all of our tracked bills. Um, I will flag some of the priority ones here, um, and sorry if, like, I'm just shouting out bill numbers. So, um, just pause me or, um, ask any questions that you want, um, to. And then obviously you'll have the full bill report, but there are two Brown Act bills, um, and like remote participation bills of interest. Um, AB five five seven, it would extend remote participation during an emergency. Um, basically it continues the bill last year, AB three sixty one, but if there was another emergency. So if there's a wildfire and the, the town can't meet because you can't get to the center or whatever, you, we wouldn't have to do whole new legislation just because COVID's over. There's a declared emergency, then that bill, uh, would continue that remote participation that was authorized under Revis's bill last year. Um, and then AB eight seventeen by Assemblymember Pacheco is sponsored by some of the local government associations. And it would allow remote participation for boards and commissions, but not legislative bodies. Um, you know, like in, sometimes in the counties or larger areas, they have a bunch of different boards and commissions and people are having to travel like across in LA County in traffic. across in LA County in traffic for three hours to go to a non-legislative body hearing. So that would make those ability to be remote. Assemblymember Lowe has reintroduced his four-day work week bill, requiring overtime after four days. That's AB 1100. Just lagging that because last year it got a lot of press. It ended up failing last year. AB 1297 by Assemblymember Cork Silva requires every local government to complete an inventory of all public restrooms made available to the public. I'm just lagging some of the important local government ones, and then we'll go into the wildfire and housing ones. ACA-1 was reintroduced by Assemblymember Aggie R. Curry. She's brought this back for multiple years in a row, always the same bill number, but it would lower the voter threshold from two-thirds to a super majority to fifty-five percent for local GO bonds that are for affordable housing and public infrastructure projects. And then just wanted to flag that there's been a number of water and infrastructure bonds already introduced this year. I know last year, the administration wasn't as favorable to bonds because we had such a surplus and they'd rather use one-time funding, but this year, that's not the case. So I think bonds are looking more likely. There was actually three water bonds introduced, and then Assemblymember Via Pudia introduced a flood prevention bond. So all of those have been introduced and are working their way through the process. In terms of the wildfire space, AB 294 by Assemblymember Petri Norris, it's a tax exemption for amounts received for costs and losses associated with wildfires or natural disasters. Assemblymember Aggie R. Curry is back with AB 338, which makes it a public work and prevailing wage for any fuel reduction work or fire mitigation projects. That got vetoed last year. It was AB 1717, and she's back with that one. I know they're working closely with the administration on what could be viable because Natural Resources has had some potential concerns on the impact there. So they're having those negotiations now. AB 478 by Connolly. It would, for insureds sixty-five years or older, it would limit how much their insurance can go up if you're in a high fire severity zone for property insurance. So just wanted to flag that. And then my last wildfire one is by Senator Alvaro Gill, S70, and it's just an intent bill right now, but it would to direct state agencies to ensure grant eligibility for projects that reduce the risk of wildfire in neighborhoods and communities in high fire severity zones. So I just wanted to flag that one because we will continue to track it as language becomes available. I have a couple of housing bills to mention. Hopefully I'm not overwhelming or going too fast, but there's always so many important issues for the town. In the housing space so far, which has been a lot of the bills, like pretty much everything has been public safety or housing this year. AB 426 is a new bill that would require HCD to develop a plan for the state to keep pace with building infrastructure and housing units during an economic downturn. So I'm flagging that one. AB 34 is a Grayson bill. It would authorize the HCD to notify a city or county or the attorney general when a planning agency of a local government fails to comply with the hearings, with the five hearing notices for RENA. AB 1287 grants additional density bonuses if you meet affordability requirement. And then Assemblymember Lee has AB 1490 that would require a local government to provide affordable housing projects if it's adaptive reuse and has a certain income threshold. Basically, all of the approval entitlements have to be approved within thirty days or less. So another streamlining bill. And then AB 976 by Ting would prohibit a local agency from imposing an owner occupancy requirement on any new ADUs. And then there's been two bond bills on the housing side that I wanted to mention. Assemblymember Wicks has introduced an affordable housing bond. It doesn't have an amount in it yet, I don't believe. And then Senator Portantino introduced SB 834, which is a new homeownership bond act, and it's a $25 billion homeownership bond act. So lots on the bond front, but that's kind of an overview of the housing wildfire and other general local government legislation. Obviously, there's more on our full report, but I don't want to be overwhelming and flag too many, so I tried to prioritize what I thought were some of the highlights. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The policy committees are really just starting this next week. The only committee that's met so far is Public Safety because they had a third of all the bills introduced were referred to Public Safety. So they had to start meeting really early, but the rest of the committees will start in earnest next week. And then we'll start to see those spot bills get amended and see new legislation that will add to our report based on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. I will take questions from my colleagues. We'll start again with Councilmember Haskell in London.
It sounds like there's just a lot of motion and not a lot of specifics at this point. Clearly, what I will ask about the insurance, the limitation on increases in insurance. Can you just dive into that a little bit more or put some context around it?
Yes, I can send the full bill as I look through it, too. I was just pulling highlights. But that's a bill by Assemblymember Connolly. So if an insured is sixty-five years or older, it says the bill limits an increase in the yearly premium for a residential property insurance by no more than twenty-five percent for a property located in a high or very high fire severity zone. And it allows only one premium increase in a five-year period.
Okay. Okay.
And you're right, there aren't a lot of specifics yet. It was just like a mad dash to introduce all your placeholder bills before the end of February deadline, and then the first policy committee really weeds out like a third of, you know, or not even that many of the bills, but really starts to, stuff starts to take shape. A lot of the bills will die, then you kind of know what's going to move forward or not. But at this point, it's just like, here's everything that's been introduced. There's three thousand bills, and I tried to prioritize like twenty, you know, so it'll start to take shape over the next couple of months.
It sounds incredibly chaotic. I will
Always is.
Look forward to reading the summary. I do appreciate the summary because those are tough things to get through, so I'll look to that, but thank you very much. I'll turn it back to my fellow council members.
Okay, Councilmember Hufte, questions?
The only, the one that's stood out as affecting our, our performance here is the possibility of meeting virtually for non-legislative committees. And when would we expect that actually to be happening? If it passes, when does it actually become functional?
Yeah, so if it passed this year, they're just majority vote bills, so the earliest that the bills would take effect would be next year. But I'm checking right now to see if there was any sort of delayed implementation on those. No, it seems like, yeah, it would just start in 2024, so.
Thank you.
Greg, Councilor Taylor.
So you said there are twenty-eight hundred bills. How many of those are likely to pass? Just in rough numbers.
Yeah, it's hard to tell. I'll say that the first House Policy Committee, the bills are all in the same house that they started in, so all the assembly bills are still in the assembly, so a lot of times they don't, they give them kind of the first pass to get through that committee because it's their, you know, fellow colleagues, and it's the first, hey, give me a chance, we'll keep fighting. And then the Appropriations Committee will really start to weigh those out because especially with the deficit, we only have so much cost. So as you know, the majority of things will die on the suspense file in the Appropriations Committee in May or so. But I mean, a rough number, I mean, not even, I would say, like a third of them.
Okay, thanks. So then you mentioned spot bills. What does that mean?
Basically, you, a bill cannot be introduced after the February seventeenth deadline. So if you don't know, like how Assemblymember Berman's working on that bill that he mentioned where there's not a lot of the details yet, he'll had to have introduced something just to have the bill placeholder number. So it'll say like SB four or whatever the number is, and then if you look at the bill, it just, it doesn't do anything. The bill changes a comma or something in the code section. And basically, they just needed to introduce that bill number to hold the spot, and then they can amend it into what it'll be at a later date. Or you'll see what's called an intent bill, and it'll say, it's our intent to do something on homelessness, but you don't know what that is yet, so.
Got it. So a spot bill and a placeholder bill are sort of the same thing, is that?
Yep, intent bill, they're all kind of, yeah, the same thing. We just, yeah, you don't know what the substance of it is yet.
Okay, and then it's my understanding, like, some of these could be completely gutted, right? They could sort of be one thing. How far down, you know, in, through the process can a bill get? And still effectively get completely gutted and turned into some, something else magical?
I'll say the majority, you have to, there's always an exception, so it could be probably two days before the end of session in August, and they could gut and amend and do whatever they want on something. So nothing's ever out of reach in that sense. But the majority of bills will have to be amended in the next two weeks into at least like what's going to get them referred to the appropriate committee. And again, amendments can be changed after that, but not that would send them to a whole new topic or anything like that. So the majority of bills will know what idea they're going to do in the next couple of weeks. But technically, they could gut and amend something and get the rule waivers if they really want to at the end of session. They do it all the time. Last year, the governor had his five, like, climate bills that he wanted to put forward, and they didn't even come into print till like five days before session was over. And they gut and amended them all into the bills, got the appropriate rule waivers, and four out of five of them ended up passing, so.
Yeah, right, kind of crazy. Yeah, yeah, exactly, kind of crazy business, but. So then my last question is, on your summary, which I always find interesting, I don't get it, I don't know how to judge, like, well, this one's like on a sort of, I'll say fast track, but I want to be careful. I don't mean anything technical. But, but like this one's on a track to likely passage versus, yeah, I mean, this one's out there, and if it does pass, it's going to impact you, but the chances of passing it are slim to none. I don't know how, when I read this, to know which ones I should be going, well, I really got to pay attention to this versus, yeah, interesting to know, but, you know, until it gets some traction, not one that I really need to track.
Yep, that makes total sense. I can work with Jeremy. I would say over the next month, like, the policy committees will meet till the end of April. So within March and April, we should already have a number of the bills weeded out just because they didn't make it through the first policy committee hearing. And then I can go through, and there's, I have a notes button on my tracker, and I can include that on the bill report and provide you a little, I mean, obviously, I can always be wrong, but my sense of just based on this was introduced last year and it died, but they reintroduced the exact same bill, so it's not likely again, or, you know, I can provide some of that color for you, too. Or I can just make, you know, a higher priority list that's narrowed down even more of, these are viable and priority, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that is a little color. I think that's exactly the word I was looking for. And then finally, as a lobbyist, I know right now what you do for us is you just kind of give us a summary of bills that might impact us. But what's the process for actually lobbying? Because it did sound like, you know, you were describing earlier where you're working with some of the assembly members and with the governor to actually make some changes. So if, if we wanted to get engaged in that, and not that we're ready today, but if we wanted to engage in that process, how does that work? I mean, how, how does it work for a lobbyist to represent Portola Valley? Or maybe like a woo-woo community or a set of woo-woo communities, which is my particular interest? How would we go about that?
Yeah, I mean, we would just revise our contract or, you know, whatever it would need to be logistically to just cover that scope of work. But yeah, that, it would be weighing in on budget items, like for San Mateo County, that's why I was mentioning the VLF item. We work super closely with Assemblymember Berman. I saw he joined again, so thank you so much for your help on all of our VLF issues. But we work on, you know, getting things added to the state budget to, through our legislative delegation, to hopefully get additional funding for the town or fighting back proposals like we all did last year on the VLF trailer bill that would have taken our own money to pay the shortfall. So sometimes it's, you know, fighting back on those type of proposals. And then just on the general legislation, you know, supporting bills that are helpful, opposing ones that would be concerning or working with the author's office to get, you know, necessary amendments and things like that. So and the occasional, you know, you might have a sponsored bill that the town wants to do. We need this, this policy change. And then usually we would select someone from, you know, our delegation, like Assemblymember Berman or Becker or others to help carry that legislation, and their staff always, you know, does great, too, but the lobbyists can help kind of shepherd that along and take some of that burden off, so. Those are just some of the things that we can do.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. Yeah, because my real interest is seeing woo-woo communities come together and start to exert some lobbying effort. So, but thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, I, it's my understanding that Assemblymember Berman has a limited time to stay with us here. So just in the interest of getting questions answered, because you didn't get to them earlier, I'm going to, Audrey, apologies, but I want to take a public comment, public questions and comments for the Assemblymember, and then we'll come back to you. So I apologize, but thank you for waiting. So public questions or comments for the Assemblymember. I see John Silver's hand up. John, go ahead.
Thank you. First off, I want to say that I had both the pleasure and honor of serving with Mark on the Board of Directors of the Peninsula Democratic Coalition back in 2009. I was the only Republican member back when liberal Republican wasn't an oxymoron. I seem to have a good authority, Teddy Roosevelt, Hiram Johnson, fighting Bob Lefolli, and Abraham Lincoln might have been liberal Republicans, but I digress. But Mark looks a lot the way he looked in 2009. I know I do not. I did re-register as a Democrat because I didn't want to embarrass anyone after I was asked to serve on the board. So I became just another boring liberal Democrat. I've asked Judith to have a pint for me in London. I would love a pint of good British porter right now, but I'll have to.
Not right now.
Not right now, no. Also, I want, I really thought you all asked, all five of you asked great questions of the Assemblyman. I also should say that I am ashamed that as a county planning commissioner for nearly thirteen years, I didn't go out of my way to become more aware of the deplorable housing conditions on the coast side. My ex and I looked at buying a fourteen-acre apple ranch farm in, outside of Ashland or near Medford years ago. Our Realtor said you won't like it. It was dreadful. It was a toxic waste dump. The housing was terrible. The farmhouse was something I wouldn't even put a rat in, let alone a human being. It was shameful. I've got to thank Mark for standing up for women's right to choose. His opponent said nothing about that in his statement of candidacy. My God, when our human rights are being threatened, we need to stand up. We've got a highly reactionary US Supreme Court. We've got to fight for democracy and human rights. Also, I think it would be wonderful, Mark, if sometime you could come to Portola Valley, and I would love to show you around. Because the obstacles that are, my council members discussed are very real. Most of the land that is primed for housing development in Portola Valley has already been developed into one or two or plus acre plots. It's not very practical to back and redevelop those. If we'd had strong housing laws after World War II, the Bay Area would be a heaven. We'd have agricultural land, all of this Silicon Valley, dense cities and mass transit that would work. But it's too late for that. That's an opportunity missed. But anyway, there have to be better ways. Though we can do things here, and people in Portola Valley who are afraid of people in smaller houses, I think I have no sympathy for that. Lastly, I want to say that I called your local office a couple of weeks back and spoke, I think the young woman's name was Leslie. She was so generous at the time. She mentioned there's so much nastiness that when your office puts out something, you get a lot of FUs back. We need, we need to listen to each other and be decent. Also, I'm glad you're speaking to the Temple of Bethlehem. I was born and raised Mormon. I wouldn't be here if my father's father hadn't married my father's mother, who was the second wife. And people assume, because my name is John Silver, I'm Jewish. No, I'm just another boring liberal Mormon. A secular one now. But in this last election, someone anonymous caller called me a cunning Jew. I'm sorry, antisemitism prejudice bigotry is alive, even in the town of Portola Valley. It's a small percentage, but one person like that is too much. We need to stand together for decency and democracy for all. Thank you.
Here, here. Thanks, John. Okay, because he was waiting for a while, Jean Chapu is on Zoom. Jean, go ahead.
Hope you can hear me. I'm on my cell phone using cellular because we haven't had internet. Thanks to AT&amp;T for the last two weeks. Out all of January, and so I'm going to move forward here. Representative Berman, it's my understanding that you have voted in favor of all the housing bills that have been put forth by the legislature. Now, prior to SB nine and ten being passed, Now, prior to SB nine and 10 being passed, uh, polls showed Californians were opposed to it by over 70%. My question is, why did you vote in favor of it?
Is that, Jean, is that, is that, is that your only question?
Uh, yeah, tell John Silver, I've got an extra pair of pants I can give him the next time he goes to bed.
Will do. Uh, okay. Assembly member, would you, will you, uh, would you care to respond?
Yeah. Why should we just take all the, maybe take all the comments and then I can respond at once? Does that?
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll know the questions and move. Yeah. Okay. Um, Allison Illich, go ahead.
Hi. Um, yeah, Allison Illich here, and thanks for being here. Um, it's great to have you. Um, I just want to echo all the questions and concerns that our wonderful council members have all made and John Silver as well. And we are in a real pickle here and, um, I've been in this town pretty much since I was in kindergarten and that's, uh, well over 50 years ago. Um, so this is as challenging a time as I've ever seen it. Um, I, I have to be honest, I, I voted for you. I have no issue with the bills that you are introducing. I think they're all terrific and spot on. But I was kind of disappointed tonight to hear you come on and say that you represent this district from Pacifica to Saratoga. And all of these towns along the way here are facing this incredible, challenging situation. And you must have realized that this is the first thing on our minds. Um, we're working like crazy out here to make this happen. And, um, I am interested in knowing if there are any bills that you are looking at sponsoring or talking to your colleagues about to help us along the lines of what Craig Taylor suggested regarding infrastructure funding, um, to help our town. Uh, you know, with staff that we need to, to, um, make this happen. We have so many restrictions in our building codes because of where we live. Um, many of us chose to, to live here in spite of the fact that we have fault lines and we are, um, subject to wildfire risk. Um, but that also means it's a lot more expensive to live here and it's expensive to build here. And so we just really don't know how this is supposed to work. I would encourage you all in Sacramento rather than, um, and I understand the frustration. And I really feel like a lot of these mandates have come out of that frustration. It's almost a backlash is the way it feels, at least to me. Um, but I think just being pragmatic, if you, in your position specifically, can look at things regionally and see where all of your district could make these, um, requirements happen in a way that makes sense across the entire district of yours, rather than going town by town, that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Uh, Carolyn, did you still want to talk? Yeah. Carolyn Vertonghen is coming to the microphone here in town center.
Good evening, um, Assembly Member, Senator, um, Berman. Thank you so much for joining us, but I hope we will see you more because like everybody has said tonight. Um, this mandate is very expensive and in this town we have many constraints. Uh, you also mentioned the economy, but I think we have a change in an economy. For many years, um, government was sponsoring corporate business. And those are the ones who actually needed more housing for their labors, but that is changing. And you've seen how many, uh, corporate businesses have laid off people. That doesn't happen with the small businesses. So perhaps like with other residents, I hope that you will bring it back to Sacramento and really review that mandate and see if it's practical, especially in those times where, um, every town has a deficit. And we worked twice as hard, if not more, and all the bills that we pay have tripled and we have no infrastructure repairs. So, um, it's really, uh, we live in a sad time. I also, uh, and I was very impressed with your wildfire resilience package. I had no idea how much, uh, California spends, uh, on wildfire. And, and I see all these programs, um, you know, um, grants and then even, uh, landowner assistance. Um, I hope that you can come to our town and help us with these grants and, uh, landowner assistance, or at least explain it to us. Because we're in desperate need of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, I see Rita's hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. You know, uh, Portola Valley is, is a beautiful town and you should come down and, and look around our, our beautiful, incredible town. And a lot of people see this town as, oh, they don't need any help. They don't need any money. But you know, we have real infrastructure issues. I won't go over the housing issues that other people have already mentioned, but that's for our new people coming into town that will build for some way and somehow. But those buildings will have infrastructure built on from those developers or depending on whatever concessions, the residents will have to offset whatever infrastructure happens for those sites. But for the current 4,300 to 4,500 residents, we have some severe infrastructure issues. You know, it's amazing that, uh, like Jean mentioned, his internet's not been working for two weeks. And that's a constant thing here. You know, our landlines, our copper lines, or however people want to call our phone lines that if you pick up, uh, you know, you pick up that phone and even if you can't speak, 911 knows where you live and the fire department knows where you live. That's out last, last year, my phone was out for 40 days straight and I'm not alone. And I've got two lines and both of them were out and it's a constant thing. We have an older population in our town that depends on those lines because we also can't depend on our cell phone coverage and our, our electricity. You know, we can't depend on these things, but people from the outside look at our town as, oh, they could fix it. They can do these things, but we can't. And we actually need some attention and we need some coordination of these things. And with the housing element, the way that it is, it's like, yeah, we can figure out a way, but we still need to work on the infrastructure, not just for the people that we want to offer our best to, but for the people that are currently here and have our information of our fire, uh, you know, our, our, our fire danger and the different risks, have that really looked into at what it is, not, um, what we're trying to, what it's perceived that we're not doing for these wonderful people that we want to welcome or residents that want to downside in our town. So please don't forget us. I know that there's lots of other needs, but we have real needs here also. So thank you for what you're doing. And don't forget about transportation, please, because our bus service was cut. And here we are with those numbers inviting more people in our town, but we do not have bus service for those people, which means more cars. And, you know, we, we just need some help and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next up is Neil Weintraub. Neil, go ahead.
Unmuted. I found the button. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, sir, and thanks for coming back. Um, well, we have to reduce these to a question, I suppose. Uh, I, perhaps as you know, if you don't, I'm happy to send you the links. Uh, the, uh, you know, there's an issue in with the Sacramento government, a fundamental defect that's come up. And that is state order of California has found serious and numerous defects with the Rena numbers. And in particular, the handling by the HCD of, with the process coming up with the Rena numbers. So I want to be clear, this is, this isn't a policy question. Uh, this is a, a fundamental problem, uh, you know, a part of the government's not functioning correctly. And, you know, my understanding is you're representing it us to the governments. So to boil it down to a question, um, will you take whatever legislative action is necessary to address the problems identified by the state auditor of California about the Sacramento agency, the HCD agency to address these issues raised by the state auditor? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Karen Askey has a hand up. Karen, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah. Thank you very much for coming and, um, the council as well as Allison Illich really touched on a lot of the things I wanted to say, but I, I wanted to share with you from some resident perspective, what is, what our thought process is regarding some of the issues with the housing element. A- as we've talked about, we're in a woo wee zone. We're in a very high fire, you know, danger area. And with the limited resources we have and where we can put this housing, over half of it is going to be going on our major evacuation route. So there are a lot of residents that are already worried about fire safety and now we have to deal with, how are we going to get out of this town if something were to happen? The other thing that Rita mentioned is, is we don't have any kind of bus service except a school bus. And as you know, these bills require less parking. And as you being a green guy going for, you know, no gas powered motors and stuff, we're going to be bringing in more pollution and more traffic into our town as a result of that. Um, the other thing that's going to happening is one of the proposed sites is open space and a park. And it, it was, uh, deeded as such back in 1976 and we're going to be losing that. Now, we want an open community. We welcome everybody here because we have a lot of, uh, open space from, um, the mid, mid peninsula, mid peninsula, open space. And we want to keep it that way. But these are the sacrifices that we are making for this. And it seems as though the state took such a cookie cutter approach and didn't look at all these specific issues. And I loved Allison's comment that we need to look at things regionally and band together. Or, uh, Councilman Taylor's comment about how do the woo wee zones band together to come up with things that really can help with our resident safety and everybody can enjoy everybody else's community. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Sorry. Um, we're also taking away some small businesses that, to, to take the land to develop for, um, residential. And again, that's a big sacrifice. And I don't think the state intended this, but this is what's happening. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, that is all the hands I see raised. Uh, Assembly Member Berman, do you want to respond to some of those questions?
Yeah, I would love to. Thank you, Mayor, and then thanks everyone for your patience. And let me jump on with the, the Zoom with Beth Al, which was actually about, uh, abortion access and, and women's reproductive rights. So, uh, appreciate that. Uh, appreciate all the comments that were made. And again, I want to emphasize that I, that I understand how difficult, uh, this work is. I understand how, how challenging this is for a town like Portola Valley, um, in, in, in developing a housing element. Um, and, and, you know, again, I wish, I wish we'd done a better job every eight years over the past 30 plus years. Um, and, and hadn't gotten to the place that we had, that, that we're in, which is where we just have such a severe housing crisis across, um, the, across California, but acutely in the Bay Area and acutely, uh, in my district, um, that's leading to so many other challenges that, that our communities are facing from homelessness. Uh, you know, somebody mentioned people driving in, in, in creating pollution. Uh, but we have so, you know, teachers in Portola Valley, people who work at Roberts Market, uh, who, who have to drive in from Tracy, uh, or Gilroy or, or, um, Stockton or further, um, because that's, those are the only places that they can afford to live. People who, who have homes in those communities, but drive to my district, sleep in their cars for three or four nights while they work their jobs. Uh, and then drive back to, to be with their families in parts of the state that have more affordable housing because we're not paying them enough, um, to be able to live in the, or not in anywhere near the communities that they work. Um, so I, I wish we weren't at this place again, but, but I definitely appreciate the, the difficulty of it and appreciate, uh, you know, everything that, that the town council is doing, that the staff is doing and that the community is doing to try to pass a, 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 a housing element. And I've, I've had, uh, you know, we, we typically, I represent, I think now it's 14 or 15 different, different cities and towns. Um, and every two years we have a, a community coffee in each one. Um, so I'll be back. We, we've had two of them at Roberts Market, um, in, in prior legislative sessions. For COVID, we didn't, we didn't do one, uh, but we'll be back there again, uh, at some point in the next year and a half. Um, and somebody mentioned kind of wildfire issues, uh, and I definitely want to work with the town to see how we can better support, uh, what the town is doing, uh, to try to address wildfire concerns. We actually, Portola Valley was kind enough to host us, um, in, I think it was 2019. Jeremy would remember better. Uh, but I believe it was 2019. I had a, a assembly district. At that point it was Assembly District 24, uh, but Assembly District 24, five wildfire town hall. Um, that was in Portola Valley where we brought, uh, folks from Cal Fire and, and Cal OES and others together, um, to talk about what the state can do and, and how we can work together. So I definitely want to do everything that I can to support the town as it's, uh, figuring out, um, you know, evacuation routes and new, new fire zones and other things. Um, internet and connectivity is a huge problem. Uh, and, uh, and I'm sorry to those who have had, uh, you know, their, their, their connection to the outside world cut off. Uh, I was in a meeting late, late last week with, uh, Supervisor Ray Mueller, uh, Congresswoman SU, Senator Becker, all the telecom companies, Caltrans, PG&E, um, to talk about how poor their service has been to the more rural parts of San Mateo County. Um, and how they need to do better and how we need to fast track efforts to create resiliency and redundancy. So that, uh, that, that you folks don't lose that critical connection, especially to emergency services, especially to 911. Um, and so we're trying to press them to go faster, um, and, and, um, you know, prioritize San Mateo County, um, more in what they're doing. And we're going to keep on, keep on working on that. Um, SB nine and SB 10 came up. Um, SB 10, for what it's worth, it was local control. It had like the whole bill is local control. Um, for folks who, who kind of weren't aware of that, it's all voluntary for cities that want to take advantage of it. Um, SB nine. Um, you know, uh, those of us in, in Sacramento, actually, we're kind of looking at ourselves saying, you know, we're, we're, we're getting, we're getting beat up a lot for, for legislation that we don't think is actually going to lead to the development of much housing. Um, it might lead to some, um, but, but not a lot. And I think that's kind of bearing itself out. There aren't a lot, a lot splits happening, um, in, in my district or, or anywhere else, uh, in California. A, 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 a poll was alluded to. I haven't seen it. I'm not familiar with, um, you know, who that poll went out to and the methodology and, uh, the, the various details. But what I do hear a lot, um, is, is how much people are struggling with the cost of housing, how much, uh, school districts are struggling to hire and retain teachers. And for what it's worth, that was a problem when I was going to school in the eighties and nineties in Palo Alto. My favorite teacher, Mr. Perry, who was a wrestler at Stanford and then came over to teach at then Jordan Middle School, left with his young family to move to Portland, uh, because the, this is in the early nineties because the cost of housing was so high. Um, and that problem's only gotten worse and worse for our small businesses, for our restaurants, for our cities, for our cities in, in, in Silicon Valley. So, um, I, I know that again, I know it's, it's hard. I know it's controversial. Um, I wish we weren't at the place that we're at. Uh, but I think everyone can agree that, um, you know, we, 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 we can't keep on going with the status quo, given the just insane cost of housing and, and the homelessness issues that it's creating. And I hear the conversation around, you know, can we, can we maybe put more housing over here and less housing over there? I, for the first six years in the assembly, I represented East Palo Alto and Bell Haven and North Fair Oaks. Uh, and, and those folks would argue, uh, I think pretty convincingly that they've been the dumping ground for housing for a long time. Uh, and that it's time that, that every community, uh, in Silicon Valley, especially at least every community who has, you know, residents that, that have benefited from the remarkable, uh, economic boom of Silicon Valley and, and, and the companies and jobs that have been created. Um, needs to, needs to play a role, uh, in helping address the housing crisis that's been created. So, um, you know, I'm open to ideas. Uh, you can, you know, I want to work with the town to figure out how I can better support you, uh, as you're, uh, you know, doing what's necessary to abide by state law. Um, but I also severely believe that our housing crisis and our, our housing affordability crisis is one of the, that and climate change, which are both inextricably linked for what it's worth, are, are two of the biggest crises, uh, that California is facing. And, and so that's, that's why, uh, I've typically supported. I don't know if I've supported every housing bill, but I do know I've supported most of them. Uh, and that's because I see people of my generation, uh, and younger and older, frankly, people who have worked in our hospital, in our clinics, uh, but were never able to afford to buy a house. And now that they're retiring and they're going to be on a fixed income, they are being forced to move so far away from the community that they served for their entire career, uh, because we failed that building housing. So, uh, I am passionate about it. I apologize. Uh, I know, uh, there are some differences of opinion and I respect that. Um, but when I see so many of my constituents that are struggling day to day, uh, I feel like I have to do something. That's it, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. And thank you for coming back and answering questions and listening to the community. And, um, yeah, I, I, obviously people are welcome to, to contact your office as well if they have, if they want to talk more or, or have, have more comments to share with you. So again, uh, thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. I thank you for coming back and answering questions and listening to the community. And um, yeah, I I obviously people are welcome to to contact your office as well if they have, if they want to talk more or or have have more comments to share with you. So again, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, have a good evening.
Y'all too. Thank you. Thanks for serving. I know these these nights are late or for for Councilmember Haskell really early. Uh, so appreciate what y'all do.
Right. Thank you.
Take care, Mark.
Thanks.
We are on to, oh, I'm sorry. Let's bring, um, we were in the middle of our study session. Um, if Audrey's still there, we will bring her back and we can complete that. Were we on uh? Remind me, we were going public. We were still on our questions, I think. Is that right?
I think we were just, I don't, I don't.
Have we just?
I was the only one that hadn't asked. I don't have any questions, so you could go on to.
I don't think I have any either. So is is Audrey there? I just want to make sure she's actually still.
Yes, I'm on.
There you are. Okay. I just couldn't see on our. There you are. Okay. Um, okay. Um, I will take a public comment for for the lobbyist. If there's no other questions from the council, I'll take public comment on the lobbyist report. Again, apologize for interrupting this this conversation, but we did want to make sure that we got our our I know we had some public questions for some of them, Berman.
And I would say, Audrey, that Mark owes you now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he'll take your phone calls. Yeah. Okay, uh, I see a hand up here from Allison. Allison, go ahead.
Hi, um, first of all, uh, Craig, thanks for the comment about um, you know, potentially looking at other ways that Audrey could be helpful to us in terms of doing some actual lobbying. I think that is a fantastic idea. I am totally in support of that. Um, this was, I actually had another question for um Assemblyman Berman, but Audrey may be able to help me with this as well. Audrey, are you hearing any kind of chatter, talk, um, anything from legislators regarding bills? I mean, I understand this housing situation. We heard it from um from Mark Berman. It's it's we're in a state of crisis. Is it that bad that there are folks on the Hill there talking about um what to do with all of our empty commercial space, large institutional landowners? Um, even the open space, you know, that we have so much of in California. Is it getting to that point? Are those conversations being had? Are there legislatures that are thinking about proposing bills to look at those options?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything related to like Agland or open space. There are, um, if you recall, last year, A B twenty eleven and S B six. Those were the two kind of high profile streamlining bills, and those work for converting or rezoning like office space to be used for um um housing. And so uh they always face a somewhat tough road, and then there's, you know, uh, we'll lose some local government ability to say, you know, do their own zoning and have your own, say, in the process when you get that streamlining. Um, and those had a lot of labor requirements that added at the end. So I think what we've heard from a lot of like developer folks is that they weren't probably like super workable, that it would be used all the time, maybe one or two projects, but how it ended, it was so narrow that it might not be super viable. Um, this year I saw Assemblymember Haney from San Francisco introduce like an office um conversion um where you can convert like office space to housing. I haven't looked at all the details yet, but I think it's A B fifteen thirty two. Um, but to answer your question, there's that type of stuff going on, or Senator Weiner has like housing by right on like religious institutions as before, things like that. But I haven't seen anything on like open space or um kind of agricultural, um, like moving towards housing there.
Uh, any other questions from the public uh for out for for Audrey? Uh, I don't see any hands on Zoom. Anyone in the in the room here? Okay, if there are no other or another comments from the council, then um then I think, uh, thank you for for the presentation and I know all the work you're doing for us, and uh we will be talking to you again soon, I'm sure.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for having me. Have a good night.
You too.
Would you mind if we took a quick break before we move to the next one?
Yes, we will take five minutes. Uh, we'll come back at eight forty-five to move on to the consent agenda. Okay, we are back and on item six, which is the consent agenda. If members of the public want to comment on the cons- anyone can comment on the consent agenda. Only council members can pull them. If you have a comment on a consent agenda item, you may you may make it now. And um, and then we will, the council will determine whether or not to 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 pull items and discuss them. Uh, are there comments on consent? Uh, John Silver has his hand.
Thank you for allowing me to comment on an item that is not on the consent agenda. If anyone ever doubts, just occasionally write thing to bend the rules, watch or read To Kill a Mockingbird again. I won't say more about that. But when I look at those photos and I see my own much younger self pictured in many photos there, I've known personally, considered friends, every one of the people in those photographs, with the exception of Milt Johnson, who was appointed to a year and a half of an unexpired term and never ran for election. I never met Milt. Also, I've got to say that I've been, I went to, as I think I mentioned before, I went to fifth grade in this room, which is about half its size. We were packed in like sardines. But that was public, we had well-funded public education. We were a bit cramped, and I'm grateful for it. Um, I'm probably the oldest person in this room tonight, though Mary may be almost old enough to be my younger sister, but I I'm not sure. Anyway. But I, did I say I've been to meetings in this room that went to two A M? I think I did. Should I be old enough? I forget. Um, but I, most of all, I've got to say what a gracious, wonderful, articulate and beautiful woman. I'm sorry, I'm a dude. I notice those things. Sue Crane is and was. And we were good friends, and we would have remained good friends had she not had the displeasure to. I know it comes as shock. I can get on people's nerves occasionally, just once in a while. After, I can't remember how many years, Sue Crane and I were barely on speaking terms. And by the time we left office ninety-three, I think it's fair to say we were at daggers points. And we we supported a lot of the same things. I would send a friend over to get her signature and stuff, and she agreed it was good. I didn't come over myself. But in two thousand and three, my emissary wasn't available. I went over, but I had a lot of time to think about it. And Sue was so gracious. She, I told her, Sue, I know I was a real pianist, but my my being I don't want to say something. Well, I was going to say an obscenity, but my being a jerk, let's just settle for that with you personally. And some others helped me learn to be a better public servant. And I said to the extent I serve the people in San Mateo County well on the County Planning Commission, I have your suffering to thank for it. She was so gracious and accepted my apology. What a wonderful one. And, you know, Sue is so much a part of what our valley is. And I just wish, like, I wish for so many friends that we could, she and I and others could age in reverse for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Other comments on the consent item? Okay, uh, Rita has her hand up. Rita, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I ask that you remove item six C from the consent agenda, please. The contract extensions with urban planning partners for housing element and safety element. This item asks for more funds for urban planning contractors, but it does not show the status of the work that's been completed. There are many items in the twenty twenty-one contracts that are included in the packet. And the original basis of these uh contracts, not all items have been started or completed. During the last meeting, residents asked for transparency and accountability on charges that were being asked of the residents to fund. This request on the consent calendar for more funds does not satisfy that request from the residents. Without having audits or year-end financials from twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I guess twenty twenty, finally, uh, the audit was done and the year-end financials were done. So it's twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. It makes it hard for residents to understand the justification of more funds when we are taking money out of our reserves and not closing prior year's books or showing any financial coding related to the different projects that we're writing checks for. The open dot gov does not show how this money has been spent already. I hope that we can work towards being fiscally transparent in Portola Valley. So I ask that there be some type of audit on urban planners to see how that money, it's a lot of money. I I think it's about half a million dollars. How that money has already been spent? And how is it going to be spent in the future? You know, um, we we ask for that. So please, this council to to do that for us moving forward rather than just approving these open-ended contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie is next. Leslie, go ahead.
Hi, well, a little surprised. I guess I'm I'm following Rita here and supporting, she had the same point. Um, I'd like six C pulled off of the consent calendar. Um, if you read it, it's very confusing and very hard to follow. It appears that we have consultants hiring consultants, um, which is unbelievable, given the fiscal times. I'd like to see a clear explanation of the expenditures, the funds and the funds involved here um for everyone in the town. I mean, I think if people actually looked at this, they'd be kind of impal- kind of appalled. We're dipping into our reserves. So literally consultants can hire consultants. Um, so I'd like to see that pulled, and I'd like to see a meeting, and I don't know what kind it is, but some sort of general group meeting with the town explaining what we are spending on this. As one person put it, we're up close to half a million dollars in the housing element. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any public comment? Carolyn Vertonghen?
Thank you for my residents, fellow residents to explain it uh so well. Uh, Rita, thank you for the details. Um, have you looked at these reports? Really? Um, they're as confusing as when they were submitted. They continue to use data that is not belonging to Portola Valley. It's data from other cities. Um, yes, we would like to know where we're going, spending more money. And and we have not even seen the results of the safety elements. We need to go somewhere. So yes, we would like to have a meeting. We would like to see transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see no other hands up. So we, uh, does it, does it, do any of my colleagues want to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I I'd like to pull six E and six F.
Six E and F, that's how you said?
Yes, okay.
Um, isn't F postponed? Didn't we get an email?
No, um, no, they, uh, no, I I think the, I think, uh, I think the charter man was was is still um in order. We, there was a, there was there was a, there was an application for the committee that we'll have to approve in twenty seconds, but I believe this charter amendment is still is still valid.
Okay, okay, that that was a question. Um, I would pull A and C. A, I have a brief couple of questions and C, I have some clarifying questions.
Okay, six A and six C.
Yeah.
Six E and six F?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that leaves items uh six B and D. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion uh to approve the items B and D from the consent agenda.
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warnikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Alves?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. Uh, six A, Judith, go ahead.
Sure, um, one question is, I assume there's a separate repository of all of the minutes because it it says that I made a number of suggested edits to the meeting minutes. I'm not sure where the implemented minutes lie. Um, are they published separately? Uh, that's a question for the town staff, I guess.
Um,
Jeff, I can.
Jeremy, go ahead. Yeah.
Through the chair, uh, Judith, the um, I'm going to make sure I'm following your question. Currently, right now, in the council agenda packets is are are action minutes. Those are included. There are no additional minutes. So I just want to make sure that I understand what question.
Yeah, so essentially, I've been making some comments to correct names and the like. But if they're never, if the action minutes are not updated, then there's a and kept somewhere by the town, there's no point in my even doing that. So because, for example, it just says I made a number of suggested edits to the meeting minutes, doesn't say what they are. And then it says, um, approval of action minutes for regular meeting of February eighth. It doesn't say as amended. So I do not know what we approved. Um, it it says it in two different places, it seems. So it's a little
Well, let me, okay. Sure, sure. Let me try to address it if I can. Um, so once the council takes um an action on minutes, the action minutes, if they're to be amended, the clerk or other staff take notes to make those amendments, and then that's the end of the action. Then they're posted on the council's um website.
They're they're posted later. Okay, that's fine. That, I just want to make sure. Uh, so under item three, uh, Vic Shafter, his name is spelled differently here than below, so whatever the correct spelling is should be made. Um, and that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on the minutes, item six A? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will take a motion to approve them.
Motion to approve six A.
As amended.
Okay, as amended. Um,
Yeah.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warnikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Alves?
Aye. Okay, item six C, the contracts to urban planning partners.
Yeah.
Judith, do you want to?
Yeah.
Line Director Laura Russell's here to answer questions about this one as well, so.
Super, uh, that's the right person. Um, so I know these aren't formal statements. I want to know if I'm reading this correctly, like a formal financial statement. Um, there's a mention of three grants totaling two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that was awarded to cover some of the housing element costs. But it doesn't say how those grants relate to the uh dollar amounts in the charts for housing element expense, sequo review expense. Um, that that together total four hundred and ninety-two thousand. So either that's just information or it's been factored in. But if you could explain why that information, how it relates to the charted out uh expenses that you have on page fourteen?
Thank you. In the simplest terms, you can subtract those grant amounts from the four hundred and ninety-two thousand number um to look at the the approximate town cost. Um, these, these contracts don't include absolutely all of the cost associated with the housing element. We also have a very small contract for um some financial analysis that we thought we would need um that we didn't pursue, that we spent a little bit of money. And then we also have zoning code amendment contract, which is related, but a little bit different. Um, but they did help us do some feasibility work for the housing element. So um, I think about it as taking that four ninety-two, four hundred and ninety-two thousand number minus the grant amount.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. It um, and then if I understand this correctly, there was an authorization done by the town, the prior council, I suspect. Um, but in any event, at some town council meeting that's already been approved, it was just never recorded in the form of an amendment previously.
Correct.
And here, it seems to me that we're doing, we're we're being asked to approve beyond what's already been approved, ninety-five, approximately ninety-five thousand for the sequo and uh budget, the safety element and additional. the safety element, and additional twenty-two thousand. And for the housing element, roughly an additional thirteen thousand. So that's the actual new amounts that are going in, that have not yet been approved.
That's correct. And I, I did make a slide just to clarify this, so if you don't mind, I'll share it, because I think it might help everyone.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so this is, um, on the left, uh, the different tables that are from the staff report. So the original contract, the additional authorized by council, the total authorized in the past, and then, and it's like kind of a blue font, is the additional request. And then pulling that additional request over into the right-hand, um, table for each of those three categories. So the total new request in front of the council is 131,402 dollars across those three categories, um, housing element and sequo, which are in one contract, and then the safety element, which is in a separate contract.
And so, um, in terms of the, the 131,000 dollar amount, is that for work that's already been done or work that's to come? I'm, like, I know we're approving it, or being asked to approve it, but I just don't know how far that gets us. So, any comments on that?
Um, in the sequo category, it's work that's been completed. Um, in the housing element category, it's work that's being completed kind of right now, the last few weeks and into the next few weeks. Um, and then the safety element is work that's still upcoming.
Okay. Um, and for the sequo additional amount, is it pretty standard for there to have been the work done before the approval? Um, I, I know we're just doing the best we can to keep up time-wise on all these pieces, but that's the one that's already been performed, so we're I, I, I don't know if that's normal process or whether that's just because we were moving so quickly, we just needed to catch it all up at once, and that's the oldest one? Is that the way to think about it?
It is not a typical process.
Yeah.
Um, and so we would normally not proceed with that work until there was all the formal contracts in place, um, and everything was done. We were going forward based on the feedback that we got from the prior council, which was basically to, in simplest terms, do what it takes to finish this. And then the sequo analysis turned out to be very, um, robust. And the time that we spent, um, in the response to comments and the other pieces because of the level of participation, um, is very expensive to be able to produce those documents.
Mm-hmm.
And it is very common for sequo costs to go up in the course of a project. So that is common, but the typical process would be to get the full council authorization in advance.
Okay, so they gave you kind of a, a direction to do what it takes. Um, like, how, how do we manage this going forward? What, like, how do we think about it? Are we gonna run into something similar, given your experience? I know you can't promise anything in terms of having to commit now to do the work before we can approve it formally and understand it, or I, I mean, we're doing the best we can, and I'm, this is just a question on how to think about this going forward.
This kind of case would be very unusual. I wouldn't expect to ever bring something like this forward to the council again. This is very much the circumstances of this case.
Okay. All right, those are my questions, Jeff. That's it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, other questions, Mary?
Well, uh, mine is more a comment than a question. I, uh, we're getting a fair amount of, uh, feedback about the financial transparency and, and the fact that it's difficult for us and for others to track expenditures and, and put them in the proper category so that we can understand, uh, where, where we're spending what with to whom. And, uh, I, I had the pleasure of being in the dog park with this, uh, one of our residents today. And his work is data visualization. He works with these kind of companies. And he volunteered to help us make our data more, uh, transparent through, is there, is there a place for that kind of? He's, he works with the, the same, the software that we do, uh, with GoPangov or whatever it is. And, uh, and we're, and we're not getting the financial, finance committee is not getting the granularity it needs to do its job. And I think we're not getting the granularity that we need to get to do our job. So anyway, that's my comment. And, and only, I, I don't, I understand that Laura is doing the best she can with what she's got. And, uh, and just try to look for places we can get more support for, uh, for staff and make it easier for them to be able to show us the stuff we need to, to know in order to make an inform, informed decisions.
Great. Okay, great.
Well, first of all, I'd say it's fabulous the job this Laura is doing. I don't think she's ready to take on the finance department as well. So we should just leave her with planning issues. Um, but with that.
Wasn't to comment, that was not my comment.
I know, but, but, but she's, yeah, I didn't think you really meant to directed it, Laura.
I wasn't directing it, Laura. I was just trying to give her some backup.
Yeah. No, no worries. I just appreciate everything she's doing, so. Um, so Laura, two questions. Um, one, are there any more grants potentially in the pipeline? And the other is, it looks like we spent about 400K after the grants. Um, is, or, so I guess my first question is, 400K sound about right, and is there more coming? Do we think? And I know you don't know for sure, but I'd just be curious roughly what we think that total month number might look like. And then, do we think there are more grants, um, that we might get to offset that money?
Um, I'm not aware of any other state grants that the two forty-five, um, incorporates the state grants that we are eligible for and that the state set aside for this work. Um, so that actually came up earlier, um, from Assemblyman Burman, Burman's, um, conversation. Um, but we are looking at whether there's any flexibility in any other funds that come to us. So I have had a conversation with Cindy, our finance director, about that. Um, we're not sure yet, but we wanna think that through a little bit. Um, there's also some budget complexities related to this because the work is under, over multiple fiscal years. And a significant portion of this work is already budgeted, so it's not like all of it is coming out of reserves. Um, and then some of those expenses, we, um, applied to urban planning partners because our senior planner was on maternity leave. And so we're trying to reconcile all those things together, um, to give you more of a full accounting. And then Cindy and I are gonna work on if there's any other funds that we may be able to apply to some of this to minimize the amount that would come out of reserves. But that is gonna take us a little while to put all of that together. Um, since, as you all know, I'm focused on getting the housing element in front of you right now. But we do intend to work on that, um, and bring it forward, so you can get a better number in terms of what is actually, needs to come out of reserves for this.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Um, and then, I didn't get a sense, do you, do you have any, like, we're at about 400K of expenditures now. Um, with these additions, I like, how much, how many more additions do you think are likely before we're done with the housing element and the safety element?
It's hard to speak to the safety element process right now. Um, we are expecting, you know, when we start to respond to the committee's comments, that there's gonna be quite a bit of work there. Um, but we need to get into that work a little bit to see what it's gonna entail. So it's really gonna depend on how much time the planning commission spends with it and how much public dialogue is expected with the safety element process. And whether our technical consultants need to be at all of those meetings or not. Um, so the safety element is hard for me to speak to right now. In terms of the housing element and the sequo, um, as you know, we're very close to wrapping up. So we're trying to reconcile, um, those books and kind of get things paid. So I think we're gonna come in right about it, these numbers, um, that I have in front of you tonight. If there's a little overage, it's gonna be really small, I think. So I think we're pretty well on target with this request.
Okay, great. So, so I think what I'm hearing is it sounds like on the safety element, maybe you need some backing from the council on exactly how many times we bring in our consultants to all these meetings. Cause I know you've been good to try to make sure the public gets all the answers that they can. On the other hand, some of these, you know, I've started counting the number of consultants that are sitting there. And you start thinking about their hourly rate, it's getting to be pretty expensive meetings. So, you know, may, maybe we can help as well, um, sort of tune that process.
Yes, certainly. We could have a conversation with the council about what you would like to see for that review and public engagement process, um, from kind of the planning commission level and moving forward. And your expectations on consultant participation. Um, on the safety element, I'm not able to answer as many of the questions off my, the top of my head as I am with the housing element. So I do rely on those technical consultants to answer questions. But, um, I would like some additional feedback from you because those, um, qualified technical consultants, you know, are usually in the low 200 dollars an hour, so 200 to 225 an hour is pretty typical, um, for those really qualified technical planners. So, um, I think we'll probably need to do a check-in with the council on the safety element and kind of balance public participation and budgetary, um, concerns. Because we will be in a point that that will need to come out of reserves as well.
Yeah, good. And just know that, you know, we're here to help, right? So, let's, let's work together and see if we can get the, the sort of the best process for the best price, so to speak. So, and by the way, thank you. Thank you, thank you for the awesome work you've done. That I sat through the planning commission meeting and the housing element stuff that you did. You were really fabulous.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate that. Um, everyone knows how much, how much work it's been. Um, and in terms of the cost of all of this, this is, um, you know, we're not used to it in Portola Valley, but this is not a particularly high cost, um, for a process that has gone on for this long and the number of meetings that we've had. We saved a lot of money by doing things on Zoom and not have consultants come in person the way we used to, um, in the old days. So we had a lot of cost savings there. And really, just to be candid, the town had a lot of cost savings because I did so much work myself. Um, so we saved a lot, a lot of money. Because I did, I did so much of that work.
Yeah, and I think that was what I was trying to say about the fabulous part, was I, I wanted it to be appreciated that how much you saved us by your hard work. Um, and once we get out of this process to, you know, give you a little bit of reprieve. So again, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I would hope it's a lot of a reprieve, but, um, we'll see. Uh, I, I do take the point of being thoughtful about having the consultants there. That being said, there is a tricky balance between time and safety and having the ability to have all the questions answered at once. So we'll park that, you know, discussion for a future time. But the good news is, I think we're through the bulk of the costs, it sounds. Um, and then just a quick comment on the subcontracting. Um, I assume that given the highly technical nature, they're probably subcontracting where they find it efficient to tap an expert, or, I mean, if you wanna comment on that at all. Um, I, I, I don't know what we can say about it, but, um, it's such a technical area. I would imagine some of it's for that. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, this is a standard part of doing this type of advanced planning work and environmental review. Um, so only the very largest firms have the ability technical specialties in-house. And we didn't hire any of them because, number one, none of them wanted to do the work. None of them put in proposals. Um, and number two, we probably wouldn't have hired them anyway because we were looking for people that we could work with really closely and would get to know the community. Um, and so they're more generalists. And then they have standard, um, experts in very specific subject matters that they sub-consume with. So this is a very standard part of advanced planning and environmental analysis.
Okay. All right, and you know, at some point in the future, I think we've already discussed potentially downloading what this is all cost and the, like, part of reconciling the experience we've all been through. Um, so I, I personally would be okay if we get to that, you know, when, when the moment's right, but it would be probably helpful to do some retrospective thinking on that. Um, thank you for, uh, guiding me through that. My first read was very confused, but, but it, it makes sense now that you've explained it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I swear a word of coffee, I've been waiting patiently.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was just gonna say, um, Lauren, I had a call with Laura earlier today and she answered all my questions on this agenda item. So I don't have any. Thank you very much for doing that slide. I think it was really helpful. So, thanks, Laura.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll just make two points. One is, is yes, the previous council, we, we tried very hard to keep this, this process on schedule and to comply, you know, as, 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 as well as we could. Um, and so we did ask the staff to move quickly and sometimes, and, and yes, we're, we're cleaning up some things that were created because we were trying to keep to a debt, to a schedule. Uh, number one, and number two, the, I mean, the, the purpose of this, this item is not necessarily to be the, the full accounting for all the cost. It is, we had to extend a contract because we did in fact incur expense, uh, through a consultant. And it's just, this is the contract, we, we, we're paying for costs we've incurred. The accounting, we, we, you know, obviously we need a full accounting. This is not the full accounting. This is us basically just trying to amend the contract right now, uh, for things that, that. And, and we do track hours, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do track hours with consultants. We do actually keep track of all those times. And it's, 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 it's complicated, but I know that, you know, this is hard work.
No. If I could, I, um, through the mayor, um, so that people know, we received detailed invoices, um, about the work that was completed and by whom and the number of hours. And so I do review all of those invoices, um, and compare it to, you know, everything that we had completed during that time. So I monitor things like, if they make a mistake, sometimes I ask them to write down that cost, or if they didn't follow my instruction. Or if they're training a new person, make sure they're writing down some of that time, so we're not paying for that. So I am monitoring those expenses. That's a normal part of the staff responsibility when we're managing a big contract like that. And so I just wanna make sure, in case you've never thought about it, that you know that those are types of activities that I am doing in the background. And so those invoices are all available to members of the public. If they wish to see them, they're quite boring. Um, but, you know, we will provide a more full accounting, um, in the future for everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, one question that I get asked that I can't answer, uh, is, uh, at what point are there full-time people working in these consulting positions that could be converted into, uh, employees and be a a better bargain for both the person who is doing the work and for us? In other words, if we ha- if we, if we have enough people who are full-time, who are ending up being full-time, is would it be to everybody's benefit to have them converted to, to a, a part-time, to an employee for a period of time? Or a contract, a direct contract with that individual?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. Um, in this particular case, we did hire a senior planner because we needed a senior planner and we wanted someone to do day-to-day project management and spend a lot of time on this work. And so she has been doing that. She was out on maternity leave, but she's back now. So when she was out on leave, we did have to use more consultant time for that. Um, in terms of the recommendations that I make to the town council, I make recommendations based on the specific work that needs to be done, the length of that work, how much we think it will cost, and looking ahead for the long-term kind of financial viability of my department. So in this case, it would have been very difficult or impossible to hire someone to come to work with us that would have had one person that would have had all the skills that were necessary. So our team for this, um, the housing element, you know, our main team is about six people, um, of different levels. So we have people who are experts in mapping. We have people who do editing. We have people that proofread. We have, you know, a very experienced director level person. We have a project manager. So it takes work across a wide spectrum of experience and abilities to be able to complete this kind of thing. So it wouldn't be possible for us to hire one person or two people, um, to be able to do all of that. And then if we did, we would be in a challenging situation because, you know, as local government folks, we usually hire people for the long term. Um, we don't hire people for the short term. And so it doesn't always make a lot of sense to bring people into the organization if we don't expect those positions to stay. So I hope that's helpful.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, uh, to the chair, you know, to, to add, uh, you know, maybe give a, an actual example. Um, when I first started, the town had hired a, um, a deputy building official who acted as our, uh, building inspector. And, uh, the there were obvious advantages to that, to have somebody that was available regularly and an experience for residents who are going through the building process to, to have the same person. Um, but it was not a full-time job. And we, we took the remaining, you know, thirty percent or so and put that in code enforcement uh, for that individual. It was not a good mix in the end. Um, you know, those are two completely different skill sets. Um, and, you know, this is the challenge that, that we have often. And then when you get to people who have these highly technical specialized skill sets, And, you know, this is the challenge that, that we have often. And then when you get to people who have these highly technical specialized skill sets. It's not really an option to hire them. There, 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 there's other costs associated with, with, with that that would come to town. And, and the like. So I hope that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, is there a further public comment on, on item 6C? Okay, I don't see any hands up. I could take a motion on item 6C.
Make, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6C.
In a second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Council member Haskell?
Aye.
Council member Hafdi?
Aye.
Council member Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Els?
Aye.
Uh, 6E Craig.
Yeah, so I wanted to pull this because we're changing the charter and, and basically taking out the EPC liaison. I talked to the chair and, and understand that the issue here is making sure that they have a quorum. So that they can meet and, and I'm good with that. I guess what I'd like to remind everybody is I think that having five members. Plus, you know, somebody from conservation and from somebody from EPC is actually the right answer. And so I'm hoping that this is a short-term change. That, you know, we'll make this change now, but when we find somebody in the EPC, because one of the problems is. There hasn't been somebody from the EPC who's, has the time to serve on, on the wildfire committee as well. So that's the main comment I wanted to make is I'd just like to see in the future, let's try to get back to the charter as it was originally written. But I'm comfortable with changing it. What I think of is in the short term, which is probably a year. So I mean, just to be clear what I think the short term is.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other questions or comments from the council on this?
Well, I had the same concern and I, I think if we can do, make that.
Yeah.
A, a vision and for the future, it would be a good thing.
Yeah, it'd be good maybe if the committee could, could work with their colleagues and try to find someone who's willing to do it. But, but your point is well taken. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I agree. And I just had a note that there's a little bit of confusing language in here. Remove the required liaison. From the emergency preparedness committee. And then it says to have five members. Four members and the liaison. So is it the case that the liaisons are voting members? I, I just want to clarify that that's the right read.
Wait, yeah, I, I understand. So i- in the, if you look at their charter, they're not called the liaison, they're just a member.
Okay.
Just the note, the cover letter that talked about the liaison. So I agree with you. Putting in the cover letter was confusing. It shouldn't have been the liaison.
Okay.
It's really the member from the conservation committee.
Okay, I'm good.
Otherwise, I agree because that, that was my comment as well is that my, my sense is liaisons don't vote.
And they are, and these are voting members.
And these are voting members, but in the actual charter, it talks about them being members and that they.
I see.
That, that would be helpful.
Charters, the charter is correct.
Yeah, the charter is correct.
Okay.
I had a procedural questions to, am I out of order? I, I thought this would have come from the chairman themselves as opposed to the, the. The clerk.
Uh, the, the, the chairman, I believe, the, the chairman really worked with, with, with Melissa Clark on this. So it, I mean, it's, I think she, the clerk wrote the, the memo, but I think the, it came from the chair. I mean, it was, it was. I believe it was developed.
It was hard for me to track because, so I ended up calling the chairs to find out what, what it was. Because it wasn't signed by, it, it wasn't even abundant whose idea it was. So I was trying to figure out. Where it came from. But just as in general, do we encourage the chairman to actually bring these, these things directly to the council?
No, I, so I, can I?
Well, I was gonna ask, I was gonna see if maybe Jeremy wanted to answer that just because that's a little more of a process question.
So we, thank you through the chair. We regularly get requests from the committee chairs. To update their charters. Most of them are fairly minor amendments. We're seeing more these days because we have some committees that. We're meeting on an ad hoc basis that are now coming forward to. Create a regular calendar, calendar opportunities to meet. And the like, so it's, it's, it's fairly common to, to get these kinds of requests. The staff, in my time, I don't think that the staff has made any independent requests. To change charters of committees at all. So I think it's fair to say that anything that comes through is from the chair. Thanks.
So can I comment?
Yes.
So I mean, this, it says here, I mean, the recommendation, the wildfire preparedness committee recommends. This came from the wildfire preparedness committee. It's, it's right, it's right there, the first sentence. So, so I think it's clear where this came from. I think it's reasonable for staff to put a cover letter just so the council knows what's going on. But I agree with you. I would expect charter changes to come from.
Yeah.
The, the committees. And in this case, that's what happened.
Right.
And, and to Jeremy's point.
That's why, that's how I, I figured it out, but it wasn't as obvious as, whatever you found.
The first, yeah, anyway.
We can, we could spend hours on that subject.
Okay, okay. So if there's no public comment on this item, I will take a motion to approve it.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Council member Haskell?
Aye.
Council member Hafdi?
Aye.
Council member Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Els?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item 6F for the open space committee, Craig.
Yeah, so when the open space committee was working on their charter amendment, they had an amendment and then they worked on it some more and had additions to the amendment. Somehow what got in our packet was the first amended version, not the final one. So I'd just like to pull this and then on the 22nd, let them resubmit the proper, the proper charter. And we can then also look at membership at the same time.
Okay, yes, there's one membership. Okay.
Right, so the 22nd would be a good time and.
Okay.
We're, we're all busy. It's okay. It's just, let's just pull, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll continue it to the consent on the 22nd.
Yeah, I wanted to be careful though, because I don't think we're continuing it because we actually have to change it. It's the wrong attachment. So, I mean, whatever the right language is.
Well, we will, we will table this item, but it can come back with, with, as a, it will come back.
And then have, whatever the right mechanism is, yeah.
But I don't believe we need to actually vote on it. We just can just table it. If, if we're all agreed, we can, we can, we can just take it. Off the agenda. We just, just pass it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean.
Yeah. I, through the chair, I've got it captured here in the meeting minute notes that it's clear there, there was a correction to be made. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That concludes the.
You have one public comment on that.
Oh, sorry. Kristy Corley, go ahead.
Yes, I did go to that meeting and I'm curious what the changed amendment is and if you could say what it is. Thank you.
Yeah, delaying it and you will see the correct updated charter in the next meeting backup for the 22nd. Let's try to get a meeting back in. Thanks. Okay. That concludes consent. That brings us to the regular agenda. The first item then is 7A, the colleague's memo for Vice Mayor Werdakoff and the nomination, I believe, of Sue Crane. I'll let Sarah take that.
Yeah, so this, this is beyond that, that we should have been. Listed in the agenda as, I guess, approval of a nomination versus a colleague's memo. So just a note on that, but with that, we have. A form here to formally nominate Sue Crane. To be our inaugural nominee for the Portola Valley Founder's Award. For her lifetime contributions. We have a nominee letter from Nancy Lund. And supporting letters, the three supporting letters of recommendation from John Richards, Annalee Trapp and Christine Fleming. And as the document here represents, we have all of the various. Things Sue Crane has done for this community over, you know, literally 40 years. Everything from, you know, her early years helping out. In the Portola Valley School District, all of her time. I want to click on this to get right to it here, sorry. Then her earliest years participating on town. Was chairing the town's, town center committee back in the late seventies, early eighties. She's participated on post over 10 years, friends of the library. And then, of course, we know that she served two terms on council, including two terms as mayor. Since leaving the council, she has continued her incredible work for the town. Including the anniversary of the incorporate, the anniversary of incorporation committee and all of her time serving. As a representative to the town, to her community at the Sequoias. So those are all of her. You know, her resume per se, but I think in the, in the two years that I've been. Able to get to know Sue and from talking to people as well. In the community over various years, it's also just what she brings to the role and to the community as a person. And that's kind of captured in her qualifications here and that she represents the character of the quintessential Portola Valley volunteer. In terms of her dedication and commitment to town values, vision and civility, and has done so over decades. And so with that, I would like to bring this nomination of Sue Crane. For the lifetime contributions award. To a vote.
Okay, thank you. First, I will do the usual routine, questions from the council, then public comment and then discussion. Are there questions for Sarah for this item?
I have no questions.
Judith?
No, absolutely no questions.
You comment after, after public.
Yeah.
Yeah, just if there's no questions, then I will take public comment on this item. Kristy Corley, go ahead. Okay, Kristy.
Or Dave, she.
Okay, we'll move on. Kristy, if you want to talk, raise your hand again. Dave Cardinal, go ahead.
Hi, I, I think this is just wonderful. I think the award's wonderful. I think Sue Crane's wonderful and I think she's a great. I, I think this is the first recipient of the award. She's just an amazing person and an amazing contributor to the town. So. Thumbs up and God bless her and, and the town. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, I see no other hands raised. So discussion. Judith, did you want to say something?
Uh, sure. I, I, I think this is a, a superlative first Founder's Award recipient. She's done so much for her and for, for her community and we really. Just value everything that she's done. She keeps giving and. Just is thinking about the community and in the way the founders had intended. Things to run. So I'm completely supportive of this. It just means so much that we've had people like Sue Crane in town over so many years. This, this town would simply not be what it is today without Sue and, and other founders and contributors. So I'm fully supportive.
Great. Mary?
I'm fully supportive and I think it was brilliant of you to put it together and, and really appreciate it.
Greg.
Um, first of all, I want to thank Sarah for her patience in getting through the process with me. No, no, it's great. Thank you. And yeah, no, I, I think Sue Crane is an exemplar. I think we were lucky to have her and I look forward to our next. You know, volunteer as well. So this is great. I think it's a great process. I think it really highlights the value of the volunteers in our community. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of it.
I'm going to agree on both points. Thank you for putting this together. It is a wonderful new tradition, I think we're starting. And Sue, I, I, I probably can't think of a better first recipient than Sue. She's, she's an institution. I have worked with her on many things over the last 13 years now. I look forward to actually hopefully seeing her person to present this award. I guess if there's no other comment, I'll take a motion to.
So moved.
Roll call vote, please.
Council member Haskell?
Aye.
Council member Hafdi?
Aye.
Council member Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Mayor Els?
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Item passes. Okay, item 7B is adopting, or is, is the council priority study, study session two, adoption priorities with. Assistant, interim assistant town manager Corey Stockton.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, Community. Jeremy, did you want to get us started or would you like me to start?
I can say a few words. Thanks, Corey. So to just set the stage, and Corey, I apologize if I'm stealing any of your thunder from your presentation. This is, we're in the end stages of the development of the council priorities. That process started in January with a discussion that council had with the committee members and then continued with a, a study session. With yourselves on the items that you'd like included. So Corey took the lead on the development of this product. We're not calling it a draft per se. It's where we captured what we think we heard. We're fully anticipating edits to make this more of the product of the council. So there's no pride of ownership related to any of that. So any reorganization is, is obviously. No problem there. But with that, turn it over to Corey. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Carrie, could you grab the slides for me, please? We created a few brief slides just to be able to guide the conversation and share a little bit of background and. Perfect. Thank you, Carrie. Just give us one moment, please. Next slide, please. So just to provide a little bit of background for everyone listening and for the council. We met on January 25th to have a conversation with the commissions and committees, a workshop to talk about project ideas, to talk about budget ideas. February 9th, we had the first study session with council where we were able to draft some priorities and talk about different focus areas. Next slide, please, Carrie. So working with Jeremy, we came up with the following three major priorities. Safety being the first one, a sustainable and resilient town being the second. And fiscal responsibility and effective accountable governance as the third. Next slide, please. So given those three main priorities, we created this visual and I do want to note, this is purely a vessel to share the information. We actually plan to create a new process to. Convey the priorities and their progress on the website, which we'll share after we have a conversation about priorities and focus areas. But I did want to talk about each of the priorities has what I like to call a focus area. And within that focus area, there'll be projects. So first would be safety and the focus areas within that would be emergency preparedness, public safety and public preparedness and awareness. So we felt that those were sort of the. Programs, which we wanted to call focus areas because the more minor areas, which we would focus underneath the larger priority. So given safety being the overarching theme, we would have projects related to emergency preparedness. Projects that would relate to public safety and projects that would relate to public preparedness and awareness. And we continued that throughout the other two, sustainable and resilient town, which would be focus areas related to continuing to lead in sustainability. Land use, a general plan update, town center master planning and community engagement. And under fiscal responsibility and effective accountable governance, the focus areas would be revenue enhancement. Timely fiscal reporting, operational efficiencies, transparency and long-term planning. Before I continue, I see Jeremy's hands up. So I want to give him an opportunity to have a floor.
That was not intentional.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you, were you calling on me? I had some audio problems there for a second.
Your hand was up, so I wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, sorry. Thank you.
No problem. So within those three, we wanted to share these priorities and this idea of having focus areas. So then council can give us guidance on priorities and the focus areas. Projects we feel will sort of naturally come up, given the focus areas. Emergency preparedness, a lot of the wildfire that we've been working on, projects and continuing to lead in sustainability. Some of the different microgrid or electrification projects would continue. So we felt that might be an organic movement forward. And we also just wanted to know, there was a strong desire for us to tie everything to the general plan. So we would have language about how our general plan supports and informs the development implementation of our council priorities. And DEI, I know, which is diversity, equity and inclusion is also very important to our town council. And we would have language saying we're committed to being a leader and demonstrating the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion in all town initiatives. So ensuring that those things are sort of the umbrella overarching all of our priorities. And maybe it would be a good time to have a discussion on that first. We do have a sample of how we'd like to. Convey this on the website next. Would you like us to share that first, or should we focus on the content in front of us?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
What are we, what are you looking for us to do this evening? Like, what's the end goal? Cause there's a lot here. Are you going to be looking for us? And this isn't the fleshed out version that has the, the sub bullets. So what is it that we're going to be asked to provide to you so we can focus our comments?
But Cory, I can take that. So what, I mean, the, the ultimate. Decision point in front of you, the action item is to adopt priorities. The, you know, should the council wish to have. In-depth conversation about the projects to support priorities that, that is your prerogative to do, that could be tonight or another time. You know, my suggestion on that front is, I think it's. Understandable that there's a desire to get into the nitty gritty related to particular projects that might support a priority or focus. Group, but I think as the staff report says, you know, some of those change over time, some of those change based on new information. They come from different sources. So, you know, we weren't, the, the, what staff is presenting tonight is not a focus on the projects, if you will. And if that's, as I said, if the council wishes to have a further discussion about that, do some of that tonight, that, that's totally fine. And we'll take notes and prepare the document as such. Hope that helps.
Sarah has a question.
Well, I was maybe just going to be a follow-up, follow-up comment on that. Is that okay? Okay. Yeah, just, just from, from having gone through this just one time before, or actually two times before. I think, you know, Judith, what we're trying to get to tonight is really what the priorities are. That's the most important. And then. You know, subsequent to that, if we can get through other stuff, that's great, but the most important are the priorities. In, in this format, they're offering three priorities and the sub areas are these, are the focuses beneath that.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. That, that the priorities should be driving the projects and the projects already in process should be fit into a priority. But I think, I think we should really stay focused on, you know, kind of the what, the high level right now, and then the projects we'll start, we'll come back to over time. But I really, I agree, try to focus on the top level.
The reason I'm confused is the document we looked at from the prior year really got into. Subbullets, and I don't know if that's coming later in the cycle or, or not. And I want to anticipate that because if this is going to be used to guide where we put our focus, emergency preparedness. Is vague, and I don't know how we're going to gauge whether we did that or not in a year's time. So I'm a little confused because the prior one seemed so detailed. And I'm, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I'm just confused.
I, Jeff, I can try to answer, and maybe Jeff and Sarah can. Oh, yeah. Jeremy, why don't you go ahead? Cory maybe wanted to. So, yeah, the previous years, including last year's, had more detail under the projects. That was partially driven by a desire by the council to see some of those things that, you know, candidly, that some of this, based on the staff's. Time relationship with the council members, we understood what projects were of note, so we could bring those forward in a particular way. I would also say that this is an oper, you know, that, as I was saying earlier, the focus. You know, and in staff's opinion should be on the, the priorities and the focus areas, not the individual projects. And I think that this reflects an opportunity to do that. But if, again, if the council wishes to get to that level of detail, then that certainly would require some additional meetings to, to have that, that conversation. But, you know, Cory, you've done this in other communities too, and maybe you want to speak to kind of how it, how it works.
Sure. I think to answer Judith's question, if we're going to have the projects listed, if that is a desire of the council, we can ensure that that happens as we move along. I think that wasn't going to be the focus of tonight, but to answer your question, yes, if that's a desire, we can have that listed somewhere. In the end, when we show the new way that we'd like to convey the priorities and the focus areas and potentially the projects. There is space where we can list the projects and the updates additionally.
Why don't you keep going because I can circle back with questions and comments later?
Okay, Vice Mayor Wernicke, Vice Mayor Wernicke, want to make a comment? Go ahead.
Well, even just on, on the document that's in the packet, pages seventy four and seventy five. That has, shows the example of how, you know, the cascading priority, then focus area, then projects would work. So I think it's, it is a little confusing when we see it this way and this, that way. But I think my sense, having gone through this before, that the, the way that it would ultimately work is more along the lines of what's in the packet. I don't know if that's helpful or confusing.
On page seventy four and seventy five as opposed to this chart. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Let me, let, let, let me back up half a step here to be feeding off Cory's comments. The, what we're showing you right now is a way to. Structure your conversation tonight around the priorities and the focus areas. It is not the ultimate product. It is not the only items that would be part of council priority information that the public would like to get. I think, yeah, maybe Cory, maybe you should show that now just to, to clarify that. But, yeah, let me stop there. Cory, you want to, why don't we show that, what, what our idea is around how this could look, and maybe that helps.
Sure. So Carrie, if you could take us to the hyperlink where it says page demo here, you can just right-click. Be here, if you hit.
Oh, you'll have to, you'll have to share your.
Just give us one moment while we pull that up. So Carrie was able to mock these pages up. This is just a draft, so this is not live yet and not public. But the way we would like to show the priorities moving forward would be on our town website. So it would be transparent and accessible for the community. And it would have its own, if you don't mind scrolling up to the top of the page just briefly, so we can talk about that. It'll be the council priorities page. So this would be sort of the cover page, the front page, where it would have the priorities listed. If you don't mind scrolling down, please. And some verbiage about towns' commitments, the towns tied to the general plan. And then it would have sort of buttons that you can take to the specific priority, should you want to go to the next level. So if you don't mind hitting safety for us, we've created one example page. So that would be if we hit the safety priority. You would be able to read again some verbiage specifically about safety. Any other details that we'd like to add, then it would discuss the focus area. So emergency preparedness, that sort of broad overarching theme. With the individual projects listed below that. Then you would be able to click on the project. We haven't built it out that far yet because we haven't had any confirmed projects. And you would be able to see what a summary of the project is with an additional update based on the quarterly updates that we're providing. So we've created this as the next step in terms of sharing these priorities versus just the. Sort of picture that we have to lead the conversation tonight. So that would be the document that we're looking at carrying forward. I want to say thank you to Carrie Chin, our communications analyst, for helping create this and the visual for tonight. And any thoughts, feedback?
Start with questions?
Question? Sorry, that was a little presentation. Okay, questions from the council for, for the team?
Questions first.
I'm happy to start.
Well, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the language of focus area, community engagement. It sounds like we're instructing the community to become engaged as opposed to we recognize ourselves as a self-governing. Town that recognizes diverse perspectives and. Ages in civil discourse to achieve the. Goals of the town, something more, more, a little bit more or less top-down. More, more of a resident-driven.
Language. Mary, where are you on the page? What are you looking?
Sustainable and resilient town, community engagement. I think in that focus area, you know, the whole civility, civility. Conversation should be included in that and.
Focus on the top line, like the priorities and.
This is a sustained priority too.
Well, I think what we need.
Focus area, community engagement. That's all I had to comment. That's my.
But is it a question or a comment?
That's a question. How did that language get created? Where, where, where was that found? Community engagement?
I think that came from me as a direction to Cory. Community engagement is a very standard term of art when it comes to. Creating mechanisms for the community to participate in public discussion. So it, it does not represent a top, top-down viewpoint. It represents. A, a broad bullet on the variety of different endeavors that we want to increase. Access to information or increase public engagement on issues of note. Cause that's what we thought we heard from the council last time. So that was just a way to sort of try to capture that. As I, as I said, we're, this, this is your document, so please make it.
No, I just, that was my, that, you answered the question. Thank you very much. I got it.
Okay. Other questions for, for staff?
I have one. Um, when we get, like, you know, you had that example of the website and you've shown projects here. Are you proposing that all the projects that we do in the next year will eventually get slotted in? And, and be put up on the website with a paragraph describing them? Or are there just a set of projects that the council sort of reviews and say, yeah, we think that these are really high priority projects?
So as of now, it would be the projects that would tie into this specifically, not every single city project. But it would be the projects that fit in with the priorities and the focus areas. So similar to the past document would be what is on the website, just listed differently.
But, but what would, what would the town be doing that wasn't in line with our priorities? I mean, I, I would hope that there's almost no, no project that we work on that isn't somehow tied to one of these priorities. I mean, that's the point of the priorities.
Definitely. I think there's additional projects that the city has day-to-day operations, other smaller things that wouldn't necessarily have an update. That would fit this, but it would be every city project that is reaching each of these, that is not a day-to-day operation.
Well, if I, if I may through the chair, Craig, I mean, I, I, you make a, 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 a good point. And, you know, candidly, I mean, something like safety, yes, everything we do has some sort of relationship to keeping the residents safe. So this is why we sort of glammed onto the idea of the focus areas of what that would look like. And again, they, they, they may be pretty broad and the council can certainly edit those. Or, or, or make them a little more pointed or specific in any way you want. Thanks.
Other question?
It's a thanks, sir.
One, my main initial question is, we had five priorities before. And I was looking around at what other communities do, similar communities to, you know, our size around, around the peninsula. And they're between four and six priorities. And I think what was hard for me when we're trying to synthesize it down to three, it just made it. And, and I gave you guys some feedback about this today. I think it's, it, to me, it gets a little muddled. And I was just wondering, I guess that, putting the comment ahead of the question. Why did you guys try to squash it down to three, given we were at five before? Was there a reason for that? Cause I'm wondering if we expand it back out, if it might be easier to kind of. See these more clearly.
So based on our conversations and the notes we had, we just felt that the, there was sort of a natural separation between three main topics. We were sort of struggling to find the fourth, but we did see your notes and I could see where there could be another separation. And that again would be the decision of the council, if you'd like to have more than three.
I'll mention that in comments, but I was just wondering why you guys chose three. Okay, thank you.
I don't think I have a, I don't think I have any questions at this point. Public comment?
I, I know I asked questions before, but I didn't ask them if this is our chance now. The language that's describing, where is this language from just below the top? The green. Like while change may be required, like balanced tempered, where, where is this from? And what's the purpose of having it?
That was a collaborative effort to create some description of what the above, you know, what safety means. There's no, no ownership at all. It's just meant to sort of show how something like this could flow. And you can change all of these, it's fine.
Collaborative among who?
Cory and I, when we reviewed the council's.
Okay. Okay. And why are, like, the town of Portola Valley is committed to being a leader and demonstrating the importance of diversity? How does that? Like, I think I understand you to be saying, everything we do should be. Viewed through that lens. Why is that first after the general plan? And I'm not sure I agree with general, like, why does the general plan support? If you could just help me understand those. Those choices and what was driving them so that I can then formulate the comments, that would be helpful.
The order is entirely. That, there's no meaning to the order. There were two items that we understood the council. Number of council members wish to view and review these items through that lens. So that's what, that's what that attempt.
Okay.
Is.
Okay. Cause it's, yeah, okay.
I mean, this is, you know, frankly, this is a tough one to do. And, and, you know, that I am sure each, each of, each of the five council members drafted their own version of what they heard on the eighth. It probably would look fundamentally different from one another. So, you know, hey, this is not, I. My suggestion is that folks don't focus necessarily on anything too specific here. It's just a way to engender the, further conversation. Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Can I make one comment? Okay.
Well, so two questions and public comment, and we'll come back for discussion. Okay, um, if there's no more questions from the council, I will look at public comment. Rita, go ahead.
Hi, since I've been in this town, well, before I, I bought my property in this town. You know, there was always concern about safety. And, you know, looking at this first one under safety, where it says that the town plans to focus on minimizing and mitigating safety risks. You know, it, it's, it's hopefully something that we're doing every single day. A lot of these statements seem to be like hopeful that we're going to be doing them. And, you know, these are things that we should be. Current, you know, working to do it better rather than we're going to go, you know, one day we're gonna, we're gonna do these things. And I'm also uncomfortable with the statement on the bottom. The town of Portola Valley is committed to being a leader and demonstrating the importance of diversity, equity and inclusion, all town initiatives. I, I'm uncomfortable with that statement. With the last town council, it took about almost two years before, after me asking constantly for the council to get. With the last town council, it took about almost two years before, after me asking constantly for the council to get diversity training or anti bias training. I, I hope this particular council will look into that to, to ways that they can get that kind of training moving forward. So it, I, I, I don't want to short sell our, our town. I love this town and I, I don't want it to be, you know, short sold when we're not actually doing these things on a daily basis, but these other statements, I hope that we are doing these things on a daily basis. And to say that we're going to do them in the future is, um, is, is not fair to the residents in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands up. Christie, Corley, go ahead.
Yes, I'm wondering if the town council themselves, um, to discuss.
Christie, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering if the town council in fact had an offsite, which I remember in, in many years every year to fully discuss this. It sounds like there's some confusion and I would like it to come from the town council on their priorities. And then their projects that they see as priorities. One that stands out for me is community engagement as well. I would like to see that say, community community communication, because there's been some things where we need better communication. So you might think you're engaging us, but we need to know when meetings are going to occur. Such as, you know, when the Nath Force Triangle thing came up and we had to go door to door to let people know their houses were going to be up zoned. I mean, we need a postcard to go out to every mailbox in town. So we need better community communication, not only engagement. So we as the people of the community have a lot to say with priorities as well. So maybe the council meets, they do the priorities, they bring it to the people, the people add to those priorities and we're all involved in this process. That's what I would hope for. You know, I, 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 um, one of the, my concerns is town center master planning, long-term planning, 24 year planning with all this housing and traffic coming. We need planning. We need to plan what we're going to look like in 30 years, 20 years, 10 years, not just eight years. Because I, I just want to hear that the council was able to discuss everything thoroughly, give us their best list and now prioritize from that list. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I see no other hands up. So we can bring it back for discussion here. I think it sounds like we have several multiple comments on this. Um, just Judith, why don't you start? If you have any comments you want to make, and then we'll just go through for one round and we can discuss after that.
Yeah. This isn't what I expected based on the review that we had of the prior operations. I mean, I, I, I thought that the prior year plan had too many priorities. To be honest, I, I just think it's good to focus on what is it we're actually going to do so that it moves to the top and we make sure it gets done. This document is so vague. I don't know what we're going to get done. So I, I, I am concerned about it. As being a roadmap, it, it doesn't seem to me to be a roadmap to how should the town spend money? Oh, it's, it's for public safety. Okay. Well, spend it. Well, that's too vague for me. So I don't want to get down to, you know, four bullet points under everything either. I had expected something like public safety is motherhood and apple pie. What are we going to do about it? Um, we're going to complete the safety element within X timeframe. We're going to have an evacuation plan, you know, strive to get it done. Um, these are things that I think we have to do. But, but if we adopt this as the priority, I don't know what's going to hold our feet to the fire to get that stuff done. Uh, with, within this year or, you know, some reasonable timeframe that was achievable, um, but it gets done. So that's my overarching concern. I do have reactions to each column. And maybe if we're ready to get into some of the, the specifics, I can do that. If that's okay, Jeff, it depends how you want to run this, but if, if it's helpful, I can just go through and provide the comments on the chart. Does that make sense?
Jeff, may I, may, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I'm my, my sense based on the initial comments that I've heard from multiple council members is that there's a desire to create a project list and there's a desire to talk about accountability associated, you know, with, with, with Judy's comments. We're not going to accomplish that tonight. That won't happen. So if the council is desiring additional conversations on this topic. My suggestion, and this is a little ad hoc, so my apologies, is that uh, we create a council subcommittee that takes the lead on this. And, you know, does their best version of, of what they're hearing. And maybe that's individual conversations with council members. I, I'm not sure how to approach that, Corey. You'd have to, you'd have to tell me there again, I'm ad hawking this. But we're, we're gonna, I, I don't think spending the next three hours on projects is going to be a particularly useful endeavor by the council, if that's where the need is going. Um, so, you know, and, and I would say accompanying that if, if the, if the council can at least set some priorities, focus areas, then, you know, then, then where I think we're in reasonable shape, then to conclude the work with how I just outlined it. That's my two cents. I, I just, if this is going to become a conversation about specific proj- projects and we're up and you know, down voting those things, I think it'd be better to try to put something else together and come back because I think that's just going to take forever.
I mean, sorry, part of the goal of this was for us, the five of us, you know, because this is still a very new council to, to talk about the high level and talk about are these the right priorities and then to flush out a project list based on that. I mean, I think I wanted to start at the top and keep this at the high level and then not, not get into every single project because it's just, that's, I just feel like that gets messy and it's going to be inefficient. I think I was, I, I, I think this is what I was expecting to see, which is what I expected to see is talk about the high level priorities and then start looking at both existing projects and proposed projects and fitting them into the, those, once, once we have, tonight's about nailing those priorities down and the next, next step would be fitting projects under them. That was what I had envisioned. And so this is more or less what I expected. Sarah?
I just wanted to share some perspective is that the first two years that we did this, we didn't really have the project detail. We didn't have that. So both of our council meetings and both of those years was only about what's in yellow here. So it was first deciding as a group, what are the priorities? So we got to see the forest through the trees. So our last two, two council meetings ago, we had an initial discussion, what should that top line be? And tonight was supposed to be confirming after they've kind of massaged it a little bit. What do we think that top line could be? Out of that then comes all of these other things. This is the first time that I've been here that we're trying to do all of it at the same time. And I think it's making the process a little muddled. That's my observation. And so I think, I think we got to do first things first, and that's deciding on the priorities. And that's, do you, to me, the question I would be asking to the group, do you think these should be the three priorities? Do you have alternatives if this wasn't captured the way you envisioned it? And let's decide on that. I have some thoughts on that and my, so that's my kind of process commentary. When I looked at these priorities, and this is what I was sharing with them earlier today is, you know, we have safety and within that, and that's what we asked two weeks ago. We said, let's level it up to safety and then bundle underneath it, emergency preparedness, public safety, those kinds of things. So that's, that's, I'm, I'm good with that. And obviously we need to get into the details of what all those things mean. The second one, priority two, to me, I think, um, to me, this is sustainability and land use. That's the way I would think about priority two here. And I'm looking, you know, for those, uh, Judith, I'm looking at the packet because to me this is, is in a more detailed format to look at. And so for me, what I did here is I just said sustainability and land use, which would be leading in sustainability, the land use, the general plan. Maybe, you know, pulling in some of the comments that have been made about looking at ASCC design guidelines in the process. So I kind of see that as priority two. Priority three, I feel would be better served broken into two. And what I described these two as is one was forward thinking planning. And the other one was transparency and efficient operations. And so those are the buckets that as I saw it, and for me, the reason why I wanted to break out the forward thinking planning is in my time on the council, I think we haven't been thinking further enough in the future. I think revenue enhancement to me is the number one, like they're all number ones. Safety, of course, is very important, but we can't do safety if we don't have the revenue. So I really feel like we're at a point where forward thinking planning needs to be listed as a priority. So I can elaborate more on that, but that's kind of generally where my thinking has gone in terms of how to lay out the priorities. And then we would start to pull projects and focus areas underneath each of those. And I have thoughts on that, but I don't want to get too much into the weeds. That my, my only other comment is I kind of would prefer this be discussed as a council versus a subcommittee because I think it's really important. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, Mary, thoughts?
Oh, I agree with Sarah's comments. Pretty, basically I think that the, the, the three priorities are, are, are good. I kind of see the idea, the value of making, breaking the second into two, and if you're going to change the priority two from resilient, um, I'm, I'm dying a ditch for the resilient term. So I, I would put another priority called land use, if you wanted to do that. Uh, but that's just me. I'm, I won't, I, but I don't want to lose the uh, sustainable and resilient town. I think that captures what I had in mind. The, the, the focus areas, I don't think captured what I, what I saw as what that priority was about. Not in particular, the community engagement thing. And, and I, I guess I don't see that this should be a rush operation. What I was going to mention, in other words, we're in a time of transition. I think it might be a good idea to even do this a little later than forcing it right through on top of the safety and we, we've made progress. There, there's no doubt about it. And if we could be happy with the three priorities, that's great. There, people were talking today about informational modernization and ways that people could actually access what, what the priorities of the community are, including staff with the, what's called an all hands meeting where the staff actually can, you, you have a virtual meeting, you have residents and staff working together on making sure that everybody understands what the priorities are. And, and you could get those questions coming out of this and then get thumbs up from staff and residents to see whether that is something that they're actually interested or is, is that a thumbs down kind of thing? And it's done virtually and it's really is relatively cheap and relatively quick way to get a general sense that the whole town is moving in the same direction. I'm just saying, I'm not saying that I know anything about this. I'm just saying that informational modernization is available for us and, and getting everybody on the, behind the priorities makes a lot of sense. Now it may not be this year, maybe next year or may not ever happen, but I'm not sure that it isn't just as well to say, well, these are our priorities. Let's flesh out the bottom with some real information from residents and staff. That's my comment.
Great.
Well, I'm struggling with this as well. Um, you know, I, I appreciate the effort. It's, it's also not what I expected. I, I guess, starting at the top, and I am obviously struggling here. Priorities to me usually are, you know, you have a first priority, a second priority, a third priority. And this is really more of like areas of concern or focus or something like, we're not prioritizing between safety, sustainability and fiscal responsibility. So maybe we need to be careful not to number them because they're, they're not really ordered. I think we were saying we want to do something in all of these areas. So I find that aspect of this confusing. Um, I find the process to completion is confusing. Like I think we could agree on these, you know, top three or four. I like Sarah's idea of thinking about some sort of forward thinking. I think that's actually important. I was thinking about, you know, housing funds and wildfire mitigation funds. And there's a lot of, like you say, revenue enhancements. So I think that's a, a good thought. So there, there are those pieces. I look at the focus areas, they start to help clarify what the, the top bullet is. So I think that's good. When we start getting into the projects, I guess I was hoping that they were going to be you know, like fairly high level and some of these are really low level. So I'm hoping that it's not all possible projects that we could do. You know, completing the safety element, that's a big deal. And I think that belongs here. Continuing to train staff on velocity software, that seems like a pretty small thing. Whereas evacuation planning sort of isn't here explicitly, it's further collaborate with local jurisdictions. But that doesn't seem like the right thing. The right thing should be evacuation planning. So, you know, how we're going to take the next steps in terms of adding under the focus areas, I think is really important. And when I sort of thought about this, I guess I'm hoping the process is we agree on the three or four bullet points. We can leave the focus areas here, but then I think we should actually go out to the committees. Because one of the things I think our goal is, if we have these, what we're calling priorities, we're hoping for the next year that the committees actually help implement these priorities. Well, I think if we don't get their input, um, then it's going to be sort of decree from council, which I don't think is a very effective method. So again, it gets back to what process we, we're imagining for coming up with the projects and the stuff that's underneath. So I'm hoping that there's a, a cycle in here where we do go out to get input from the committees after we put this down, which is a little bit different than what we did in January, which is they just came and told us what they were interested in. They had no framework to work on. So I'd like them to work within the framework that the council specifies. Let's see. I certainly feel like all the projects shouldn't be day to day. So, you know, I, I think that point is spot on. I also sort of think some of the, I won't call it day to day, but things that we just need to do, like negotiating a sheriff's contract, like that, that's not really an option. It doesn't feel like it needs to be here. Um, this is more like things that need to get our focus. Let's see. So I mean, I got pages of stuff here. I'm going to try not to go through all of it. So.
Well, and let me just put a footnote in that I'm going to have, I need to have my turn at the detail. After you, Greg.
Yeah. Oh yeah. No, I, I'm trying to actually, like, I haven't even started in the detail. I'm going to try to stay out of it. That's the pages that I'm trying to stay away from. Yeah, yeah. No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to only use some of the details to suggest examples for how we should approach it, not to get into the actual specific line item. But I, not that I'm trying to shut you down Judith at all. I'm just
No, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm not going through the entire other page I have here of sort of more detailed stuff. But I really would like to get the committees involved. And, and so I, I guess that's what I'm struggling with when I look at this process is it's not clear where it goes next. So there's that piece. And then finally, I, I appreciate this graphic as meant to help us with the discussion, but it's just made way worse for me. There, there's just, first of all, it's, I've never seen it before. There's way too much verbiage here and some of it's pretty controversial. And so the thing we started with is there's three or four bullet points here is one thing, but all of a sudden it's But all of a sudden it's, oh, well, but they mean these things. And that's like a whole different thing. So I appreciate the effort that went into trying to make this work, but unfortunately that didn't work for me. Um, and I don't, so maybe I'll leave it there. Maybe we can work our cycle here. Um, I would like to see us come up with the top three or four bullet points. If we could find a word other than priority, it would make me happy. Um, and then going through the focus areas and maybe changing the wording on some of these seems reasonable. Um, and maybe that's enough for tonight.
I want to make sure Judith can go. I just want to remind everybody though, tonight was supposed to be about the priorities. So I, I do want to make sure that we focus on that. And I guess the only other thing that I'm going to add, just, just for those of you who haven't done this before is either priorities or goal setting by a council is standard in every community. If you go on any other website, that is just kind of part of the process and we can call it whatever you want, but everyone in the Bay Area has them. They're done annually. There's four to six of them. And they're just kind of keywords like this with cascading projects underneath. It's kind of just like a a governance process. That's the standard. Just for those who haven't done it before.
Well, but we haven't done it before two years ago either. So.
No, no, we always did. We didn't do the detail. We didn't, you've been doing this for many, many years.
We actually started, we started doing this in the last five or six years, honestly.
Oh, I thought it was longer than that.
So, so it's not like we have to fit into a particular process that other people do. And I, I, I I agree with having priorities. I think these are in the right direction at the top level. Um, the, the, the bullet points, I, I think we should discuss tonight because those are high level. If you want feedback on those, I have some questions on them. But the detailed verbiage is starting to get into policy and I'm uncomfortable with the, the second line in here. I don't see why we need it. And if we need it, it needs to be reflective of the council's full input, not, because I will have a lot of input on that if we keep it. And then the, um, I, I'm just confused by the diversity in general plan, like I would, I would take this and really get rid of the, the small font and, and tonight, I think, discuss what should be under s- safety as far as these bullet points. If anything else is at that level, I'm not sure there is. Um, but for the record, the projects that are listed in the packet have not been discussed, but we didn't discuss the microgrid in our, our comment. I'm completely uncomfortable even remotely commenting on those tonight. So I think we're all con- converging on keep at high level. But I do see quite a process to get through on, on the projects and get consensus on it. But I do think at the same time, per Craig's comment, it would be good to get to a process where we could evolve into that so that we we get guidance or give ourselves guidance on what we're going to be looking at in eight years' time as to whether we've been effective. So I don't know if people are open to, you know, simplifying this slide and talking about what those bullets really should be and whether or not we, we are conveying priority one, two, or three, or whether these are all equal pillars. I think those would help me understand where we're going with this, but I'm open to the suggestion. I'm just uncomfortable with the details that have been put in here.
Real quick, I think the priorities are numbered, but they're not numbered. They're just for, they're equal pri- we talked about this last time. They're not ranked. So just to be clear there, Craig, because you, you made a comment about that. It's just a way of referencing them. Um, but in my experience, they're just, you know, four, four or five priorities. Which is again, consistent with how I've seen it everywhere else. Um, I'm totally on board with simplifying, and I almost think it's distracting to have the slide up. I want to make sure that we agree on the priorities. And then we can get maybe into the bullets underneath it if we can get past the priorities tonight. We made more progress in the first conversation about priorities.
I think that, that top line of the green is the one thing we're really talking about. And then, and then that's, that's the what, right? Those, those three lines, those three eyes at the top are the what? And then the, the how is everything entered into become how? Um, and whether it's three or whether it's, it's more than three, um, or whether these are the right three. I, 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 I felt like we agreed that this was by and large the right three. Um, I agree with you about the long-term planning. I don't know if it needs to be broken up, but it's, it's important. I don't know.
Could it be under each of the three priorities?
I, I mean, I just, I like the, I like that slide actually because it's got three specific, I mean, it's just, three is, three is, I mean, three is nice and manageable.
I can handle three too.
For me, it's like, I just, three's are easy to count, three's, I mean, it's just easy for track, keep track of for me. Um, like people, you know, everyone has a different take on that particular thing. But I guess the question is, is, I agree. I think that we're really trying to talk about that top line, about what, what are the priorities? And then we start fitting everything else under into those priorities.
And the reason I'm, you know, forward-thinking planning, it was kind of just shifting the sub-bullets underneath that. So if, if, if there was interest in elevating that, you could have revenue enhancement under that town center master plan underneath that and infrastructure underneath that. So that's the way I was thinking about that.
Thanks.
Jeff, if I could jump in just for a second here, one, one of the things I think I've heard from more than one council member tonight is questions around the essential process, um, moving forward. I, I'm a little concerned candidly on that because this is, uh, you know, we're, 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 the, the council's theoretically supposed to be adopting something tonight. So I, I really think you guys need to address that, uh, before you, you move forward. Because if we're gonna at this point in the process have a different process that we're going to need to implement in the next little bit of time, I might just tell you a couple of things that probably won't happen. It probably, this document will have less of a relationship to budget. Um, because this is intended to help support the budget process. Um, and I'm just concerned that, um, you know, we're going to have additional meetings on something and I'll just be, you know, direct that. I mean, this is something that councils typically handle in two meetings and we can do something different, but I, I am concerned that um, if we're going to change that this late, um, you know, and just to describe the part of the reason that the committees were invited to come forward as the first part of this was to describe things they wanted the council to work on. So whether or not that happened to the satisfaction of the council, uh, but that, that was certainly the intent. Um, so for, for what it's worth, I just want to put that out there. But I, you know, as, as I'm listening to this, I'm starting to think we're going to have a lot more process in place. Um, you guys need to decide that now so we can figure out how we're going to implement it for you.
Mike, if I may ask a question, Jeff, of Craig. Um, if we keep, if we kept it to a discussion of only the bullet points underneath these columns on the slide and did not get to the project level, would you still feel the need to go back in terms of the process to the committees? Um, or is it that in order to adopt priorities? Or would you feel like it's only going to be meaningful if we get the committee input again? Because to me, if we're simplifying what we're doing here and not for, you know, purporting to build out projects, but we'll have the opportunity in the future to do that separately, then maybe we can get the guidance together for the, the budget. But if, if you're feeling like that needs to go together, we should talk about that now.
Um, so the slide's not up anymore. And since it's not in the packet, it's hard to reference. Um, I'm just.
It's the last page.
Last page of the package.
I'm sorry. Let me step in here again. Let's, maybe we should just ignore the slide.
No, that's fine. I just had to find it again because I just, so it's basically, so this is basically just the, um, focus areas. Is that, is, are these bullets the same as the focus areas? Okay. So I mean, I think that's your question, Judith, is should we focus on what we're calling priorities, um, and the focus areas? And I'm okay for tonight doing that. That seems fine. So, you know, the meeting ends at some point. Um, but I think then that's the structure that should go back to the committees and ask for their input on the projects. And I would hope what we get is a list of, here's a high priority project, here's a medium project, and here's a low project. Because that's my problem is this list, like, I don't see how it helps with the budget. Like, I can't imagine anything that somebody could come forward on the budget and say, we should do this thing that, I mean, at least any reasonable thing that we wouldn't fit under one of these and go, yep, sure. So I guess I'm not too worried about this magically informing the budgetary process. Maybe I'm being short-sighted here. But I, to me, priorities are things like, there's something that's high and there's something that's low. And, and this list isn't any of those. So I get tonight might not be that time, but I don't know when we're going to have that discussion. Because if we're going to budget, at some point, the hard part about budgeting is to say, we got this much money and we have more projects than money. How do you decide where we're going? So that's what's missing for me.
I, I think that, I think the point of this, this process is that these are the three things we, we are saying are important. And yes, underneath those three things, you do have to decide which things most directly and most essentially meet those three priorities. But we're, we're, we're trying to identify the three or four or five highest priorities. Like, that's how we've always, that's how I've always envisioned in the past.
Well, is there an example of a priority that we might consider that's not on this list? I mean, I'm just trying to just.
The whole, it's, it's just packaging of things that you already have are priorities. It's, that's really what this process is about. It's packaging things that are known priorities, housing element, safety element.
Right.
It's just, it's just a construct for how to package those things. And then, you know, the work cascades out of that.
Right, that didn't say that wasn't a new priority.
They're not new.
Well, no, but I mean, those weren't priorities at all. Those were projects. I'm trying to figure out like of these three projects, it feels like it's, it's the right way to talk about it. It's like, these are the things that are important to the town. Like this is our covering set. And I get that. So that's good. So now we have our covering set. And then within that, we, we're trying to give a little bit of structure, which is the focus areas. And, and that's okay. And then at some point, we actually need to say, and here are the projects that we think are important.
Right.
So that's what I'm trying to understand is where is this process going to unroll? And Jeremy's saying, well, this is the common thing. People just do this in two meetings. So if all we're trying to do is say, here's a covering set, and here's a little more definition on that, then great, but then what next?
Jeremy, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, I'm not sure how to comment because I'm not sure what process we're setting up here right now. So if the, if the, if the question is.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll jump back. Historically.
I'm, I'm having real trouble following the conversation. I apologize.
I mean, historically, we've set these priorities at a high level and then the projects have sort of taken, have, I mean, we've, you know, committees have brought forth projects, staff have brought, brought forth projects, council members have brought forth projects, and those projects over the course of a year, we, we, you know, we, we get reports and, and we get our quarterly, and now we're doing our quarterly reports on council priorities where we, you know, where, where we look at everything that, that's being done and saying, this is, this is, this is why, you know, the, the staff or committees or we justify the products that are, we've, we've sort of earmarked or moved forward because they fit into one of those priorities.
Exactly.
Um, you know, our, our past priority lists were more, were less priorities and more like, uh, sort of, I don't know, important tasks. I mean, some of them were, were more focused on like, like fire, like wildfire preparedness was a priority at one point, which is less of a prior, I mean, it's, it's a little different definition of it, but it was things that we were, areas that we were really trying to focus on. This, this, this top line really is trying to cover sort of everything that we do on a, on a regular basis. And it's just a question of do you break it into three categories or four or five?
And do we have our five categories? Or do you have your suggestions, Sarah?
Well, I already gave them, but I, again, just like as referenced before, previous year was wildfire, land use, operations, sustainability, DEI. Those were the five in the last year. So what's being proposed this, you know, we had the first discussion two weeks ago. They came back with three. I'm personally suggesting we break out those three so we can elevate forward-thinking. And then, so, so I think for tonight, what we need to do is really see if we can, I, I want to make sure again that everybody's okay that that's what we're doing here. Cause I'm starting to wonder Craig or Judith, if you don't even want to do that. Um, but to me, that's where we are right now. We just need to figure out those priorities. And I would suggest we focus on that and then get to the next step after that.
I'm with you.
But, but I'm, I'm starting to wonder, Judith, if you're, Judith and Craig, if you're not even on board with coming up with priorities, or I'm actually getting confused now too.
I mean, I.
If we keep it, if we keep it simple so that we just have the bullets and have the, the main categories, there may be some use in, in fleshing that out, uh, today. And you know, certainly talking about it and building consensus about what we think these things mean, I, I think can be very helpful. Um, and, and so I, I, if that is what, like, would be normal, that, that's fine. I mean, I did go back to our prior discussion notes and I, I saw only three categories and I was like, huh? But a lot of the things we talked about and every one of us had like three to six different categories that we were thinking of, I mapped out most things that could fit under these priorities. So I, I do think there is a relationship to the prior discussion, even though folks might not be hearing it. Um, but I think a lot of the other verbiage in here was just distracting, to be honest. So I would support talking through the bullets and the categories and seeing if we can get to somewhere. I, I can't purport to understand exactly how to force a budget. Um, because I think there is a practicality standpoint, but I, I'd be happy to dig into that discussion if, if Craig and Mary and you both are, um, that would be fine.
Okay. I think we're talking about the top line, the three or, or four priorities, trying to come to a consensus about. And then yes, maybe we, maybe trying to define those by looking at the bullet points and either, you know, re- rewriting a few of them, redistributing them, whatever it takes to, to make the bullet points relate to the top line. So we're forgetting about the text, that, that sort of small text in the middle, that's sort of two, which is very kind of, just kind of a narrative around each, each priority. Getting that out for now. And then forgetting about the projects for the time being. Um, just talking about, you know, the, the priorities and the focus areas.
Can we get rid of the green at the bottom completely?
Yeah, let's not look at the slide.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Let's look, not look at the slide. I think that's what.
Page seventy-four.
Seventy, I think everybody should look at seventy-four and seventy-five. That's my strong recommend.
Well, my, my notes are on the last page, but they relate. So I'll flip back and forth if I can. I, I, I think I'm going to follow you just fine though. Um, so safety, do you want to tackle that one first? Um, maybe I can kick it off with just a question. What is the difference between public preparedness and emergency preparedness? Or what's the intent of having it be separate?
And are you saying public safety? Or you were saying public preparedness? Are you talking about the last one, the community preparedness?
Oh, okay. So maybe there is a difference in the verbiage. I'll try and go back up.
Maybe, actually Judith, I'm sorry, but can we, maybe we step back. I mean, do we, do we agree that safety is, is an effective priority?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So safety is definitely goes on the top line.
Right.
What about, what about sustainable resilient town?
I like that.
Okay. What, everyone else?
Yeah, that's fine.
With the caveat that I, I personally, if we were rank ordering these, and I, this is a reaction to what's on the paper, which you said you didn't intend. I think the fiscal responsibility for me has to move up this year because uh, you know, we're, we're spending so much and we don't have like a roadmap for where we're getting to with the housing related expenditures. I think we really have to get our house in order. Uh, but if we're not priority ranking them, then, you know, I'm fine with that.
As a topic, as an unranked topic, you're okay with it?
Yes.
I think we agree on that.
And, and I would just add to that, in the previous year, it just said council priority. It didn't say one, two, three. It just said council priority and safety, council priority, sustainability, right? So I think that'll simplify that.
Okay. Maybe we, maybe the numbers are just too distraught.
They are. Uh, but, but I'd say more than that. I'm with you. I also think that the order we present them in, regardless of the numbering, also matters. So I'd like to move fiscal responsibility when we finalize this above sustainable resilient town. I think safety is the thing.
Okay, okay.
Right?
So, well, just getting back to my question, we all agree that sustainable resilient town is actually reasonable to be on that top.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then what about, so fiscal, so this last one is probably the one that we might have some, some, some disagreement. Fiscal responsibility and effective accountable governance, which I believe Sarah's. Fiscal responsibility and effective accountable governance, which I believe Sarah is proposing thinks should be broken into two things or is that?
Well, this is where I was saying, I, I would break it into an, again, not ranking forward thinking planning. And in there I would have revenue enhancement. The town center master plan, which is currently under sustainable resilient town. But I think the master plan is more about forward thinking and infrastructure, because that's been brought up so many times.
Yeah. So if, so if we took three and broke it into two, whether, so one of them is your forward thinking planning. What's the other one?
Uh, I had it like leaving everything else that was underneath, left over was transparency and.
What do you call the priority?
It's usually.
That's what I'm talking about. The, the, the third one, not rank, but number, the third one is forward thinking planning. The fourth would be transparency and efficient operations.
Instead of fiscal responsibility and effective accountable governance.
That was where, because I was, I was focusing on the subgroups that are under the, the sub focus areas that are underneath it.
What, a, a question for the council, would it be helpful if we pulled up a shared screen and started typing on it? Because this is, this is going to get real hard to follow real fast. So.
I was wanting to get up on the chalkboard.
All right, hold on, let me, uh, I'll do that at my end. Just give me.
No, no, no. Well, however you want to handle it. You could break or you could step out.
Let's, um.
Let's take a break.
Let's take, let's take, let's take five minutes right now.
And that way they could pull up a sheet and start.
And then we'll come back and try to.
Okay.
Excuse me, thank you.
I have just one, two really quick things that I want to talk about some point before we get further.
Okay, we're back. So, okay, so.
Uh, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, Corey, do you want me to drive the, uh, the document?
Whatever's easier for you.
I can, I'll do it at my end. Okay. Let me share a screen. Hold on a second. Right. It's a blank screen, so we're just gonna.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't have.
So we don't want.
We agreed on safety.
First two, we definitely.
Sorry, that thing's in the way.
Question was priority three could be two prior, broken into two. One of which was well forward thinking. And the other ones to be determined or.
Well, am I allowed to say that I think forward thinking is part of all these things? And why would we, uh, make it such a special priority?
Well, it has, it has a couple of specific things under it, which is revenue enhancements and, uh. And, well, a few, a handful of things. I, I, you know.
If you guys all want to keep it at three, I don't want to drive this off the rails. To me, it was too much. And things were getting buried that I thought were really important, but if, if I don't, I don't want to be the one. You know, it's format, frankly, at the end of the day, it's all going to get done, but. I just have my point of view, just from my time here so far was I want to be looking forward about particularly revenue. And then, um, town center master plan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of the forward thinking. I, I think it's important. Hey, guys, let me, let me finish and then you guys can jump in here. So the reason I think it's important is because I think the projects that are going to go underneath it are going to be projects that span multiple years. And that's really different than a lot of these other things where, I mean, sure, we're going to have safety this year, next year and the year after. But if we decide that we want to do revenue enhancement to raise money to do fire mitigation. And we want fire mitigation for the next 10 years, to me, that's part of our forward thinking planning. Because it's a long-term project to think about how we would raise that revenue. Rather than, you know, how are we going to mitigate for wildfire this year? Is it going to give grants to residents, et cetera? That would be something that I would have put under safety. So that's the distinction I'd make between the forward thinking is this longer term, multi-year thing versus. Things that we would slot in the particular year. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of it. I, I hadn't quite understood. What wording you wanted for the other half that you were splitting out. Like, I kind of like fiscal responsibility and effective accountable governance. So it wasn't quite clear what you wanted to, I mean, we leave it as. If you're okay with that, I'd leave that and just add forward thinking. And then I agree, moving some of the focus areas underneath. Yeah, that, that seemed quite reasonable to me as well.
Sure.
I, I, um, I agree with that.
So I, I'm open to doing that. I have to say that. Some of what we're doing. And the housing element necessarily has been forward looking. And I think you can overwhelm our efforts and our staff with. Too much constant forward planning. We've got to do it, but consistently and methodically. Uh, and I think people are frankly worn out from, from constantly thinking about eight years out. I think we need a little bit of a break. So I would include it, but I wouldn't put it third if, if we are ranking these things. And I do think we want to be pragmatic about. How, what to pick to get started under that. So, and Jeremy, I just have a very big favor to ask. If you could just increase the size of that, I'm on a very small laptop and perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Can we put it back up fiscal responsibility?
Yeah.
The fourth point Jeremy now is actually just, it's, it's the same as a, with the former third point. So it's fiscal responsibility and, uh.
Accountable.
Accountable governance. Yeah.
Have we agreed not to have that be second? Or what are we doing here? Because I personally think it's really important to put that pretty high. It goes with supporting things.
Hey Judith, can I ask you, I mean, when I think about this and, and we're talking about whether we prioritize or don't prioritize. And I know I, I brought it up as well. Um, it really strikes me as at the end of the day, it's the projects that are going to go underneath these top line things. That need to have a high, medium or low on them. Does that make any sense?
I thought I heard you say it's important optically how we present this as well. So if there is some weird circular way of doing this, so everything is as important as everything else. That's fine. But, you know, safety and getting our fiscal house in order, those to me are the starting point. And we absolutely want to be sustainable and resilient. We absolutely have to think about forward thinking. Um, so I think you're hearing a lot of consensus here. It's about.
It just moved.
Presented.
Yeah, you just want it to be.
Point four becomes point two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's fine. Okay. Oh, are these, are these the four priority, I mean, do some of these four things that people are comfortable with? Is this, um, Jeremy, Corey, is this, is this, is this level clear enough to, to move forward for you?
Yes.
Well, I, I'm going to, I'm going to disagree with Corey. Sorry, Corey. Um, I'm going to say no. Um, and the reason I'm going to say no is that I'm not sure what next steps are on comments made by council members around committee involvement. And I'm not sure, uh, what the council wants vis a vis a list of projects, um, to, let me, maybe I'll start on that one. You know, we, we, we received some projects from the committees when they were at the council on the 25th. So I think we can include some of those, um, we're going to include some of those, obviously.
Hey, Jeremy.
Let, let him finish. Let him finish. Go ahead, finish, Jeremy.
Well, go ahead, Craig.
I, I was just going to say, I think the next step is let's agree on the focus areas and then can we loop back around to the process? To deal with this, because I think you're jumping.
I'm just answering Jeff's question. So that's all I was doing. So you just can tell me what you want to do.
Yeah.
Great. Let's do the focus areas.
Yeah, I think when I said yes, I had just said that it's clear to me that we have the priorities set.
It's a change from what you brought to us, but it's still manageable.
That was the S I was referring to.
So then.
I, I, can I bother you by having you put the sustainable resilient town at the bottom as soon as how that is sort of. Like the summary of the whole thing.
Doesn't matter to mine.
I mean, it doesn't matter to anybody. It just, it seems, foreign things and planning doesn't seem like the summary.
Okay.
Uh, of a tranquil with a town in central Florida.
Okay. So now we're on to focus areas.
Uh, I, Mary, what, what was the rationale for that? I just didn't hear you. I, I, I'm afraid.
Saying that, uh, it seemed more global and sort of summary. If you, for a beauty sake, it seemed like. Poetic, more poetic than ending up with forward thinking planning.
Jeremy, is there any way that you can put that, we could put the focus groups underneath each bullet? So kind of. Yeah, like an outline format. So we're starting to bundle them. And I'll just start and say for safety as a focus area, I'm, you know. Emergency preparedness as one focus area and public safety as another one certainly makes sense to me.
And evacuation.
Well, that would go under.
I, I, I think it's, I think it should be its own, uh, important thing. I mean, it's, it's something we want to get done.
Yeah, but it's a, but it's a very concrete, discreet task. Planning that falls under emergencies, under the umbrella of, I think it's, I think this is organized.
Isn't it an evolving thing? Okay, evacuation planning, that is.
Yeah.
I, I feel like this, this makes sense. I feel like it fits under the, the run of the envelope of emergency parents, but.
And then the safety element obviously goes under emergency preparedness.
But it's a safety element.
No, that's a project.
I think of that as a task.
That's a project?
That.
That's listed in this as a project and I would think it's a project.
Okay.
I feel like it's, it's a project with a task. It's very well defined. This is evacuation planning is somewhere in between, but.
Public safety is.
Public safety is very high level. I'm not.
Very high.
I mean.
It's a focus area within, because before we had, you guys, before we have, remember we had wildfire. So what we did instead is we leveled up to safety.
Right.
I don't, I don't think it would be inappropriate for the council to give. Staff a little, and the public a little more. Information about some of these, uh, you know, so like, you know, and I, I, maybe I'm building off what Craig was saying earlier. So evacuation planning, I, I, I can come up with 40 projects associated with that. Now, we'll, we'll. We'll try to do 40 projects and we'll probably have 10 that are priorities and not everyone's going to agree on those projects, but. You know, there's, there, there's an opportunity here, maybe to say something around goals too. I mean, so, you know, with some of these longer term ones, it's, you know, safety is always going to be the case. I would say with emergency preparedness and evacuation and emergency preparedness, it's to ensure that the public. We're maximizing, um, X, Y, Z, A, B, C with evacuation planning. You know, there, I don't know that that ever ends, right? So is there a particular goal this year? Is there a particular, you know, like, that's a way to potentially think about it. Um, you know, that kind of thing. I, I hear you guys nibbling into that a bit. And I just wanted to put that out, that like you can, we can have that conversation. It's.
Are we allowed?
That feels like a next step to me though. Look, I feel like we're trying to just.
After we come back. Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
Like, okay. Uh, that's my, that's my thesis is anyone, I mean.
Okay, if, if I were going to do it, I think I'd put underneath public safety, I'd put geological safety and fire and blood.
Well, but those are all. But is it underneath? Um, because we have fire, geol- geology, flooding. You know, we've got several of them.
Okay.
And then we've got crime. So, you know, they're all there.
I'm actually stepping back and asking, what does public safety actually mean?
Right.
I think they meant, I think intended to be the police is my.
Public safety is a, a term of art, yes, from government to describe, uh, police. Police, crime, those kinds of things.
Okay, okay. Okay, that, that makes sense. All right.
Do you put crime?
I like having that on this list as a focus area. We didn't have that last.
That's fine. I just, I just, okay, that's, that's. Okay. Okay.
At least then we know that we're not talking about flood, fire and catastrophe.
So the emergency preparedness. I get that's when you have the urgent. Matter, but. There's something about better understanding the risks. That is, I think, missing here. You know, risk assessment, risk.
Here we go.
Uh, understanding, I, I don't know what it is, but you know, if we do have. Different faults in town that are legitimately understood and, and substantiated. Then you do something about preparing. So.
Risk and.
Hazard mitigation, I mean.
Long-term risk and hazard, uh, evaluation.
Risk and hazard evaluation, something like that.
Well, uh, uh, to, just to, to put, just to flesh that, just to give a specific example, like, um, like vegetation management would be a, a, a hazard mitigation. Step that would fall under that category would, would be. So I'm just, just so I understand what you're, what.
No, I don't think that goes under emergency.
I think, I think Judith is saying that's not emergency preparedness, that it's actually risk manit- mitigation of some, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
This is when we've, when the fire. Is, is how to prevent the fire or to. The fireless.
You're right, Jeff, that, I'm, that's where I'm going. But the first is confirming what we know. Because there's a lot of evolution in the science and there could be some evolution in the geology or flooding science. In our new world. So it's understanding it and then, you know, planning for. Uh, minimizing the risk. I mean, a, addressing the risk and hazard. Um. I, that, that's holistically how I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's differentiated from the emergency preparedness because it's, it's, it's proactive and preventive.
Yeah.
Can you say, just thinking on the basis of, uh, informed, uh. This can hazard evaluation. The separate circle.
I'm thinking of something simpler, which would be, I, I was thinking like. Risk or hazard, risk and hazard mitigation or risk mitig, I mean, something, I think a mitigation and it could be hazard mitigation. It could be risk mitigation. Those are different. I don't quite understand how, but.
What, so Judith, could we put it under a resilient town? Like, let's take it out of safety and let's put it.
Because there, it would be a higher priority for me. Because these are life and limb at risk, right? I mean. It's assessment and mitigation of hazard and risk. Geological or, or natural hazards and risks. I don't know.
Realistic evaluation of hazard and risk.
Well, I had said assessment and mitigation, um, that type of thing.
Okay, can you try that, Jeremy?
Okay, I guess what I'm.
As, no, as a, as a circle, as a.
As a big dot.
You give me that line again.
Assessment and mitigation of hazard and risk. And Craig, I can see why you're, you're, you're saying it might be duplicative. Um, I'm just thinking about identifying really important. Known.
I like it because it creates a distinction between two, two things. Well, I already said this, but.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
But it seems like there's three, we're talking three things here. We're talking preparedness, mitigation and res- and response. So to me, preparedness, what you do before an emergency. Right? Response is what you do during an emergency. And we're saying mitigation is, in, in my mind, is sort of another form of preparedness. But it's, it's actually evaluating your risks and then trying to do something about them. So, so I mean, those are three kind of large buckets for me. I, and I guess I'm trying to understand. What, what we want to do with these buckets.
I, like, I think, I think there's projects that fit under all those three buckets. I think they become focus areas and then. There's a lot of projects that fit into those three things.
Yeah, maybe said, if this is helpful, maybe said a different way, uh, another way is that, um, the. I lost my train of thought. It'll come back. Continue. It'll come back.
Okay. Well, do we want another bullet then that's emergency response? Cause it is, it is a different in my mind, because I.
Yeah, it is.
It feels different.
Does it, does it fall, does it fall under public safety?
Well, not if it's crime, it doesn't. Well, not if it's crime. It doesn't. I mean, because it.
Put crime and for acts of nature, like, um, natural disasters or.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I mean, obviously law enforcement is a public safety group. I'm wondering, do firefighters a public safety group? Or is that something different? Or, or, or firefighting different enough as, just, just emergency response or being a separate category? I guess it's, I guess it's fine. I guess four, four focus series is okay.
What is emergency response? Can someone describe that a little bit more so we can, uh, fill it out? Settle.
Have you discovered?
Um, well, I mean, so it's going to be certainly the fire department, you know, like the police fit under public safety. The fire department fits under emergency response. Um, the other stuff I define as emergency management, right? I mean, basically, you know, all the virtual E O C and cert and all the public work stuff we do would fit under the actual response, right? So does that help, Jeremy, to sort of tell you where I'm going with this? Like, these are feet on the ground during an emergency. These are actions that, you know, we've got the resources to apply in an emergency.
Oh, this, so the goal here would be to increase where appropriate and available emergency. Okay, I got you. I've phoned it. Okay.
It's, it's a lot of it has to do with first responders or, you know, responders and coordinating those responses, I think.
Yeah.
Craig, is there something here? Or is this, do I not need a bullet here?
I mean, what Jeff just said was great. I, I think it's, you know, a core coordinating first responders. Um, is, is fine for right now and then we can figure out, I mean, because that's, that's going to be fire, that's going to be cert. That's going to be members of, you know, the staff, the E O C. So I, I think that's good enough for, let's, let's not deep end on this because we got a long list to go through.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm good with just leaving it as the top bullets for now.
Can I ask just one question on this?
Sure.
Um, just for Jeremy, when you look at these, uh, circle categories, so obviously the, the, one purpose of this is to bundle the projects. When you think about the projects that you know of, do these, I just want to fact check that, you know, that's the whole purpose of these subcategories is to bundle projects. So what you need to do is get these circles and then the projects don't fit in or the projects have to go into multiple circles. You know what I mean?
I think it fits. I mean, I, I, I can, I can riff a little bit here if this is helpful. So, you know, for evacuation planning, I think that one's actually fairly obvious, but these would be, you know, projects with partners about widening roads, coming up with new, um, new ways to leave town, coordinating efforts in particular parts of, of town that have their own unique challenges, like the Highlands, et cetera. Emergency response, coordinating first responders, this is, this, this is an ongoing activity, but there's a couple of projects I can, I could say in here. That, that, they're, they're just staff resource projects. Assessment of mitigation and hazard risk, uh, that's what we do with our local hazard mitigation plan. So that's implementing the plan. Um, so there's a lot of stuff in there that I think, um, and it, it, there's, this bleeds over a bit between these. Public safety, crime, um, yeah, the one potential project is, uh, implementation of flock cameras. So if that helps, that's the kind, that's how I'm sort of.
I just want to make sure.
Where would the safety element go? Just, I mean, just use an example.
With multiple.
Well, I don't know. I mean, what, what?
It fits under several things there.
Shouldn't it cover all of them in part?
Yes. It is a safety element. Yes.
Yeah.
So it's, so it goes at the top, basically. It's part of the.
I mean, it's, well, it actually, it goes above the priorities because it's part of the general plan and the general, the priorities derived from the general plan. So it's technically not even here.
Right. That's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, so we've got four, we've got four new focus areas under safety. Is those, does those cover? I feel like those, it feels pretty complete to me. It feels like. I think safety really would fall those.
And we're going to leave these sub bullets, you know, the, the, the lowest in depth, the third in depth, we're not, I mean, that's. These are just examples, right?
That was just so we'd know what we're talking about.
Right. Because I mean, we put in wildfire plant, you know.
We could, we can flush them out, but we don't need.
But we don't do. I just, so, so anything that's at the third level is just an example of that not.
I, I, I threw a couple of things out there and you threw them out just so I, just so I knew what emergency response.
Yeah.
Not to, not to be comprehensive, correct? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I can.
So we could move on to fiscal responsibility and and accountable governance. Are we?
Yeah.
Okay. What? What, what do we have there?
Well, fiscal responsibility, I mean.
So timely reporting.
Right, transparency.
Reporting and audits, yeah.
So, I mean, I think timely reporting, operational efficiencies, transparency, those all feel like they fit under.
Yep.
That, that bullet, right?
Yep.
What was the third one, Craig?
Um, transparency, operation efficiency and timely fiscal, and it's, it's three out of the four. They're already underneath that bullet in the packet.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
And this, this is also, um, you know, the thing Mary was concerned about, which is community engagement, I think falls under here.
I agree.
Under.
Accountable governance. That's what it feels like to me. I, or, or something like it. Something, I mean, basically accountable governance is being transparent and getting people's input on things. And it feels like community engagement is, is a. Yeah, that's reasonable.
Because under that, like projects, for example, would be the communications things that we want to work on, the committee operations things, community partnerships, those kind of things.
Yeah, could we even make it different from community engagement and call it, and put the community, the, uh, the committees there and the commu- committee operations there instead of.
Well, that would be a project within there.
Committee, committee, the committee thing, so it feels like a, feels like a how, and this feels like a what to me.
Okay.
Or a subway.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get my pri- my, uh, problem with the words community engagement of communicated here, but I can totally try. Um, which is that I think, uh, as a resident, you, in your town, you like to feel that you're in control, that if there's an emergency, that, that, you know, a certain extent, we're a self-governing town. We would, we would operate if Jeremy didn't come in or if, uh, that we would have a set of committees that would function just like we were, we've been told with Firewise Communities, et cetera, that we will be two or three weeks. And that's been my experience, at least living through however many disasters we've had. Um, we're on our own for two weeks. Nobody's calling us saying, how are you doing? Like, we're taking care of ourselves and our neighbors for weeks. Um, and so the thing that I'm hearing with, with the community engagement, you guys engage with us instead of the governments takes care of the residents to empower them to take care of themselves. Uh, which I think is, is the more of what I see, um, the sort of the independent town that Portola Valley is, is that one that sort of, um, can take care of itself.
So Mary, we, you know, we've got, and we didn't sort of include, we had this community preparedness and awareness under safety in the packet. I mean, should we reinstate that under the safety? Because that, at least for the examples you just gave, that one seems to capture those. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable adding below public safety, putting in the community preparedness and awareness.
Yeah.
So.
And the, the other, the other part is like public works, the public work committee, um, is what saved us during the flooding. You know, they, they actually, the kids, the guys came and helped people get out of their basements and stuff. Um, the, the, the volunteers did. Um, anyway, yes, that's enough.
So Mary, I'm also hearing you talk a little bit about resilience of the town, um, community to face adversity. Like, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but maybe we can talk about if this does it great and if you think something like that is missing when we get to the last one.
It basically is coming out of the last one.
Yeah, okay.
I would think it's going to end up, but I think it's very important where you've just put it, by the way. Thank you, Craig.
Was there a second word there that I missed?
Awareness.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Jeremy, that, that should be, yeah, and it shouldn't be, it, it should be at the same level as public safety. I just meant after public safety, not.
Oh, okay.
Supporting to, yeah, sorry.
I promoted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awkward English.
I, I think that is good, just like that. Perfect.
So, but I think where we were going was community engagement, Jeff, is I thought what I was hearing you say is putting that under accountable govern- it's the basically community communication or something. That's the aspect that belongs under accountable governance is that.
That's the reason why it belongs into this, under this priority, yes. Was, that was my.
I, I, I think it's more like Glenn, uh, I don't know, um, making the, uh, bringing it to, bringing the data into focus, you know, it's more like modernization of, of communication, of data that we're missing.
It feels.
Too granular for this level.
Yeah.
Okay.
Might do sense, but.
And it may go under sustainable and resilient town, um, when we get there. So let's put a pin in it. We might find a principal there.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so forward-thinking planning, where, what?
So that's good. So that's the revenue enhancement, right, Sarah?
Town center master plan.
Yep.
I don't know what that means.
So that's the, we're in the town center here and so there's been discussion about, you know, all the things that need to be thought about. So whether it be, do we want pickleball courts? Do we want to optimize the town hall, town, um, what's that, town hall, moving around, you know, the layouts to make it fit better with staff. Today I had my friends at the library meeting. There's all kinds of thoughts they have about what they want to do. They want to expand. They want to have a maker space, you know? Just all these, you know, some people want a dog park. So it's really all of the thoughts um, about a master plan for town center. There has really been updated.
Isn't that too granular for this forward-thinking planning? Aren't we talking about?
That's forward thinking.
More like, uh, you know, climate change and, uh, well.
Well, it's, it's forward thinking on a smaller scale. I mean, revenue enhancement is.
Yeah.
Revenue enhancement is just to support the town too.
Well, I think, yeah, no, I think, um, I mean, I, to me, the forward thinking and planning is, is a place to put things that aren't just, you know, for the next fiscal year. I mean, it's literally thinking four or five years. I mean, like that. The capital improvement plan would be an example. It would go under this. We already have it, but I think maybe, maybe it's a, maybe it's, maybe it's a project under one of these, but, um.
I guess one of the reasons I thought of this is when we were having the discussion last time about conceptually, we don't have a five-year strategic plan and I realized I don't do that in town. So this was kind of a workaround to get at, okay, if we were going to have some elements of that.
Yeah.
What would it be?
Yeah.
And to me, town center master plan and, and I don't know what infrastructure could be because we don't have control over a lot of that. It's all the utilities, but it does come up an enormous amount in town.
Yeah, maybe we better put that in there.
Um.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, I mean.
We just don't have any direct projects with that, I don't think.
But is that a resilience thing or is that?
It's a little of both.
Okay.
Well, and I would add, what, what's the expectation or what would happen? I mean, to the point he's just made, we had no control over.
Right, that's what's the concern.
Right, so we, I mean, I, I talked to AT&amp;T, you know, once a week about various things, but, um, you know, ultimately they're an independent agency.
Yeah.
You know, there's little things, there's things here and there that I certainly push harder, you know, like resiliency of their own networks and in, in emergency in particular. But I don't know what the project is.
No, I agree. I had it there because I thought it fit, but I realized we have no control.
Well, but.
Limited control.
But, but before we leave that, I mean, well, and what about getting a report, an annual report from AT&amp;T and P G and E and people like that, on like what their plan? I mean, I don't know what we can require, but you know what I mean, some, it feels like it, we, we don't directly control it. On the other hand, we are responsible, but we're, yeah, we're responsible to our residents to make sure that the agencies that are responsible are doing something.
And what we have is a franchise agreement with them. And I don't know how to put it in there, but it's, it's sort of, I mean, it's, you know, revisiting and, you know, it's, it's, it's nightmare, but you can revise a franchise agreement. I mean, it's maybe that's something that we think about.
I, I, Jeff, that's, that, that's going to be a rough one.
I, yeah, I, I just, I, I'm just thinking about, I mean, just if we're talking about how to make infrastructure, something that eleven, the, 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 the one very clumsy lever we have to push is, is, would be franchise agreements. Um, but, but.
And, and what about just monitoring or, or something like that, um, on a yearly basis? Like just monitoring infrastructure, because if we know about it, I mean, we don't know what the problems will be. But if we get reports consistently, then it's going to prompt us to look into it. And I take your point completely. We can't do much about it. So maybe it falls off, but that's what I think I'm hearing is at least, um, assessing where we are since we're hearing some reports that indicate we may have some issues. Um, before we leave it, um, timely fiscal, I don't know if reporting is the, is the comprehensive because it's also auditing. I mean, I, I hate to harp on that, but, but it is something that we, we are going to do. So in reporting or monitoring, I, yeah, and, um, operation, oh, the revenue enhancement, if we just do that in a vacuum, it, it looks bad, right? We just want to enhance revenue. Um, and, and so Sarah, I think you're putting it in there as a way to plan both for the long-term projects and for the near-term, um, you know, deficits that we may have. Is that right? Or how would you link that to something?
Well, to me, there's, there's kind of two things. One is what's been talked in my time on the finance committee, but really at a super high level and never really got to any detail is what are the levers we have to increase revenue and really start to think about that. You know, there are small things that are really just going to be nips and tucks. There's bigger things that would be, you know, additional tax revenue and, and those kind of things. So I think we need to have a serious discussion to vet that out. And then I thought what could also go under here from a project standpoint is, you know, we toyed around with the idea of P V donates that, that could be small scale. Um, but if we think about larger scale, you know, in the, in the conversations about the potential for private funding for affordable housing, that could be another project type thing here. I was thinking ahead on, um, you know, the, the post-adoption process. If an output of that is going to be, you know, if we want to do a big affordable project housing, affordable project, housing project here in town and we want to underground the, um, parking, for instance, you know, a nonprofit third-party provider is not going to pay for that. We'll have to do some private fundraising for that. So I thought, you know, it could be a way to capture those kind of things as well.
But, well, the, the reason we need the revenue enhancement should be in here, which is, I mean, I, I would say, you know, long-term staffing and operations.
Absolutely.
I mean, the reason we need revenue enhancement is because, because running the town is becoming more expensive.
We can't hire. Right.
There should be something in here with sort of, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, long-term staffing would be one possible.
Not even long-term, I mean.
Well, long-term planning for.
Staffing.
Oh, I like that.
I'm saying that one of the focus areas should be what, what are expenses are? I mean, why, why is the things are sort of going to drive our increasing costs over time? And one of them is we probably will need more staff and our staff will be paid more and, and benefits, I mean, all, just, you know, long-term, long-term operational cost or all long-term operation and budget.
I agree.
Thinking, thinking more than one, just cycle ahead about what the fact that we.
Right.
That, that, these are all legitimate, necessary things. However, I want to bring us back to the fact that we're coming up with a yearly priority. And I think after the amount of spend and planning we've had for the housing element, we, I personally am not ready to be super ambitious. It's a start to the process. I, I completely agree with that and we will need to do these things. But I don't think it's a good use of time. We need a breather before we take on the huge things that we don't have to take on right now and, and start strategically. So the more we load this up, the more I think it's getting to it. Sarah, I think appropriately noted in the last conversation, which is we should have, you know, both the one-year and the five-year plan or the, you know, longer plan, but they're not the same thing. And as we're talking about this, I'm getting worried that we're going to start conflating it and then I don't know if that helps us. So I think it's important. I just don't know that it's all part of our yearly priorities. So I think it's important. I just don't know that it's all part of our yearly priorities thing or whether it should be. Cause all good things, I'm not disagreeing, but why are we putting it in here now? Um. And how, how are we going to use the staff time that we have now to achieve the other things if we're also asking them to start right away on that? So I would not have this as the number one priority, but it is important. I, I mean, feel free to discuss that, but I, I do want to bring us back to a lot of places, a lot of businesses have a one-year plan and a five-year plan. And all those things make a ton of sense to me, but I don't think it's this year right now.
Yeah. I mean, who would take out enhancement, I gotta say.
Yeah, I, I disagree. Uh, I, I think. At least the way I'm envisioning it, maybe we can come up with different words, but I think of like wildfire mitigation. And that's clearly a five to 10-year operation. And I think we need to start thinking about. How we're going to raise money to do that. And I think we could come up with some basic ideas of, look. You know, it's going to cost us, I'll throw out a random number, a million dollars a year. And then we should start thinking about, you know, how can we raise a million dollars a year to do wildfire mitigation? That's not to say that we're going to come up with the, you know, whatever method to actually get that revenue. But to start thinking that we need to do this and it's going to cost, you know, on the order of take $10 million. But that's what I was hoping was in this forward thinking.
Yeah.
Same thing if we wanted a housing fund, if we were, you know, saying, okay, if we, you know, we have to support housing, how are we going to do that? You know, and that would. Wh- what we used it for, whether it was to help people with their ADU, JADUs, or whether it was to help a below-market developer build. I mean, I, not so important, but if we start saying, in order to get the housing stock that we want, it's going to cost X. And then start thinking about how we would raise that X amount of dollars.
Oh, so Craig, I, I do think for the other projects that we're going to get to, including sustainability, if it's revenue enhancement for those. I get it. I'm just wondering where the cutoff is because I'm trying to be pragmatic here and not theoretical. Um, because that's what, where we are. We have limited staff and we have limited money and limited time this year. And, uh, you know, that's why I was asking, what can we tie it to the revenue enhancement for the yearly purpose? And then still have a revenue enhancement for the more strategic things. Um, and again, I don't want to belabor this. I, I think. I, I want to be pragmatic. I, I prefer to just keep moving on, but.
Can I just answer, like, to me, this isn't actually doing it. It's, it's just starting. To me, what I would like to see, and again, this doesn't, you know, our fiscal year starts this summer, so it's not in the next, you know, it's not immediate. I think at some point next year, I would love to see some actual lists of what are our options? What are the levers we have to pull to enhance revenue? It's kind of been talked about in the ether a lot, and there's no tangible work on that. And I'm not saying we're going to put those plans in place. I think there needs to be thinking and work done on what those options could be from small to big. And so. That's, that's, that's really my main thing. And then I, we have also talked about the master plan for the campus. That keeps coming up all over the place. I think we should be starting, you know, again, this is planning. It's not doing, it's planning. So that's, you know, those two are my.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You know, this is the point of making forward-thinking planning a priority, even if it's annual priority, is to start thinking about, is, is to put a placeholder saying, we're going to think about something that takes more than a year to do. Which means by definition, we're not going to finish those, these, these things in one year. So it's not, the point is not to boil the ocean, do everything, revenue enhancement, we're not going to finish revenue enhancement this coming year, but we've put down a place, placeholder and said, this is important to us.
How about we change the word to long-term revenue sources instead of revenue enhancement?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
What's that?
I'd be okay with that.
Could you do that?
Fine. I mean, and I, I'm not disagreeing fundamentally. I, I.
Revenue sources.
Didn't mean to over-focus on this. Um, yeah.
I mean, I just, it, it didn't, it doesn't look the way it was before. And, and now at least it looks like we're.
Yeah.
Working at, at it.
Yeah.
Um.
We do need more of them though. We do need to enhance them. So that's my concern. It's like.
Go ahead.
We, we need to enhance our revenue. So.
Well, we need to know what I need, uh, that what I had originally had come up with was a little, slightly different, but anyway.
As long as everybody knows that, that, that's the point. I don't mind about, I don't care about the wording is.
Well, I mean, I haven't seen the, I mean, I believe it, given the spend I've seen so far, but I haven't seen, we haven't had the.
Yeah, we don't know.
The support for it yet. So like, we'll, we'll do what makes sense and longer-term planning is a good thing. So I have no issue with that. I'm just saying, I want to understand exactly what we think we're doing. Cause building for the sake of it isn't what we're doing. Um, we're going to be building for our purposes and that, that makes total sense.
Jeff, can I?
But I don't know what the area.
The thing I was.
Wait, Jeremy, Jeremy.
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a, a few comments. Um, on the revenue enhancement front, um, and this is probably a factor of, um. A couple, a council, some new council members, but if you look at our budgets over the last, you know, seven years I've been here, you go back a little further. You can see in many of them, um, we, we didn't run operational deficits, but we, we certainly ran deficits when it came to capital improvement and road expenditures and the like. So we, we, we have been doing that. We've been fortunate because we've been smart about our budgeting. Um, but that, that, that's a real thing. Um, so that exists and I'm happy to share more information about that at the appropriate.
In the future, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, sure. The second thing I would say is this, is that, you know, we heard, we heard at the last meeting. A- amongst other things, a, a general plan update. And if you think the housing element is a tough update, a general plan update is mind-numbingly difficult. It takes forever. It's a very long process. I've managed them myself in other communities. And I want to be thoughtful about that because if that's coming up next fiscal year. In addition to post-adoption housing element process, which is going to not be six months, it'll be longer than that, and the safety element update. We're not getting much of a, a breather and there's a lot of money that gets spent on those things. Um. Period. I mean, that's just where it's at. So I want us to go very, uh, very open-eyed into what the next year can look like, if that's the direction of the council, right? It, it doesn't have.
Right. Right. But that's a discussion we have to have. Is that worth cost benefit? And when is it worth doing on that point? Um, but we haven't had that yet. So let's take your point, but, um, should we move on to sustainable and resilient?
Well, yeah, can I, I just wanted to finish this off though. I mean, I'd like to add a bullet before the revenue sources, which is long-term revenue needs.
Yeah.
So that's clear that we, we, we identify the needs and we start identifying sources. That way, and this is Judith, I think what you were after a little bit.
That was my original one.
Well, I'd like them to be two, I would make them two separate ones. Long-term revenue needs and then long-term revenue sources.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Sources.
Cable.
Yeah. And then if you just make the one above just needs instead of need analysis, I. Either that, we're going to get into, you're going to make them both analysis, but I was just going to keep it short and simple.
Needs and sources.
Needs and sources. Yeah. It's, it's more parallel. Which is pretty good for levels.
Yeah, not bad.
Thank you.
You remember why we thought we wanted to be a sustainable and resilient town.
I like what you had in here, continue to lead in sustainability.
So where are, oh, they're trying to kick me out soon, so I will reopen. Um, I'm sorry. So, so what does that mean though? I mean, what, what would that exactly mean? Cause I think, um, we now have. What else is under this beside that?
This would theoretically capture, I, I, I can, I'll speak to the project level. Maybe that helps.
Um, yeah.
Climate action plan. Um, you know, that, that's in, you know, we'll, we'll have a meeting with you in May on it, but thi- this is increasingly looking like a project really get underway next year. Um, you know, this is, this is support, supporting the sustainability committee and its various projects. Um, another project would be something we've been trying to do for years now with the, um, some kind of micro-grated town center. Resiliency corridors related to electricity, uh, undergrounding where it's even possible, stuff like that.
So.
Solar panel update too.
But these are all projects. I mean, Ben, Ben and Judith.
Yeah. Got the continuing to, to, uh, lead in sustainability. We got the general plan update.
Right.
Plenty of problems here already.
Well, so my, my, my issue is more the concept of leading. I, I think our town has a great. History of supporting and implementing sustainability, but I don't actually know what it means to lead. It sounds rather daunting to me. So I don't know why that word is there as opposed to continue our, our tradition of sustainability. Ma- efforts, measures, whatever.
Continue sustainability?
Oh, say one more time.
Continue to promote sustainability?
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
I think continue our tradition of sustainability is, says it all myself. It's, it's not, it's not that you. I didn't say support.
I, I like promote. I think that a sus- a sustainable resilient town is the, the top level and promoting sustainability leads to that. So I'm, I'm, I think that's good and it seems pretty simple. I'm, I'm okay with different wording if you, if you feel strongly, but I, I don't. And then I think the land use one belongs there. So I think those are the two things that belong underneath.
I would separate land use and general plan update myself.
Yes, I would too.
Uh, I mean, the general plan is not just about land use.
Yep.
It includes center master plan. In fact, I would just put that underneath. I would just put that underneath the general plan update.
Well, so guys, uh, I really want to understand what the general plan update is intended to do because to Jeremy's point, you don't want to. Take that on lightly and you really want to know what you're getting into in terms of costs and the like. So personally, I need the case to be made to me, um. Today, like why do that this year? And after all the unexpected economic. Exposure we've had with the housing element and we've done what we needed to do. There's no second guessing there. Um, I just don't know if we need to do it this year or sometime soon. I take the point that some things are starting to be out of sync. But I don't think there's anything broken that we aren't fixing in the housing element related updates that we have to do this year. So you, you all can have a different view, but I, I'm not there yet.
Stand and adhere to the general plan.
So if, if I can, the, there's a couple of things. The town has not undertaken a. Comp, well, you know, define the term comprehensive general plan update for close to 30 years. That is not a best practice. You want to do every, some communities do it every five years, which is a lot. I would not recommend. You know, 10 to 15 years, it makes a lot of sense. So over the course of the last period of time, there have been a number of state law changes. So the, the document itself is not consistent with state law. The document itself is not internally consistent at this time. Because there were piecemeal changes made to the document over the last 25 years. So that needs to happen. Um, and, uh, so that would be the rationale for starting that project sooner than later.
So I.
Yeah.
I, I get it. To think about in terms of timeline is if it's on here, you know, this could start a year from now. So, you know, we're, we're planning ahead. We don't need to start the beginning of the fiscal year to the summer. You know, it, we could start the project. I agree. I think the town needs a breather from like a massive project. Um, but it, it is one thing that's been on the docket for a really long time. I mean, people asked me about the general plan job before I was running for council. Or like, you know, that was like three years ago.
We.
Keeps getting pushed back.
Talked about an updated general plan in 2019.
Yes, exactly.
We were talking about it before COVID.
Right.
Um, but.
Yeah, I'm aware.
It was going to take a million dollars and take two, two or three years. Yeah.
Barely moved.
I mean, it could start 15 months from now and still be within this priority year.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I mean, I, we, we, we have to, we have to start at some point. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not on board with that, but that's fine. I, I hear I'm in the minority. I, I, I know it needs to be done.
Different way.
Still not thinking this year is a realistic year. But I'll, I'll leave, leave that out there. Um, you guys can do what you want on that.
How about continue to investigate?
I'm assuming we're doing fiscal year. Next fiscal, this coming fiscal year is what we're planning for.
Right.
Investigate the needs of the general plan. Something like that.
Well, so Judith, the question I would ask you is, are you, so you're saying that you don't think we should think about the general plan for a year and a half? Cause that's what it means to say we're not doing it this year. Okay.
Well, I haven't had, I haven't been convinced that it's needed in this upcoming fiscal year. Now, I'm willing to have that conversation, but I'm not where you all are. Cause you all seem to think, oh, it's a no-brainer. I'm not. So, you know, that's just a difference and it's fine to put it down and just know I'll have those questions.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Uh, so we, okay, we've talked about splitting this, splitting.
Housing element in general.
And general plan into two different things. So.
We just got land use.
Our next sub-bullet here, next, the next.
Circle, big circle.
Big circle.
Indent this one.
Land use is its own priorities?
Land use should be indented one more.
Yeah.
And then general plan as a, as another circle.
Update.
Yeah, just this, I would need, but. Can't just leave it like that. General plan without the update.
We could, yeah.
Well, and to be, you know, and just to add a little color here, that in general plan update, if it started late next fiscal year, y- you're, you're just putting together the foundation for the. Update. So, and that could take, you know, that could take a good six months, right? Something like that. So that, you know, that might be the timing.
It's starting in 15 months from now.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to take two or three years.
Right.
I hate taking because of the hour. I realize it's playing in midnight, but, um, uh, Jeremy, it seems this is.
Mary, I can't really hear you. Sorry.
Uh, this is a question for Jer- Jeremy. Um, the, uh, making, uh, the general plan into the town charter and becoming a charter of town. Uh, if we were going to go to the trouble of doing a general plan, would becoming a charter town help with our. Long-term revenue needs and sources, for one thing, but also, uh, our sense of self-governance and, um. And so sense of community. What can you tell, tell us about being a charter town?
Kara might have some additional thoughts here. There, I, I, I don't know significant functional differences in a charter city as opposed to a general law city on, on financial, on finances. Um.
Apparently, there's a whole new tech, there's a whole separate tax, um. Mechanism for charter towns that are, that we don't have as a general.
Agenda. I don't think we can.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just general plan update. Uh, I think we don't want to do a general plan.
We're just talking about priorities though, right now. I just want to stick to not adding agenda items.
So can I suggest, what if we move general plan update under forward-thinking planning?
Yeah.
That would give it more of that, it's not something we're going to finish next year.
Yes.
Which is, I think Judith's point as well.
Love it.
Right? Um, and sustainability, I think we could just leave this promote sustain- sustainability and leave it at that. Like I, cause I don't, what does land use mean? I don't even know what that means.
I mean.
Well. Yeah, I could see there's an argument. Oh, sorry, Sarah. Go ahead.
Go ahead. You go ahead.
No, land use, I mean, I think it is, like, for example, the, the conservation committee will probably have different recommendations on, on plants. Um, I, I'm not sure what else, uh, you know, protecting along the flooding creeks. Um, how is there something to be done there? I was thinking it in those ways. Maybe that's not the way you were thinking.
Definitely what I was thinking about resilience in terms of watershed and environmental resources.
But it's also has to do with planning and building so that when, when we, when we, when we entitle new projects there safely and they're done in ways that do erosion or, or excessive.
Can we put down their environmental resources?
The reality is too, we're going to be iterating on aspects of the housing element, you know, who knows what's going to happen with the post-approval process. I mean, I think land use under that context is incredibly important is, and will, will probably be, if I'm going to guess, 80. land use under that context is incredibly important is, and will, will probably be, if I'm gonna guess, eighty percent of what we work on next year. So it's just the reality.
Yeah, I'm just struggling with land use.
Jeremy, can you put down there protecting environmental resources so I can at least remember that I thought of it? Protecting and enhancing environmentally resources.
Housing element aspects.
Yeah.
And the priorities.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I'm just trying to question whether land use is the thing I would put the housing. That seems awkward.
What they call it. It's like a government term.
Yeah, it's in our general plan like.
So if we had building codes?
Let's get rid of it. Cause we already have enough of it without putting it in our priority.
No, no, I understand. But so if we were talking about sustainable building, where would that go? I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Sustainable building code enhancements or, you know.
Yeah, like last year we had that, the green code ordinance.
Right. So we would put that into promoting sustainability?
It was there.
Uh, yes.
I'm, I'm okay with that. So
I get rid of land use. Land use is like, you know, it's like
Where is housing? All the housing element stuff going? That's why for, for me originally, I thought I sustain, I know you guys like
Should we do?
The concept of resilient town, but I, I, I had put out there, um, sustainability and land use as a priority. I know that resilient sounds more.
Well, it's a little more protective, it's a, a little bit more, um,
I mean
environmental, as, but like fire resilience is very important. Environmental resilience is very important.
But land use feels more like a how than, I mean, sustainable resilient town feels like a what and land use feels like a how to me. Land use is all those, all the decisions that go into what it's built basically.
Oh, land use is also policy oriented though. You know, that's workforce.
Go ahead. Yeah, uh, Judith.
I was just saying land use is a policy-driven, you know, urban planning, is it wooly planning, um? Uh, it is, you know, how are we going to make use of the local resources? Um, but, but again, the general plan kind of gives you guidance on that. And I don't know if there's something separate from that that we would wanna achieve. So Craig, you, you're reacting because you don't see anything in that bucket that makes sense here, or can you explain your concern?
You mean for land use?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, I, I guess I'm struggling with, I mean, we need to put the housing element someplace. I just, i- if you told me the housing element was under land use, I would not have said, oh, of course, why didn't I think of that? Um, looking for a term that seemed like it captured.
I think it's all, I mean, land use is a term of art for some extent. Housing element definitely falls under it.
Well, and I, Craig, I don't know if I'm gonna be helpful here or not, but it, I, I think what, what I hear Craig asking is how, how do we further define land use under sustainable and resilient town in a way that the community will understand what the, what the
Yeah.
Priority is.
Uh, Jeremy, can you just scroll up so we can take a look at where we've come from first?
Is it okay if I go a little smaller? So
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My eyes aren't that bad. Yeah.
Mine are terrible. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do it so we can kind of see everything at once here.
Yeah, it'd be helpful. Okay, safety, fiscal responsibility, forward-thinking planning, sustainable and resilient town. So I can see where we wanna put it, the housing stuff in something other than forward-thinking planning, because to me, we've been talking about long-term planning. And that's how I started thinking about that category now. And so I almost wanna change the title of the last one so that it can more easily include the housing, but I don't know, guys, or
Can we put affordable housing uh, next to land use? Is that too much to add?
Is that different than the housing element?
Put it under
That's one aspect.
I think it's, I think it's part of land use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would give, get us back to that. We actually believe that having some affordable housing would make us more sustainable and resilient.
Right, yeah.
Not a guiding
Yeah.
If we believe that, we should put it there.
Yeah.
Where would you guys like this one?
I love it.
That's a project.
I, no, I, I, I think
Post-housing.
It is a priority. I think it is a priority though, because we're gonna be doing things like trying to say hit the ground running to avoid I like you know, building somewhere. I don't know if that's the right category for it.
I think it's this under land use, honestly. I think it's a project under land use.
Okay.
If I can offer a different, a different way of thinking about it, if this is helpful, there, there are projects associated with the post-adoption housing element process.
Yeah. Yeah.
It does feel to me, one person, that this is more than just a project. It, it is councils put a lot of time and effort into thinking about this in the last time. So it, it does rise to a different, I mean, a focus area seems fine. Um, but it, it doesn't feel quite like a project to me. There are lots of projects.
I agree. I think it's great.
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. I think that's a good point.
Okay, that's fine.
Comfort German.
Right.
Okay.
Are you guys happy with our progress?
Does this make sense? Does this to, to, have we just, have we just
Blown the whole project?
Well, I guess the question is what's, what do you want next? Um, so what, what I would typically be doing is taking this and then working with staff to look through the projects that have come from committees. Um, there, I think there's some, you know, low controversial, you know, projects that come from staff on these, on these types of things, and then leave a little bit of breathing room on things that can come up or things that change over time. And then when we come back as part of the budget, we're gonna have those included. So we'll have projects, you know, with they, if they require a resource allocation outside of staffing, they would be part of the budget process. So it would be pretty clear the relationship between priorities, the projects underneath and how the budget fits together. So that's, that's what I would be normally doing. Um, but I don't wanna a- assume that that's what the council wants at this stage.
Craig, can I ask you a question in terms of the, the committee participation in all of this?
Yeah.
Um, and this kind of dovetails with some of the other work, committee work you and I have been working on. Because this process is pretty, um, you know, the time dependent. I'm wondering if a parallel outreach process to committees to involve them could be, would feel okay.
Yeah, I guess, I mean
In the past, they've, sorry, just to finish the thought, in the past, they haven't been at all involved. And so this would be and to educate them on what this is, which we're all learning even what that is. And to say, this is what the council priorities are evolving to be. What are your inputs to this?
Yeah, I guess what I was after was, I think we could take what we have here. I think it's important that we make the third level indent, like put EG in front of every one of those. Because they're not, that's not the list. It's just add a particular example. And maybe even add a couple. And then when we're ready to budget, you know, in part of the budget process, I think that's when we give this to the committees and say, here are the council priorities. This is what we hope to do in the coming year. What can you guys do to help support this? And what projects do you think we should do in the next year?
Yeah.
To support this?
Yeah.
And get all that input from them and use that to then move forward with the budgeting process. So that's where I would get their input. I don't think we need to get them to review this level structure.
I thought, okay. That I feel great about that.
Is, Jeremy, is what Craig just described manageable?
He's like, yeah, I'm not gonna be here.
Manageable by who? By staff? I mean, I, I don't know who's managing. Who's managing, who's managing seventeen committees, putting this on their agenda, having a product and then synthesizing it. If that's a staff product, that's a lot of work. Uh, we'll have a conversation at the staff level. If that's, if that's gonna be a council, uh, project, then, um, then we bring it back to council at some point. But just to get some more clar- clarifying, that'd be helpful.
I, I, I feel that there's one more on the sustainable resilient town that has to do with, uh, with exactly what we're talking about, which is self-government and community and committee engagement. And I, I think I just put that as, uh,
But we have community engagement.
Not community. I went to say community engagement.
But committees is gonna be part of the operational efficiencies.
Okay, but I also think that being sustainable, having the community, the committees be able to, to a certain extent, self-manage will make this more sustainable. I mean, if, if you have to have staff to make everybody, uh, everybody down do things is not gonna work. Okay, you don't have to do it. I call it, I call it, I'm, I'm done. I'm happy. I, but I've said
Where are we gonna go with process though?
Yeah.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, before you get into that issue, I, I don't think we've heard from the public yet on this item.
We did a long time ago.
Did we?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you, Kara. Thank you for that.
I did ask your public comment on this before we had, got into this whole discussion.
We still have public hanging in there, huh? Good for them.
I keep losing my connection, so.
Well, it doesn't matter. Let's keep, let's keep.
Now, let's keep, what do we need to do here?
So we're, we're, I think we're asking, Jeremy, Jeremy and Corey are asking the next, the steps beyond this. Uh, what's the next?
I personally am fine with what the typical steps would be. Starting with a, I, 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 I like Craig, how you kind of flipped it back that these were um, you know, these were council priorities and then bringing it, I think it's kind of informing the committees and asking for their feedback, but I, I do think it's a huge question of who is doing that work. I think that's the problem with that.
Yeah.
That's the big
Okay, but do we? Well, I was gonna say, I don't do, okay, but wait, so yeah, I think there's, so there's two questions here. I mean, one, you know, how, do we need to decide tonight? That's the first question. Um, right? And then the other question is, do we think it's worth it? But those, those are the two questions. And I think we have to do it. And whether we have to do it as council members because we don't have staff to do it, then I'm, I'm willing to do it for all the committees that I have that I'm the liaison with.
I, I'd say just put committee liaisons to
It's sharing the information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to go to, I mean, we'd have to go to the committee meeting and, and describe, you know, this is Yeah.
I wouldn't add it to it, but tell them about it and then have them add it to it themselves.
Well, no, but I, no, I think just what Jeff's saying is I, I would add it to an agenda, not necessarily next.
Right.
But, but sometime far enough in front of the budget cycle so that we can get their input.
When does budgets start? You know, Jeremy?
Yeah, sorry. I was just trying to hit unmute. I mean, we're, we're in, you know, pre-planning right now.
Yeah.
We open up, we open up Open Gov, um, uh, relatively quickly in the next couple of weeks for the department heads to start putting information in there. That's typically done by end, uh, excuse me, mid-April. And then we're gonna spend a couple of weeks, maybe a little later. And then we spend a couple of weeks, uh, working through any inconsistencies or any other issues, because there's always things that sort of come up there, um, and then line it up to go to, um, the, uh, finance committee on March. Probably March, either March six, excuse me, May sixteenth or May thirtieth, so two months from now.
Yeah. So when, when are we getting the budgets from the committees?
Uh, they, they'll be submitting those over the next month. Um, so they're gonna, they're gonna have those discussions in the next month and then they'll submit them by, by the end of, uh, by the end of April is usually when they come in. And they, they support very discreet, you know, like, I mean, this is a conversation that council should have at some point because it's been, I think everyone has a little different, different definition of what's included in those budgets. Um, but, uh, you know, that, that'll come towards the end of April. That's mostly around, you know, that, that's gonna be events and very discreet projects they're doing.
What we have going on with the organization right now and the time crunch about what's realistic to get.
Right. Well, it sounds like it'd be something we'd have to do in April. Cause we gotta get through the housing element, right?
Yeah.
In March, right?
And we were gonna do, have them working on our stuff in April.
I'd recommend if the council's direction is this, this is what's gonna happen tonight, that starting as early as, you know, the next, the next round of meetings in March with committees, you could do there. I mean, I, I wouldn't wait.
That, that's what I think. I mean, it's fresh in our minds. I would have forgotten about it by April.
Uh, it's okay with me. I'm, I'm, I, I mean, I'll leave it to you guys to comment on this, but don't we think it's important that the committees, I mean, if, if we're, we're gonna say, Sarah, and this, the reason I'm riffing is I'm riffing on one of the things you and I talked about is we want the committees to support the priorities next year.
Right.
Well, I think the way you do that is you give them, well, you give them some input. And say, you know, here's our top level.
Right.
And what we need you guys to help us figure out is below this, what are the important details? And those are the things that we're gonna have to come back and start with this. Okay, now we've got a hundred projects and we're gonna have to start saying, okay, well, this is an important project. And this one, you know, is a low project.
I, I get all that. I get all that. It's more about time crunch and all of that. And then I think there's a, on top of it, there's an educational process about this process. As we just saw from the last two meetings when we discussed that, even that is complicated. So you know, we've gotta bring them up to speed. We've gotta do it within a certain timeline. So I'm game to do it with my committee. I think it's, feels compressed. I, you know, maybe a hybrid of that is waiting a little bit and then doing more of a report out as they think about the next year, because they don't have to start their work right away. And then they think where they can plug in.
Yeah.
Well, do we think that
Versus them driving it, you know what I mean?
Are we looking for them to
Plugging in.
Set the priority, to comment on the priorities? Are we looking to come in on projects that fit under?
Projects.
I think, I think, I think, I, I'm, I'm happy with them suggesting projects that fit under these priorities. I just don't wanna have to go back and retool.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's what I'm saying. So the top level, the, the top two levels here are set.
The solid circle.
I've attempted to delete the third bullets personally.
It was more just to help us understand.
Yeah. Yeah, they're illustrated, but I think when we go to the committees, we need to think about what illustrations we wanna use. So we don't have to take this exact, the third bullets, we don't have to take that exact list to
No.
The committee. So, but the top two bullets, I think we do. And yeah, I'm not looking for them. We're asking for them to comment on what work do they wanna do next year that's gonna fit into these priorities? And those can be our projects.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, so I just, I had one thought about how to to heal the wounds that we've just given you for, by ruining your perfectly grade document you presented. Could you just do the, uh, do this in the same way you did before with getting rid of the small, small, the small headers and the low, and the lower headers?
It's free columns.
Take that to other committees. It's a one cheater. It's something we all understand. We've looked at it and I think they'll understand it too.
That was around pretty quickly for you.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
That seems like, uh, maybe not too much.
Wait, but
Like your work did not get completely wasted, because it, it was nicely done.
Okay.
But is that the right format? I mean,
I thought it was good.
Really? Cause I We now have four columns with I know, I know, again, and then we just
I don't know, I'm good.
I'm pretty good with this. I am too.
In that thing, it's gonna start, the, the columns are gonna wrap, wrap, wrap to get
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I found
Just to be clear, we, we, we're, we're not, we're committing to putting this, this, that, that one sheet when it's sort of finished. On every agenda, every committee's agenda, the next mo- next opportunity, basically. And each of us is actually gonna sort of present and talk to, I mean, we're gonna be presenting it to our committees. Is that
I, I personally think that each of us should talk to the chairman of their, of their liaison committee and say, we, we'd like them to have this on there and hand it to them and then have them put it on so that they won't have that objection that we, we slapped our priorities onto their agenda. I, I don't think that feels good.
And so then if we, if we follow that role, then we presented at that meeting and then where do we get the feedback? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Worried about.
I know, I get it. So
Right there, just at our next, when we come back in our next meeting and we do our summaries, we'll, we'll present it.
Well, no, I, yeah.
We're asking the committee just to, to basically on the fly, give us the answer. Not giving them any time to think about it. We're just saying, here it is.
But, but, but if I may, the committees have already shared some projects. So the, I don't think this is, I mean, this is what they did in January to some extent. So I don't think this is gonna be brand new. They're working on projects on a
This is the way I would, I would present it. So I have, I have, um, parks and recs. So I would take this to them. I'd explain what our process is. Say, this is where we've landed for our priorities this year. We wanted to make sure you guys were all aware of it. We'd like to know if you have any comments on projects that you are kind of already in your ether that would plug into this. And if you have any other feedback, I would keep it as simple as that. kind of already in your ether that would plug into this. And if you have any other feedback, I would keep it as simple as that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be saying, go out and think of projects that fit into these things. I would just say, you know, does this gel? Is there anything that's within the radar that you guys are passionate about right now that would support these?
Okay, I mean, I, so we're, so we are just saying to give us that day, that meeting on the fly and and take that as the input and.
And maybe next year.
In their package, don't they have a package?
But they won't understand.
They won't understand the process.
They won't have gotten the, yeah, they won't get, the liaison is the one who's gonna describe.
A little short context paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, I'm 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 okay with that. And and I agree, next year, we could potentially do this.
Better, this is step one. One point out this year.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it gets better each year.
Good night.
We have other things on the agenda, you guys.
It works for us. It sounds good.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you.
Hi, it is eight AM for me, and I have a meeting at nine. So I'd really like to know how much more we have to do.
I would.
Tonight.
I think you should, I think you should feel free to just drop off right now. Honestly, I I just, I mean.
That's incredible.
I mean, I I'm happy to finish up, but there's nothing else, right? I think we're just wrapping.
Um, it's liaison reports, town manager report. So I think this will be very short.
Good night.
You should go.
Oh, I I actually have a report I should have submitted and I didn't about the general plan meeting, or is that, that's not an official committee zone now. That's fine.
Packet. We'll, we'll be fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. All right, okay. I will drop. Thank you.
Me Judith. Hey Judith, good morning.
Yeah.
Why will you sleep better tonight?
A light, nice cup of tea. That's where I'm headed.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay. Uh, we are on to liaison reports.
Okay, so before we leave this, I I just wanted to thank Corey. So thank you for, I mean, I know this is long and involved and it dragged all over the place, but getting us involved and getting, giving us something to work from, I find that hugely helpful. I mean, even and I do this, you know, where it's much easier for me to start from something than just start with whole cloth. So having something here was was helpful. So so thank, thank you again. I appreciate your. And yeah, Jim.
Corey, I mean, it was hard because there, everybody is learning the process with with an expanded process. Like, I think actually, if we had to go through this, even with the old council where all products, like, it was a smattering of projects and focus, that would have been much more complicated. In the past, we just had the five. That was just.
Yeah, I remember. Five words.
It was literally like five words. So it was much more.
I think we learned a lot about ourselves in the process, but it is an amazing investment.
All right, guys. These guys just probably want to get out of here.
Okay.
Me too.
Liaison and regional agency reports. Uh, you wouldn't want to say anything? Hopefully, we've got them in the packet or or they're ready to be shared, but anyone, anyone want to comment on something that they.
Well, I have one that I didn't put in, so I'll make it super short. Just and Jeff, you got this from the EPC as well as they've, they've made a request um, that we prioritize relocating the AM radio. So this is moving it from a private residence to the water tank. And it's just, it feels like it's dragging out. So this is their concern is um, they also made a request that we put advisory signs at the town that say, you know, emergency information with our sixteen eighty. Um, and so I think we can, we don't have to answer these all. I'm just reporting out that this is gonna come to us at some point. We need to figure out how to feed this in. Um, and then look at something like Starlink um, for a backup internet in an emergency. And in their minds that these were priority projects that, I mean, can't just drift for another, you know, year kind of thing. So that was, I just wanted to report that out. And and Jeff, we got that from the chair. So what's the right place to manage this was, I guess, the only reason I wanted to bring it up.
Well, I mean, some of those things are, I mean, staff has been working with Cal Water for months or longer to to try to move that water, to move that AM radio to the, to the, the water tower. And that's, I mean, it's just, water is is, it's been very.
Jeff, let Jeff, let me, let me comment on this because I I was a little surprised to see this. Um, so maybe I'm being bold in the end of my tenure here, but yeah, the these three issues, I'm just gonna go through them. The first one, you know, a couple of months ago, members of the committee approached me, wanted to speak to my staff about why things were taking longer than they thought it should. They had that conversation. I was told that they understood that why things were taking longer. So a couple of months later to see this, I was, I was surprised. The AM radio issue, I think we can resolve it, but we can't just say emergency information because our AM radio is not for emergencies, it's for travelers. And that's a really hard line the FCC takes. Third, I am not aware that the committee's recommended Starlink specifically. I know that the chair has it. Um, my understanding is that the um the committee's recommending uh, backup internet, and we've looked at a number of different options. Uh, we are getting closer to one, but we also have to work with our IT people to figure out what makes sense, what problem we're trying to solve, how many users, et cetera, et cetera. So you know, I I I don't know how to prioritize these differently. Happy to take council direction, uh, but I'm just sharing my surprise. Thank you.
Okay, well, this, I mean, what the list I just read came from the the chair from the last EPC meeting. So that's where it's coming from. And the question I'm just asking is, how do we want to fold this in? I'm, I'm just saying that they're asking for them to be prioritized. That's fine. There, I don't think they're saying that anybody's doing anything wrong. It's just they're saying that these are pretty critical items. So maybe they get blended into the, when I have the discussion on the priority list that we just did. I mean, I'm, maybe that's as a, as a project, maybe that's the right place to bring this in.
Are you care that discussion with them? I also think that staff is working on these three things. I mean, as we, as we, it's already, they're already underway. So you could explain that these are ongoing projects that are fit under that somewhere in that set of priorities.
Yeah.
I mean.
Which is fun.
Yeah, I just, yeah. Because these have, I mean, this, this is something has, it's taking long, yeah, it takes time. It takes longer than we would like it to take, but it's being worked on. So I guess I would just update them that the, those three things are we're implementing them as best we can. It would be a staff.
Okay, yeah.
So they're, they've, they've given you feedback on something they think is a priority.
Exactly.
Yes, we hear you. It's a priority. It's it's being worked on.
Yeah, I I think if I just use the priority process, we can get it in, because we gotta decide like on the advisory signs, Jeremy's saying, we can't do that because you can't call it emergency because TIS. Okay, well, somehow we need to get to the bottom of it. I think that's what I heard from emergency preparedness is they're saying how do we get to the bottom? It's like the Cal Water thing. Everybody acknowledges that it's a slow, complicated process. And the Cal management has changed, blah, blah, blah. But they're still saying how do we get to the bottom of it? And that's really, it's, it's, this is not a staff. This is not criticism of staff. This is more like how do we get to the bottom of things that are safety critical? So we just, at some point, we got to figure out a process for it. And I'm okay putting them in as projects because then they'll be on our list. And people can point at it and say, where are we on this project? Yeah, I know, me too. So I I'm okay with that. If if, I mean.
I think that that's probably the way to handle it.
Okay, great. All right. So that, that was it. I just, since we, you and I got that note, I just didn't know what to do with it.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
So, yeah, yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other, anyone want to report anything from an agency? I I have nothing that I can't.
Well, let's see, I have two uh, two, two committees that I didn't attend, but that I talked to the chairman before and after. And uh, one of them was a shout out from uh, Bicycle Path and Traffic for both Jeremy, I mean, not Jeremy, um, Howard and Laura for having done a great job explaining to them about the applicable municipal codes and alerting them to what kind of policies they needed to be involved in in this, in the planning, in the housing element. So they were very pleased with themselves and that I was slightly less pleased that I managed to call everybody and tell them they really should, were they considering taking Carol uh, uh, and have realized and already taken care of it. Uh, Carolyn Vertonghen, uh, is that seems to be going through and I, I think that's, uh, they seem happy enough with that. And um, and then as far as uh, conservation is concerned, they're uh, working away, doing a great job. And uh, I think between sustainability and um, and conservation, we're hoping to do like ten, ten by ten monarch butterfly milkweed patches. Throughout the town.
Any other reports?
No.
Okay.
And just to be, you should ask for public comment.
Oh, uh.
I know it's unlikely at this point.
Christie, go ahead.
Oh, Christie.
So we can't hear you.
Christie. The Open Space Committee. And then my second comment was, um, you revised, you took public comment and then you made a lot of changes to the goals. So one thing that I think residents are gonna get confused with is you have public public safety, which I did not know that you meant the sheriff. And if it means the sheriff, I would add to crime number of accidents and location of accidents. And I still didn't see anything regarding goals in traffic. Those are my comments after you did the revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita, go ahead.
I just want to say that I really appreciate the reports that were given. Uh, it's, it's just refreshing with, um, you know, these are new members of the council and um and and it, and it just sounds like they're really trying their best to en- engage and learn and educate. And it's, I just find it very refreshing after all the hours I spend listening and watching these meetings. I I I find it very refreshing. So thank you. Thank you, everyone, because I I I feel that everyone will learn in this process. So I really appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for sticking it out this long.
Woo. Thank you, Rita.
Uh, any other hands up? Okay. Uh, next up, town manager report. Jeremy, do you have a report?
Uh, one item that I wanted to share is that uh, the Sheriff's Office will uh, be holding a public meeting in um, town at town center. Um, we, I think it's gonna be the Community Hall, but we'll, we'll put that out on March twenty-third. I think it's between five thirty and the seven, if my memory serves me correctly. It's an opportunity to hear from the Sheriff's Office on the two recent burglaries, learn tips to reduce risk at your own home and answer any, uh, ask any questions that you might have. So we're anticipating having our uh, Captain, um, the sheriff herself may be coming, um, so working on that. Um, and uh, at least one detective assigned to one of the cases amongst others. So very happy they're coming out. That's my report.
That's awesome. And.
You? Um, is there any uh, questions for Jeremy on that report? From the council? Okay, uh, is there any public comment on Jeremy's report? Two comments. Let me guess.
Mary and Rob Jack were the first.
Okay, uh, Mary and Rob Jack, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, good evening. Actually, my hand was up for the comment previously, and just to add in, it's a shout out to all of you for taking the time tonight to take what appeared standard and formulaic and working with it and talking about it and making it more meaningful and direct and particular to our town. And it takes that village of, as you suggested, a format and then massage it and work with it. And I just want to appreciate all the work each of you put into it tonight to, I think, will make for a better um, priority for twenty for the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment?
Yes.
So to all the public that's still here, thank you. And spread the word.
How if fast, fast, fabulously interesting it was.
Exactly. Thank you.
Hey, uh, who's next? Rita, Rita, go ahead.
I, I, you know, thank you for the uh, police report, the sheriff's report, having a a meeting in March. Uh, last time we had one of these, it was not uh, being recorded on Zoom or Skype or or anything. And it's hard for people uh, for burglaries to be leaving their home at a time when everyone knows that they're not at home. And meeting all in one place. So I hope that this time that there is some type of way that it can be broadcast on Zoom for people that are, want to be home in their, and be safe in their home. And just want to say that there was uh, uh, one of my neighbors there out of town and their gate was um, you know, the bolts in their gate was removed, someone trying to break in. So I don't know if that is uh, they, they did submit a report with the Sheriff's Department. But um, we, we need to be a little more vigilant. And I know that there's been some delays with the Sheriff's Department uh, actually showing up. So I I I just hope that all of that is is part of the um, during the negotiations of the, of the new contract that we have um, you know, a a better return of of time when when called. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there one more hand raised?
No, we're good.
Okay. Um, and we're done. We're adjourned, man.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Do we have to actually do that?
And all in favor.
Colin, I just can't discuss it. Yeah, great. All right. Thank you, everybody. Good night.